Pardon me, we're sorting through some stack of papers here. So this board meeting of the Board of Education for May 10th, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. The meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for playtimes. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming. It's nice to see you tonight. I see we have a full house, mostly full, and the Portland Public Schools Board of Education values your input in making important decisions that affect Portland students. We also believe in the right of community members to observe and participate in board meetings, and we want to carry out the work in front of us at the same time. To ensure both the public has an opportunity to attend school board meetings and ensure the board can conduct the important business of the district, I want to remind people of some basic rules of conduct which I expect will follow tonight. We ask that all members of the public attending the meeting tonight treat each other, staff, and the board with respect, and that's the expectation we have and I have. As adults, and we see we have young students in the audience, we're modeling that conduct to our young people. Individuals are encouraged and even strongly urged to engage in conduct that allows the ability of other individuals here and virtually to watch the board meetings and does not infringe on the ability of other members of the public to offer comment to the board or that interferes with the ability of the board to conduct its business. Those wishing to display play cards, signs, and our banners must remain in the auditorium foyer behind the seating area and may not block any attendees' view of the proceedings. And please, if you would, keep the walkways clear and aisles clear. And in general, we would appreciate it if you could just be mindful of others in the room and the words that you use and be aware of who's watching, including our community's most precious cargo. I also want to note for everybody that we have two board members that are attending virtually. Director Hollins and Director Green are joining us virtually tonight. The first order of business is to recognize May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. May, as you know, is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Portland Public Schools recognizes the important contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders. A PPS, our student and staff population across all academic programs and mission areas represent a wide variety of AAN, HPI ethnic groups, including Chinese, Vietnamese, Japanese, Filipino, Korean, Indian, and more. As we've seen a spike in anti-Asian sentiment over the past years, I'm pleased to note we have several student affinity groups across the district where students can better, excuse me, can develop a better understanding of how their own identity shapes their experiences as well as help students develop healthy self-identity and build networks both within and beyond the group through sharing experiences and strategies. Additionally, last week, the district communications team sent several resources that are available as we work together to create an environment of belonging, a connection to caring adults, and needed support to ensure our students are prepared to lead a more socially just world. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6489, Resolution to Recognize May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month?
So moved.
Second.
Director Brum Edwards moves and Director Scott seconds adoption of Resolution 6489. Is there any board discussion?
I'd like to thank staff for bringing this forward. And also, I also want to acknowledge, there was a reference to it in the resolution, but there was a recent statewide survey that came out that pointed to, I think, what we all know, but really validated, I think, what we've known and seen that's happening in our community, that the number of race-based hate crimes against harassment of Asian Oregonians is on the rise. So I want to just appreciate the district staff for providing support to our students who, you know, sometimes it's happening in our schools and also in the broader community. And so I'm appreciative that we recognize that our students and staff need support, especially in times like now.
Thank you, Director Brum Edwards. Is there anyone else? Do we have any public comment on this item? The board will now...
Chair, if there's no other comments, I would love to share just a few examples to accompany the resolution, just to share some current efforts in the spirit of the resolution. I want to share an appreciation for a lot of good collaboration with culturally specific community-based organizations that are helping to increase access to services and mental behavioral health supports for Asian American students in particular at this time, given some of what we're witnessing. I also want to say on the workforce diversity front, our new director of recruitment has really been prioritizing efforts to do some targeted recruitment at hiring bilingual and racially diverse administrators, especially candidates of Asian American descent. We're pleased this summer that the nonprofit that supports our Vietnamese dual immersion program is working with us to host a summer camp for students who continue to be immersed in Vietnamese. And in addition, senior staff, they're working right now to establish dual-language immersion community advisory groups for our Vietnamese, Mandarin, and Japanese family and community members to hear directly from our parents and families and educators to encourage the dialogue around how best to serve and support our students. So I just wanted to call those out because there are some ongoing efforts right now that seems fitting to mention.
Thank you so much for bringing visibility to those efforts. I appreciate it, and our community appreciates it, too. I'd like to hear from Student Representative Weinberg, if you have any thoughts about the resolution or from a student perspective, and then we'll take a vote.
Nothing right now.
Thank you. Put you on the spot there. The board will now vote on Resolution... Thank you for joining us, Director Hollins. I just announced that you were going to be virtual. Whoa, okay, that was fast. The board will now vote on Resolution 6489, the Resolution to Recognize May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? We, the Resolution, I'm sorry, 6489 passes by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Where's Brian Chu?
The board will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting.
Madam Chair, I had noticed that I wanted to have a discussion about the, but I'd rather not have it at the very end of the board meeting, if that's okay, about the summer, the summer programming.
Okay, so did you want to pull that item, and you as well? Okay. Sorry, I'm toggling back and forth.
But just as a point of courtesy, just staff, do we need to have it at the end of the meeting?
I'm trying to, you have some questions about the range of our summer programming?
I do.
Okay.
I mean, we have something like $8 million in contracts.
We do. Very robust menu of summer programming. We're excited to start telling our families about pending your consideration, but let us know, staff would be happy to describe all those efforts.
So do you want a motion on the business agenda and...
And then we take up this issue at the end of that vote?
I just think it's a courtesy for staff.
Process-wise, can we vote on the resolutions minus 6492?
Well, you can, you can leave it in. I just want to ask some questions about it.
Okay. Is now the time to do that, then?
Julia, I heard you say you want to leave it in. So do you want to just ask your questions before we take the vote, then? Or do you want us to vote on the consent agenda and then vote on this separate item?
It can be all together.
Let's do it.
It's easier to have one vote.
Let's do it.
Yeah, I don't want to do it at the end of the meeting because it's, and I'm not opposed to it. I just, it's a big chunk of money, so.
It's a big chunk of money, and we have a really long meeting, and we're, we'd be talking.
I mean, I think it's amazing the opportunities we're offering. That's good.
So let's, let's go ahead and talk about, what are your questions?
Do you want, I, sorry, do you want the motion?
I actually had some questions about the Head Start, too, which I didn't send till this afternoon, and Mr. Cantwell, I think, has joined us virtually, so he's available to answer those, too, so we'll throw them all together.
So 6493, 6494, same conditions where we ask questions currently? I didn't get the questions that you had this afternoon.
Some of you, what we could do is put a motion, get it on the table, and then just open it up for discussion.
Yeah, motion for the consent agenda.
Second? Were you firsting it?
Were you firsting it?
I'm seconding it, okay.
Okay, so we'll open the floor up for questions, then?
Did you want to go ahead, Director Constance?
Actually, I think response by email will be fine, so I'll just ask Mr. Cantwell to reply to all of us about the questions regarding Head Start.
Was that on both of the resolutions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's 6493 and 6494. And we'll get the responses by email, and so the next item would be the expenditure contracts, and you had a comments or questions?
Yeah, so in the packet, we have $8 million or maybe not quite that many, but in totality, all the summer contracts for the RFP. And I was, I was trying to make sure I understood how the, where the money flows are coming from and how they interact, so I guess I'll ask these to the superintendent, and you can answer or have staff answer. So it's my understanding, the contracts that are in the agenda tonight, and there's a number of them, a lot of them, millions of dollars of them, but they're primarily focused on enrichment. They look like great opportunities for our students, but primarily enrichment, and there's $7.8 million, and it's, it's my understanding that's coming from ESER. And then the, my second question, because I actually thought that was going to be the academic programming, so there's a second tranche of funding that is coming out of the, that is coming from the grants from the state, that is another $8 million that will be the academic programming, is that, is that right? And will that, then will that come to, those are grants, they would come to the board for approval because they're, we're receiving the grants, or we already accepted the grants and it won't come back? Sorry, that was a compounded question.
Sure. We can certainly talk about, and we mentioned in our last budget work session, how these new summer programming monies are helping to support activities that were already under development, so. So will we have Dr. Proctor, or I don't know if Dana Narenberger's here, to talk about the academic component of it, and there is extended learning in addition to the enrichment opportunities with our culturally specific organizations, but we had a pretty rigorous and comprehensive new formal RFP process, which Dani can certainly describe how it's intended to complement, you know, the more, the more academically focused. We do have a wonderful range of, as you saw, activities that will be made available to families, but maybe between our two senior staff here, they can, they can help answer your question.
So just in totality, it's 16 million, because I was thinking it was just eight, but it turns out it's eight and eight for a pretty amazing summer, so.
That is, that is correct.
Is there a specific, could you ask?
There is. So I understand that because we have all of the contracts that are in the, in the consent agenda that are really the enrichment, the programming, I mean, it's amazing for all levels, like whatever kids' passions are, I think we've got something that matches that. So my, my question was on the academic, the unfinished learning piece of things, is that, where will we see that, or where's, where does that program reside, and how is it going to be rolled out? I kind of have a good sense of reading all the contracts, how the enrichment, which is...
So for the academic programs, we are scheduling the four-week-long summer, summer Academic Academy, and we are hiring teachers, and we are building programming to support students with unfinished learning in the areas of math and ELA, and this will be for students in grades three through eight, excuse me, one through eight, and we are, we are in the process of identifying staff to hire. We would need to hire a large number of teachers, over 400, to address the learning needs of our students, and we hope to support, you know, thousands of students, as we indicated before in previous board meetings. So that is exactly how those funds are going to be used.
And just to make sure I understand, so the contracts for the summer enrichment, will there be a catalog for students in that families will proactively, and then for the academics, will it be by invitation?
It's by, we've identified students based on data that would need and benefit most from the summer programming, in addition to opening it up for, for a large, larger broad body of students so that we can support their learning needs.
In terms of the, what Dr. Proctor might also add is that Dana has been working since last summer, really sort of like building on the presentation that you all received last summer about Summer Acceleration Academy, and the, all of the feedback that we got from parents about sort of selecting students, being data-driven, that all has been, and many of your feedback has really gone into what has been like seven months of planning from Dr. Proctor's department around and coordination, so the, the idea is that we really want to make sure that we're offering as many services to meet the wider range of our student and family needs. So the, you'll likely see presentations like we saw last year, but they're deep in planning right now.
Okay.
And, and part of, you know, the cost factor includes identifying the instructional materials and intervention resources that would be used for students for the summer programming as well to kind of bridge their learning.
I was just saying, my last question was, if, if they're invited to participate in summer school, I can imagine how that would have gone over in my house, but invited to participate, are the enrichments structured in a way that it wouldn't be kids like, hey, if you're invited to go to summer school, you're not going to have an opportunity to participate, or are they designed to be, like, time and schedule-wise, that you could?
Yeah, I think that the, the goal has been to make them as complimentary as possible, so that, within families, we know that there are some students who are going to be identified to go to Summer Acceleration Academy, and then the, the update that you got to the, to the, to the memo included the sites, because we wanted to show how all of the programming will be happening in these buildings. So oftentimes, what we anticipate is that we'll have family members, so that the whole family can be served. The other thing is that Dana and the team have done a really good job of working with our sun partners, so if you do get called into summer school, right, there is a really engaging enrichment portion to that that gets carried out through our sun partners, and so the, the way that it worked last summer is that they really focused on academics and learning in the morning, and then in the afternoon, they still had that sort of enriching, enrichment activity. So summer school was the same place where you could get creative learning and play, as well as in the, the sort of formal sort of camps that were happening. And again, the idea is that we want to give students as much options as possible, and so just to try to meet their needs, and so we'll, we'll sort of see that through, through, I think, the program that's really complimentary.
I have a quick follow-up question about just, are the, so are these happening across every, or all of our buildings, or in specific buildings?
We've identified 25 schools, which, across the city, that we will be offering the programs.
And then are, will students receive transportation if they're, if what they need is in another building?
We will give them the option of, it is, it is, the idea is, the reason why we're offering in so many buildings is so that students can attend in, in the location that closes to them.
Nearby, thank you. Director Hollins?
I just wanted to make sure to clarify on the unfinished learning, since it was the question. So a significant portion is, of course, going to all the robust summer programming, but it's also going to evening and Saturday scholars, credit-earning opportunities, teachers to make sure students are keeping up on diploma requirements. So there's also the year-round supports that are, that are addressing unfinished learning as well that we're using these one-time monies for.
Thank you for those, the great questions. Director Hollins?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we highlighted this program and what we're doing, and that's why I pulled it from, I think it should have been actually a actual resolution that we actually got to talk about and, and hear more about these programs. You know, when we look at some of these programs like SEI Blueprint, which I am a huge fan of, as we are looking at giving these monies to these summer programs and it's exposure for our kids that don't usually have, I think this is one incredible thing that we're doing right now, and this is literally talking about being children-focused and children-centered. This is what we, this is what we should be about 99% of the time, and so I just wanted to make sure we highlighted that. And if you can tell a little bit about maybe one or two programs that, that warmed your heart, you know, just so we can kind of get a sense. And I was also invited to go and visit some of these programs through the summer, so I will extend that invitation to any and every one of us on the board, to go, and staff to go with me, because I think it would be, I think it's going to be awesome. Thank you.
So I will do a very quick overview, and I don't have any favorites, but what is in front of the board right now are only 14 of 51 different summer programs. These are the contracts that are over $150,000. These are programs that are serving, you know, upwards of 60, 100, 700 students. These are our programs that get to scale, and so we have everything in that set of 14 contracts. Now, this is just 14 of the 51, from traditional sort of childcare, like through Campfire, Boys and, Boys and Girls Club, that is sort of moving away from a traditional sort of drop-in center into being more focused on SEL activities to really support students' social and emotional learning, and in talking with their executive director, they are really interested in wanting to train up their staff to be really in alignment with some of our academic offerings and wanting to make sure that they have the knowledge, that they're really supporting and complementing the district's academic work. We also are partnering with, as you, you'll likely hear this summer, we're very concerned about wanting to make sure that we're doing prevention around gun violence, and what we know about works in prevention is two things, is that we're actually engaging students in positive pro-social activities, like mentoring, relationship development, making sure that their basic needs are supported, and also employment. And we are really excited to partner with organizations like POIC and ERCO, who have been doing that work successfully, who are, also have really strong employment components. But we are also really excited about some of our newer organizations, like I Am More, that is taking a literacy-based approach to social-emotional learning through the summer, really working with students who have been impacted by the pandemic, and sort of getting really amazing writing and literacy activities to support that as a, as a way that can be really therapeutic and during the summer in a way that's really engaging. I'm really excited about some of our traditional partners like SEI, Native American Youth and Family Center, but we're also excited about some of our newer programs. I talked with Director Green recently about, during the school year, we, we partner with about 20 different culturally-specific organizations, and in the summer, this is an opportunity to reach out to the community and try to think about new partnerships and partnerships with different types of organizations. So an organization like Feed the Mass that focuses on health and nutrition and the science of cooking in a way that's really culturally relevant, and if you want to see students doing knife work and handling fry bread and some of that, that makes me nervous, it's a great way to see just like all of the, the agency and the expertise that they get out of a program like that, that's partnered. So these 14 are just a sort of tip of the iceberg. We're hoping that upon the board's approval, we'll be able to publish the, the catalog of, of summer programming on the enrichment side by this Friday. There will be a website that we blast to everyone, that we want to make sure that folks know that'll be available in multiple languages, because we do want to make sure that our students and families have access to this free summer programming that our partners, in partnership with us or, and with your approval of the funding to support this. Really amazing opportunity for families in, in the area to be able to have these opportunities. So thank you for highlighting this. There's more to come, and we, again, I, I hope that this summer, along with visiting what the amazing learning that's happening in the Summer Acceleration Academy, that folks will, in the same building, kind of pop over to see the, the cooking and the robotics and the steam and the plays and the sports and the wild diversity, there's, there's so much there, so thanks for the opportunity.
So if I could just take the moment to thank Dani and her team for a whole lot of work to vet and partner with over 50 organizations to, to produce this range, and since you're asking, Director Hollins, I do want to shout out one particular program. That's our PIL Summer Math Program. It's being slated to be staffed mainly by staff of color. We're excited about a lot of our Black educators who are really committed to, to working this program in a combination of math instruction and sports at the middle school level, and we're also employing a lot of our high school students that are going to be helping to provide tutoring and academic support, plus the athletics, and that's being hosted at McDaniel and Roosevelt. So want to just highlight that particular program as well, it was a real hit last summer.
Yeah, I visited last summer, because hoops is my, my thing, and it was, it was amazing. There's a lot of math going on, but also a lot of mentoring by the students, which is one of the things, I was just going to say, do you want to make a pitch for the, what the older youth are doing as part of a lot of the programs? It looked like that was a complimentary piece in addition to service to younger students.
Yeah, so one of the things, I forgot, sorry, thank you for that, I'm off the script. So we're really excited, last summer, we had about a little over 100 employment opportunities for youth, and this summer, in partnership with all of our partners, they'll be offering summer jobs for over 522 students, which is amazing. Students will be, students will get to be interns, camp counselors, some of them will be stage managers, some of them will be able to really explore, and we think that, you know, in addition to the positive, you know, opportunity and all the things that happen when you're employed and you have that ability to learn a new skill, great for violence prevention, and also, you know, a lot of research talks about how important this enrichment activity goes into students developing agency in their learning and, which, you know, has a connection to their ability to graduate. So we're really excited about, about that. Thanks for the, thanks for the prompt.
Thank you. I want to also just recognize Director Hollins for, when, when this item was first pulled, I was like, oh, boy, I wonder, did I miss something? But the modeling, a culture of appreciation, I really appreciate that, and just starting us off in, on the right foot tonight, because we have a long night in front of us. So thank you for that, modeling that culture of appreciation and inquiry, appreciative inquiry. I see you. And I'm also really excited, as someone that spent a couple summers actually right down the street from Harriet Tubman with my siblings, my grandparents owned a home there, it just went on the market and it sold for $40,000 over the asking price, but just how these enrichment opportunities, I remember actually going to Tubman, I actually had a job at Tubman when I was 16, but prior to that, I believe, the year before, I was involved in those enrichment activities, and all of my siblings were as well. So just think of, you know, what we would have been doing in the absence of these planned activities, and I'm just really hopeful about, with you, about the impacts that these, these dollars will have. We'll now hear from Student Representative Weinberg.
Yeah, again, also appreciation. I was a part of the academic side, not so much catching up, but just advancing my education over the summer, the past two summers, actually, and I just have seen so many other students, especially my close friends, who have engaged in the enrichment and academic side of things. Had an amazing time, so thank you. And I had one question, I think Director Hollins or Brim Edwards asked it about transportation. Will there be transportation for students? Oh, sorry.
It's okay, I overlooked a lot.
So, oh, sorry, apologize. We were saying that the reason why we offered so many locations is because it affords an opportunity for students to attend at the location that's closest to their home.
So there won't be transportation, then, to students? Okay.
On the enrichment side, there will be some opportunities, so as part of some of the budgets that you'll see, some of our partners are sort of being creative with bus tickets, with sort of getting like a common bus. Some of our partners, through funding, through other philanthropic funding, were able to buy like a van, so our partner Coalition of Black Men has a van now, and so they're taking students on field trips and really sort of using that. So we've, we've really, we're a really strong community because our partners have been so strategic about sort of meeting those different needs. A big shout-out to Whitney, because in addition to providing... Um, a big shout out to Whitney, uh, because in addition to providing food for the Summer Acceleration Academy, uh, at the same sites where we're offering food, our enrichment partners will be able to, um, be able to access that food as well. So.
Is there going to be a virtual option for any summer enrichment or academic activities?
Sorry, can I go back to your question about transportation?
It's like, but there's more.
So, yes. So I also just want to make sure that, that the board knows that Trimate, uh, earlier, uh, announced that they're preparing to launch a new state-funded short-term pilot that will provide up to thirty thousand free summer passes for high school age students across our service districts. So, uh, so this is the first summer, summer where they're going to, the high schools are going to, so as you know, during the school year, uh, we have a partnership with Trimate so that our high school students have access to these free passes that will continue at least for this summer, uh, with a state-funded program, which means that, you know, from our end, uh, we will work with Trimate to continue to advocate at the state level to that, to ensure that we have, we secure those funds through the summer. So that's an exciting opportunity for, you know, all, all of our high school students this summer.
Thank you. And I, I just have one final comment and that I would love, uh, I know we're looking at the contracts that are a hundred and fifty thousand and over. And you mentioned the Blueprint Foundation. I'm a huge fan of the Blueprint Foundation, too. It's very connected to the work I do at work, which by the way, your name came up and everybody loves you. Um, anyway, I would love to find out who those other contractors are, just, you know, to stay connected in community and hear what's happening in other corners that aren't, you know, in front of us and in, in writing. And, um, for anybody that's interested, there's a fantastic, um, podcast interview from The Numbers FM, X-Ray FM. Um, the show is called The Numbers and it's an, uh, interview with, uh, the founder, one of the founders of the Blueprint Foundation, um, Daron Coles, who's, um, it's, it's a fantastic, um, view into climate action work for students of color and what he's doing to create a pipeline, a workforce for, uh, Twenty-First Century Portland. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to make one quick comment. You kind of glossed over it, um, Dani, but, you know, one of the, the, the best practices around spending for these one-time dollars is to really invest in, in, um, people and activities that will have long-term benefit and that will build our capacity moving forward. And I think we're really investing in a lot of our partners. Many of these partners that we see on this list are those that are in our schools all year round. And we're really investing in their capacity and they're hungry to hear about, you know, our literacy training and, um, using our next, the next generation science standards in their, you know, outdoor activities. And, um, that's, I think, a really, uh, important and lasting benefit here. So as much as we can bring them into the fold in that respect, um, it's to our benefit.
Sorry. My question, the virtual opportunities, are there any for students over the summer?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Are there virtual opportunities for students over the summer?
Um, yeah.
So the programs primarily are, uh, designed to be face-to-face, uh, programs. Uh, we are looking at the possibility of making an addition, uh, for some virtual options where we find that we are not able to, um, have the students that are most needed, uh, to participate in a program so that they can have, um, the option as well. But primarily, we're aiming for, uh, the programs to be face-to-face.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I'm sorry. Um, I think we're now ready to vote on resolutions. We have a motion on the table and a second. Um, we're now ready to vote on Resolutions six four nine zero through six four nine six. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes? Yes. Yes? All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda's approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative voting.
Yes.
Thank you. And, um, Director Green, I, I, you were, you were a little bit quiet on this topic, so I just want to make sure you didn't have any, any comments quickly before we move forward.
No, I just recognized that I talk a lot already and we were all on the same page about how amazing a lot of these, um, programs are. Um, I was extremely excited to go down through the list and see, um, not only a lot of the, the larger organizations that we're familiar with seeing, but to see some of the smaller organizations as well that we all know do, um, great, um, great work with the kids that need it most in the community. So I'm extremely excited about this pass, um, and about this getting through because this is a, um, a direct impact on the kids that we're looking to serve. So thank you for giving me the time to share, but I'm, I'm trying to be brief because I know we got a lot on the plate tonight.
Thank you so much. And I also wanted to just call out that we do have, um, Minority Business Enterprise, um, and, uh, listed in this, um, list. So happy to see that.
Madam Chair, just, it was totally buried in the consent agenda, but I just want to recognize the work that the DSC and Oscar Calvert did, um, around the bylaws. Um, it was a lengthy assignment and done very well. So I want to just acknowledge, um, our students hard at work, um, and active in the governance of our district.
Thank you. And I, let's see. I think we're ready to move on to student and public comment. Thank you for that, Director Brim Edwards. Um, before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. Um, first, the board thanks you for taking the time to attend the meeting and providing your comments. Public input informs and improves our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board to actively listen. To that end, I'd ask each of us to give our full attention to the people in front of us. Our board office may follow up with board-related issues raised, raised during testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees please be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. And if you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you mail them to publiccomment@pps.net. And please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name and we'll make note of that. And you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your comments. Um, Ms. Powell, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we have both. Our first person is Nima Cruz.
Are we, uh, starting with student?
Yes, we're starting with student.
Okay, student, okay. Students first. Thank you. Mila?
Cruz.
Oh, 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 Nima, thank you. Ms. Cruz? Was Ms. Cruz, uh, joining us virtually?
I don't think so. I don't see her here. We can come back and try her again.
If anybody sees Ms. Cruz, um, please, please let us know and we'll, um, allow her time to speak.
The next is Lauren Lockman.
Can you, um, please state your name and then spell your last name?
My name is Lauren Lockman, L-O-C-K-M-A-N. Uh, I want to start by just saying, uh, Mr. Guerrero, it's so great to see you. I wish we spoke, could have spoken sooner at the walkouts, but good to see you now. Um, on behalf of students, families, and community members of Harriet Tubman Middle School, I'm here to talk about the suspension of Mr. Chu and the crisis that we are in. To take away Mr. Chu is to take opportunities away from students. Mr. Chu is more than just a teacher. He's like family to us. We count on him and he believes in us. We need teachers that care about us and Mr. Chu was just that. I've had him for two years now and whenever I'm having a bad day, I instantly feel better. When students go into his classroom, we know that we will feel safe, respected, and heard. Removing Mr. Chu is extremely detrimental to students' mental health because we no longer have this critical connection to our teacher. For PPS to rip him out of our classroom without a word, without any move towards helping us through this trauma is abuse, neglect, and violence against our education. Mr. Chu's removal is an immature example of PPS putting their petty workplace politics before students' education. In four out of, of my seven classes, I have subs and my friends have even more. Out of the entire school, on any given day, there's an average of fifteen subs out of thirty-four teachers. In these, in these classes, we are not learning anything at all. Mr. Chu's social studies class, where we learn about social justice and civil rights, has been replaced with meaningless videos and worksheets. You claim to care about our education, yet you take away Mr. Chu and don't even let him leave sub plans. I'm worried because when I go to eighth grade and then high school, I'm not going to know anything and I will be way behind. Do you not care about our future? It is also very telling that you took away one of our very few teachers of color. To us, it looks like PPS is continuing systems of white supremacy. When we, when we demand that you reinstate Mr. Chu, we are demanding that you consider our most vulnerable and our most burdened. Do what Mr. Chu would do. This will benefit us, benefit us all. We have shown up to the PPS administration building six times and have it ignored almost every single time. The one time that we were not ignored, the employee talked in circles and gave us no real answers. We should be treated with the same respect you would give an adult because there is no PPS without PPS students. Our demands are our basic needs as students. Access to education, repair the harm you caused, and bring back Mr. Chu. I'll close with some quotes, quotes from other students that you might have heard if you hadn't shut us out last Friday. In this building, there's a sign right at the entrance that says, "Our kids are worth it." How is it if you're not hearing what we're saying to you at all? If our opinions aren't being taken into account, we're not worth it at all. I have like six subs. Like for every class, it's like one teacher in every grade level. Bro, it's not funny. I had six subs yesterday. I need a teacher. I can't go to high school playing football, doing all that if I have no teacher to teach me. If you want us to get our education, we need the actual educators here. We want our education. If we don't get our education with the subs, we need actual educators. I have a literal language arts teacher in my math class. How does that work? It's been over three weeks and you haven't told us anything more now. You keep telling us that you don't know or that you can't help us or on your, on our side, but it doesn't really seem like it because you don't seem to be responding to anything we're doing. What PPS is doing for our school is nothing and it's not helping us for our education and we can't learn like this. We can't end the school year off like this. If you think taking away teachers and staff members is going to take away our voice, our voice, then you are wrong.
I want to just, uh, we're going to be, uh, playing video testimony and I understand the sound isn't really great. So, um, we, the, the video has been captioned. It's a YouTube captioning. So, um, bear with us, but this is the best we can do technology-wise tonight.
Thank you. This student is Kelsey Wong.
My name is Kelsey and I grew, grown up in the Lent area since I was a little baby. I'd been at Lent when it was, uh, still a K through A. I was the last eighth grader there. So I went through kindergarten to eighth grade there. And I've heard that you've been wanting to, like, split it up, make that Spanish immersion and move everyone that's English to Marysville. And I've been wanting to say that I don't think that'd be a very good choice considering that Lent has a very vast community full of different people. And I think that's helped a lot of people just growing up in a lot, in a more impactful environment and be a lot more accepting of the world around us. And if you were to split everyone up, my little sister that would go there, she's loved, she like, since you've incorporated Spanish into the school, she's been learning a lot more about it and she's been really happy and interested in it. And it's just made me a lot happier to see how in touch she is with the community at school. And I felt the same way when I was out there. And I'm pretty sure my older sister would be, that went there as well, would also feel the same way. And the problems that would probably come up when you move out, everyone that wants to go English and to Marysville would be transportation. My house, um, to Lent is actually a very close distance, two blocks, and it's easy to walk. So I was saying for families that usually have parents that are out and do their jobs earlier than school opens and to have kids be able to be able to walk to school or to have like the usual bus setup that even though it's a bit, right now, and be able to reach school quite easily. And with all the changes happened with the pandemic, my little sister went through kindergarten, the last part of kindergarten and major, like all, the entirety of her first grade. And quarantine isn't impacting her a lot. And with the changes that it's become only a K through five, it's impacted lots of people. It's, like, shortened the community up quite a bit. And the teachers that go in there, I think it's too much of a change for a lot of people, especially for the younger kids. And, mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if she's watching, but that was amazing.
Our next student is Dulce Zarita Hernandez.
Hello. Hi, my name is Dulce. Um, I actually grew up in Lent, K, all the way from kindergarten all the way till I was in eighth grade. Now I'm a junior in Benson. And when I heard about you guys wanting to like break down the school or whatever, I feel like that school has grown up with that community for so long. And so you guys splitting up the school and then splitting up the families and making everybody go like everywhere, I feel like this, the way that the school is now was able to bring communities and different cultures and all these diversities together. And everybody was able to like, you know, get to know each other. And so you guys wanting to put, split up the school and like send everybody down to Marysville. I feel like that's very, um, that's going to impact a lot of families. For example, like the transportation to just get there, the way the teachers grew up in that school, the kids grew up in the school, the families grew up in that school. And so I feel like it's something that you really just have to consider, not just for yourselves and what you guys want to do, but for the kids, for the next generations that are coming, for the families that are coming. And I mean, like, I feel like it's just, I feel like it's not the best thing to do for the community itself. And, um, a lot of people are going to lose more from it than they are going to benefit from it. So I feel like it's something that you guys really need to take into consideration for the kids that are growing up, you know, and, um, yeah, I think that's why.
Just say your name again.
Um, and, and my name is Dulce. And my sister also went to Lent, so now she's in Kellogg Middle School since you guys like broke it down or whatever. But, yeah. All good.
Roseanne, what was her last name? Just so I can document.
Zarita Hernandez.
Zarita Hernandez. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a group of Lent students who have submitted a combined testimony.
The Lent Leopards.
Hi, my name's Jessica and I'm in fourth grade and I'm part of the DLI slash, um, Spanish immersion. And, um, in my opinion, it's bad because we're separating our community and a lot of us have siblings who go here. So if like, um, parents had like, um, children who went to high school, middle school, and elementary school, and maybe preschool, um, then it'd be like a really long drive for all of them. And which could lead them to be late or them having to wake up really early and like, um, them being really tired during school. Like them being tired will like make them not pay attention because of how tired they are.
Action.
I don't want Lent school to be Spanish immersion only because I want my baby brother to learn his home language and English more than Spanish immersion. And then he, after that, he can learn Spanish.
Yep.
The reason why, uh, Lent should separate all American and, uh, Hispanic everything up, uh, because some people don't know, some moms and dads could be struggling and don't know another school to put them at. And that's why I think that everything.
Why I always just choose to, because if this was a school, it is not, we're just going to miss our time because they're splitting us up, they're splitting us up and stuff. And is this not where we're there? Who, what, why would you want to put our children up when they don't know how we've been trained? And it's just not here. Because why would you want to split our school up and split our language school? Why would you want to split the school up? Why? Do we need to, we need to, do we need to? Do we acknowledge your support?
And.
Hi, I am Rudy Duncan. I'm a fifth grader, uh, in DLI, in the DLI program. And, um, me and Jessica here are going to make a video. So what is going on? Uh, so there is a proposal called Proposal F3 that changes, uh, some schools into a full DLI and then separates the English neighborhood program and the DLI. Uh, and then they send the English to a different school. And why it's bad? Well, it could se, it separates the community and it mostly affects our, our school, which is Lent, and Bridgers, and the Bridger School. And so in my opinion, if this proposal comes true, it will affect the youth that go to the school on a time-consuming level and in the most vulnerable level. It would separate, uh, both groups. And so if you have friends on the ELI, your and DLI, for example, you would be separated for at least probably a year. And so it also affects, uh, it affects the students really.
It's bad because, um, the teachers come here to see the students. Uh, some of them come from at least one to two hours away from the school. They have a connection with the kids, so that's why they come here. That's why they haven't left.
Thank you Lent Leopards. Um, we decided to allow video testimony, which I think is really effective. Um, and they actually stayed under three minutes each. I think they did a really good job, sometimes better than the adults.
Yeah, I should just note Rudy's mom who sent those in. Um, one of the reasons why they couldn't come testify is transportation. So Lent is in the furthest southeast corner, so appreciate. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Uh, yeah, they have farther to travel and thankfully we've got video options.
Next, we have Chloe Wolfson.
Okay, um, hopefully everyone can hear me. So.
Can, um, do you mind saying your name and then spelling your last name, please?
I'm Chloe Wolfson, W O F S O N, um, W O L F S O N. So, um, as a proud student under Mr. Chu, shout me out, type out a few things. One, as has been said before, there have been many subs at the school. It makes me angry the amount of subs we've had to adjust to. I think something everyone in this room can be honest, students have to have, have gone through a lot this year. And at our school, we have gone through a lot with mask mandates, social distancing, the two weeks where we were on hybrid school or online school. And now after just many, many, many subs. Today, I had five subs, huh huh hubs in place of huh huh five teachers. There were only two teachers today in my class that were the actual teachers and weren't subs. So, bringing me to my next point. When you, when PPS decided to spin Mr. Chu, it didn't feel like you did it for the students. It felt like it did it for you. It felt like you saw Mr. Chu as a threat and you suspended him to do it for you. The students have worked, the students, to get to my next point, the students at the school have worked very hard to get answers. So far, we've gone many protests, one last Friday. On Friday, students begged for people who were part of the district to come out and listen to them, yet no one came out. People in the district being, acted like scared to, and while the students begging for answers acted like brave adults. They worked very hard for answers and yet we still haven't gotten a full answer. Students really need a full answer and I'm scared that I won't be prepared for high school since I have three, three, he, he long-term steps in my classes. He has, and I know there are a few steps at the school who are all doing a good job, but a lot of them aren't doing a good job. And I don't think I'm going to be prepared for high school because there are so many subs and I'm really upset about that. I'm really upset that you never asked our opinion when you took Mr. Chu away. There was, he really makes the school feel like much safer. His classroom created a safe space for us and he provided food for us. Because I'll be honest, school lunch food is terrible and for students who didn't like it, he provided cup of noodles. Huh huh's, um, and people, and I did see a sign, I'm not sure if it's at this schooling, uh, as well. I, I'll fetch it in just a moment, but he has been mentioning that he does bring cup of noodles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Walters.
Hello, Mr. Walters.
Good evening. My name is Chris Walters, W A L T E R S. I am the Nutrition Services Lead, or as I like to call myself, the Head Chef at McDaniel High School. It is a lovely, lovely high school, beautiful building and well worth the $200 billion spent on it. Which brings me to the next point. There aren't enough custodians to take care of this high school. The custodians we have work incredibly hard, but they're constantly in crisis mode because there aren't enough of them. And as a taxpayer as well, I have to wonder, why should I vote yes on the next school bond? If you're not even going to invest in the custodians to take care of the buildings you already have. Another thing with McDaniel, every morning I get an email, because I'm on the staff email list, a unfilled sub email. Because there aren't enough teachers, there aren't enough subs and there's always at least one position open every day. Usually more than that, where they're begging teachers to give up their planning period to cover for other teachers because y'all don't have enough teachers. And I kind of got to wonder why this, this is happening. I mean, you've got all these people with fancy suits who are telling you we need to cut teachers. And I'm guessing these people with fancy suits are telling you that the custodial problem will work itself out at some point. And they may be telling you that it's okay that nutrition services workers are paid poverty level wages. And I mean, it's budget time. I'm guessing the folks in the fancy suits aren't asking to cut their pay. But everybody else seems to be on the downside of the cuts. And I think it's time that you all invest in people. Invest in the people who teach the kids. Invest in the people who feed the kids. Invest in the people who keep the schools clean and safe and healthy for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Myers.
You guys couldn't have picked somebody else? That's a tough act to follow, I can tell you right now. Good evening, my name is Greg Myers, M E Y E R S. And I am a head custodian for the Portland Public Schools. I've been a head custodian for 16 years. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the ongoing staffing crisis that we are having in our custodial and nutrition service department. There are several factors contributing to the crisis. But the overriding issue is the substandard wages that the custodial nutrition service departments have been experiencing for many years now. This isn't a, this isn't a thing that just popped up with the pandemic. This, I've been here 16 years. It's been a fight every contract to get 3%. Uh, I'd like to present a couple of examples to you how non-living wages are directly affecting our ability to hire custodians and to properly staff the schools with our existing custodians. Uh, we started actively recruiting custodians at the start of the pandemic. Once we knew that we were going to need to bolster our staffs to meet all of the sanitation regulations by the state. At that time, we had anywhere from 10 to 15 applicants each week. Three weeks ago, we had three applicants scheduled to be interviewed. None of them showed up. In addition to the numbers of people applying for custodial positions dwindling, the quality level of the applicants has also diminished. We need to have the ability to attract quality people who want to make this job a career. It's a career for me. I'm not leaving. I'm staying. As the job market has gotten more competitive over the last year, it has become obvious that our attempt to keep up with the private sector is still lagging behind. These people are going to take jobs that are paying more than what we're offering in the private sector. And believe me, somebody would much rather get paid $20 an hour to flip burgers than get paid $16.70 to clean up toilets, vomit, pee, poo. I mean, that's our job. That's what we do. We have no problem with it. But we, you've got to compensate us for this. Another example of how our wages have affected the existing custodial staff. Uh, an offer was given to the custodians who work on the east side of town to transfer to west side schools, which the west side schools are always desperately short on staff. Uh, I believe maybe one or two people actually transferred over there. The simple reason that more custodians did not transfer is because the majority of our staff live and work on the slightly more affordable east side of town. And with no compensation, you would in effect be giving yourself a pay cut due to the cost of having to drive the extra miles. If you're not being paid a wage that you can live on, why would you volunteer to take a pay cut? Anybody if you want to answer, feel free. I'm not, I'm not taking a pay cut. I'm fighting to get every penny I can. Another example. Okay. Well, I will, I will give you another example. I will say though, uh, please amend the budget to fund competitive wages so we can hire enough staff to ensure safe and healthy schools for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I, I also, um, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name. I didn't get your last name, but if you'd like to submit, uh, your comments in writing, we will, we will take that into consideration.
I, I have a question. Come back for a sec, I have a question. No, no, come on, I got you. Cause you, you're talking about a living wage. What would that living wage look like for you guys?
Well, that's interesting you ask that because, uh, we did have a conversation with one of our board members uh, that gave us some actual numbers that were provided by the city of Portland. The, the, the wage, this was from I believe two years ago now, to live in the city of Portland, it was basically you had to make $20 an hour. That's just bare minimum. And we are currently starting at $16.70 an hour. The reason for that is, is because over the last 15 years, our wages have been kept at a minimum, including us having our wages frozen for three years. So every year that we have lagged behind at 3%, 3%, we keep falling further behind. And now with the inflation rate climbing, we're going to just keep sliding down the hill. So $20 is just to keep a roof on your head and feed your kids. And that's what we're here to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Next is Pyeong Yu.
I wanted to apologize for my impact. If comparing the three-fifths compromise to ELD policy offended any board members, the way we counter students for the budget and the three-fifths compromise are not on the same scale. I want to recognize any potential harm created from that comparison. Pyeong Yu, Y U, speaking on ELD policy in hopes the board will amend its inequity from our budget. It is true that all PPS students are counted at least 1.0, which largely goes to funding classroom teachers and building wide supports. However, ELD teachers are funded by a separate body of federal and state money, the majority of which is ELD state dollars. That state allocation is $4,300 per student. If we multiply that by our 3,737 students, the state budget for ELD should be around $16 million. But the budget reports around 12, so where is that $4 million? When I say ELD students are being counted as less than one for their ELD educators, it's because we determine how many ELD educators are available in this district by an annual ELPA test we give each year. We then use that ELD money to staff our ELD educators. After the test, we use to count all students as one. In the new policy, if a student scores higher than an emerging score, they can be counted as less than one in staffing ELD educators for them. 85% of our PPS students score higher than an emerging score. Counting students who need support as less than other students based on an annual standardized test is the racist policy I'm trying to point out. We have not received full ELPA test scores in almost three years. This model's impacts will likely be felt when the district readjusts for test scores in future days to come. Last week, this district reported that ELD staffing increased by 10, but the budget shows it only went up by 1.3 teachers and 2.3 educational assistants. The district stopped counting Kinder DLI students for ELD staff in 2019. The recounting of those students is being used to praise this model when it has nothing to do with the actual weighted formula itself. We would see an increase from our 16 DLI elementary schools and their Kinder students if they were counted with the old model or the new one. My hope is that this board understands that if we give more to a group of 500 emerging students at the expense of giving 3,000, potentially less, that it cannot be called equity. We want to count our newcomers as more than one and increase ELD services for them. We just don't want that to come at the expense of providing less educators for the majority of our ELD students. What district leadership shared with you last week is nowhere close to the conversations they had in private with educator groups. So our frustration is coming from the lack of transparent communication with this district under this board's management. How do we trust the system when educators are told one thing and the board is told another? Thank you.
Thank you.
Isabel Johnson.
Hi. My name is Isabel Johnson. Sorry, once again, I'm a little nervous here. Um, this is some tough acts to follow, so I'm going to do my best. I think, I feel I'm at the risk of sounding like a broken record, but I just feel that we can do better for the students and the teachers. I am the parent of a, of a Glencoe Elementary student and I'm also on the PTA board. And I have, I'm working on a joint letter from other PTAs and I've contacted other schools. And there is not one school I've contacted that's excited about the budget. Understandably so, but every school is being affected, even schools that aren't experiencing large cuts. It's, all of this, it's very destabilizing. And so I've gone through and I've talked with different schools and to back, I had, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to sit in on a listening session with Rob Nose, our Oregon State Representative. And one of our educators at, at Glencoe, who also teaches at Graut, had invited some other educators. And he kind of wanted to find out, you know, what was going on in schools. And she said, "This is the hardest year of any educator's tenure." And he was really surprised. He actually thought that the pandemic would have been the harder year. And she said, "No." She said, "I'm in two schools every week and every week there is an educator crying in the hallways." And I just, again, feel that we really need to support teachers. And what I heard the student from Tubman saying is they have subs every day. And what I heard the student from Tubman saying is they have subs every day and they're not being supported. So, but why do we have so many subs? I don't feel it can just be because teachers are out sick. Teachers are burning out. And the students are the ones that are then suffering. And it just feels like we need to support all, everybody. We need to support the students and the teachers because at the core level, if we don't have students and we don't have teachers, we don't have a school. Like there, I understand, you know, we have the district and we need the board and all of that, but we wouldn't need them if there were no students and there were no teachers. So, and also, I don't want to leave them out, the custodians and the nutritional services people who are working so hard at all of the schools. And I just, I don't want to say that it has to be an, is it only smaller class sizes or do we just do the targeted interventions? But can we have it all? I spoke to my friend at Woodmere, and she works with an EA who's been in the district for forty years. And she said, back in the day, we used to have an EA in every single class. And I just wish and hope that we can get to that point again, to where we're supporting, fully supporting all of the students and all of the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grace Groom.
Hello, Grace Groom here. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I had hoped to speak with you during the work session, so I feel kind of badly taking up a slot here during the, um, board meeting. But, um, you ran out of time. You had a long night ahead of you. And unfortunately during Teacher Appreciation Week, you couldn't hear from a teacher for two minutes. That was kind of a bummer. But I'm here tonight and I would like to share with you, um, uh, first of all, elevating my own students' voices, um, some letters from my students and what they are thinking about and caring about these days. We were studying opinion writing, so they took their pencils and took some action. In my opinion, the school district should spend money on teachers. The reason why is because teachers are fun and exciting. One of our teachers is being cut, our technology teacher. It is fun and exciting to go to technology. For example, kindergarten through fifth grade won't be able to learn typing the right way. Also, you learn from computers and technology is part of our school. Third of all, we're working on transition words, typing helps exercise your fingers. In conclusion, that's why we should keep technology. Sincerely, Romeo. Dear School District, I think you should not close technology. The reason I think this is because if you close it down, how will kids learn typing? They won't learn graphs, they won't learn coding. This is why I think you should not close down technology. That was from Everett. Dear School Board, I know you're probably going to shut down technology at our school, but please don't. In my opinion, I think you should keep technology at our school. I think this because I love technology. For example, technology closes, if it closes down at our school, how will we learn typing? Also, if we, how, also if it closes, how will we learn to understand things on the internet? Then we can't understand important information in life. It's also a lot of people's favorite, and if you close it down, next year they will be devastated. This is why I think you should not close down technology from our school. From Harper. And the last letter to share, dear School Board, do you like technology? Well, I do. I think that we should keep technology next year. In my opinion, technology helps us learn. For example, typing helps our muscles and our brains too. A lot of kids love all capitals tech. Just because the bigger people are bigger and have more power doesn't mean they get to make the little people suffer. Please don't cut teaching positions. Please. Love, Presley. I heard, um, Director Comstan, you mentioned earlier how great it was that our, um, summer program is investing in people because that's best practice with spending these one-time funds. It's best practice in spending funds, period, in schools, investing in people. And I, I would ask all of you to bookmark your board book, Volume One, page two seventy-eight, FTE by major function and employee type. The areas that, as far as I can decipher, are closest to the students, since we are all about centering students, have grown, um, actually Nutrition Services has gone down three percent since the beginning of the pandemic.
Ms. Groom, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The buzzer went off, um, about twenty seconds ago. And so I just would remind, would ask you to, um, to wrap up your comments, please. We have a long meeting ahead of us and we, um, I really appreciate you sharing, um, your students and also for the invitation to visit your classroom, which was the highlight of that week, several weeks ago. Thank you.
So, uh, bookmark page two seventy-eight and you will see, if you do the percentages, that all of the categories that as far as I can tell are closest to students and serving students, custodians, teachers, special education, uh, nutrition staff, they have either gone down in spending from pre-pandemic to now, or only increased minimally, according to your numbers, um, at most seven percent. Whereas, uh, the things that are furthest away from students have increased close to thirty percent, such as support services, um, in central office, um, support services, community services, activities, it actually says this, activities that are not directly related to educating students, has gone up thirty-five percent. Invest in people, invest in your students.
Thank you, Ms. Groom.
And last is Natalie Spears. Natalie Spears.
Okay, um, if Natalie Spears is not in the house, um, is Ms. Cruz in the house? And if not, we'll con, we'll conclude.
I did learn that she had canceled.
Okay. Can we get one more comment from the waiting list? Who's the first one on the waiting list? Jamie Ackerman Harvey?
Yes. Jamie Ackerman Harvey, I don't know if she has a link though. Jennifer Stackhouse. Lucia Mello. Ingrid Fish. Steven Siegel.
Thank you. You'll be our final commenter, Mr. Siegel.
Hi, I'm Steven Siegel, S.I.E.G.E.L. I am a parent of two students who have gone through Portland Public, including a freshman currently at McDaniel High School. I'm also a special education teacher at a neighboring school district and a proud member of my union and a union leader. I'm here today in solidarity, supporting Mr. Brian Chu and the students and community of Harriet Tubman Middle School. I truly believe that an injury to one is an injury to all, and I'm modeling a culture of appreciation for the Harriet Tubman community. I'm here to talk with you about two things I care deeply about, academic freedom and restorative justice. Firstly, academic freedom is crucial for good teachers to be able to move beyond the constraints of a limited curriculum and engage students authentically in real-world problem-solving. For those of you who have not yet read it or have forgotten what the Contract for PAT Educators says, it includes the following in Article ten point one point one. Professional educators may introduce controversial materials provided such presentations, discussions, and materials are appropriate and relevant to course content and grade-level subject to accepted standards of professional responsibility. That is exactly what Mr. Chu did with his students, informing them of the plan to expand the freeway and close their school building, and helping them to find ways to express their feelings and concerns about that prospect. Perhaps if you had been genuinely engaging the students and parents of Harriet Tubman Middle School in the decision-making process, the response would have been different. But when I hear that you lock the doors to this building when the students walk out and show up here, I'm concerned that demonstrates how interested you really are in their feelings and concerns. PPS, Portland Public Schools, has a long history of ignoring students and community. Here's an opportunity to do better. Secondly, the data clearly shows there is no more effective way to address harm to others than through restorative justice. Mr. Chu has allegedly caused harm. He has also been harmed. Rather than taking the familiar route of punitive action, turn instead to restorative practices. I thought this was a district seeking to move away from exclusionary policies and toward embracing robust restorative practices. Now it's time to put your money where your mouth is and do it. Restorative justice works. Please wrap up this investigation in a timely manner. Facilitate a restorative process for all those harmed and allow the students of Harriet Tubman Middle School to get their teacher back before the end of this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments and your concerns. Feel free to follow up with our board manager, uh, should you have something specifically you'd like to follow up with. And we'll, uh, we're going to move forward. Thank you for showing up and thank you for your testimony tonight. Can we take just a two-minute pause? Just a little, a little breather, stretch break?
Good evening, Chair DePass, Vice Chair Scott, Student Rep Weinberg, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Guerrero. Yeah, it's good to see you. And, and first of all, this is off-script, but, um, I want to say, and I know our SEI friends, I think, have mostly gone home, but I want to make sure, my, my sixteen-year-old is going to be working this summer for the city, which is wonderful, and a lot of our youth are going to be working for PPS. My, my sixteen-year-old will be making fifteen dollars an hour, which is a fair wage for a fifteen-year-old. I really hope that our nutrition workers are making more than our student workers this summer.
Thank you.
And then back to my scripted.
And that's, you know, for a fifteen-year-old, uh, or sixteen with a job, um, is like, that's amazing. That's, I'm going to go buy my own clothes.
It's a thrill to her and I'm glad she's doing it and that's not enough for our full-time professional school workers. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, first of all, uh, thank you for engaging in the work of overseeing our district and your commitment to making sure that next year is a better year for our students. It has to be. The work of setting the budget creates the parameters in which our district can endeavor to meet the needs of each one of our students. I want to thank you for listening today, as I speak on behalf of all four thousand of our professional educators, who I have the privilege to represent, and for listening to all the community members who have written and testified about how this budget, these numbers and spreadsheets, impact our students in our schools and classrooms every day. Bridging that difference, making sure that our high-level plans are in service to our daily reality, that is our task. So, um, I want to start with a little history of where we've been this year with the budget and staffing. About two months ago, uh, PPS informed labor leaders of a plan to cut eighteen million dollars from our classrooms. And the rationale was a belief that we would lose eight percent of our state funding due to a loss in enrollment. That was in February. Since then, the financial picture has gotten much rosier. We are not losing funding. In fact, you announced last month a hundred and eighteen million dollars in new spending, much of this from additional one-time sources. However, a majority of those a hundred and twenty teaching positions that were cut in February, when PPS thought that we had an eighteen million dollar shortfall, remain and we are, and are currently written into the draft budget. So I'm here again today because we still have the opportunity to make sure that next year is a better year for our students. The question before us is how to best use our funding to accomplish that goal. The budget is huge and complicated. I have it here in all my dog marks. I appreciate all that work went into it. I've really enjoyed it. But I want to bring this back to what is simple. Our students' needs are greater than ever. Our educators are more overworked and more demoralized than ever. And we have a stable general fund for next year and a windfall in one-time funding. It is your charge in passing a budget to direct these resources where they'll make the biggest difference to our students, and that is in the classroom. And while the budget is complicated, um, there are simple answers to some of the questions that keep coming up, and I want to get some of these facts on the record. Excuse me. And we got slides. Thanks for helping. Okay, so first of all, and this one came up even last week, did PPS cut teaching positions? So I want this to be really clear, yes. This is from last week's materials from May fourth. PPS has cut fifty-four elementary school classroom positions, five K-five classroom teacher positions, and twenty-four middle school, school classroom teacher positions. In addition, uh, we learned through an information request that special education staff is being reduced by twenty-six licensed student-facing positions and about six FTE for paraeducators. So yes, we are cutting teacher positions. Here's what these cuts look like. In many schools, it means combining what had been three sections of a grade into two sections. So for example, if there are sixty fourth graders this year in three classes of twenty, pretty nice number, next year they'll be in two classes of thirty each. That's what it, that's one cut, right? Um, in some schools, it means combining two grade levels into one classroom, fourth and fifth grade together, with the teacher splitting their time trying to do both. For students, staffing cuts mean that each student gets less attention and support every day of the school year. So the next question is, do we have to cut teachers? So our general fund is stable. Funding from the state is slightly up per student for next year, and it is slightly up overall. Plus, unlike any other district in our community, we have the teacher levy, which maintains nine hundred teacher positions. That, this fund is based on property tax and won't decline even if enrollment does. That's a third of our teachers. And the Student Success Act was passed to reduce class size and support student mental health and behavior needs. These funds are stable. So funding is not the reason to cut teachers. We have the funding. The rationale I've heard recently for cutting teachers is because of the PPS Staffing Guide. So the PPS Staffing Guide, um, is, is behind you from the budget materials. When we entered the staffing process this spring, PPS used the Staffing Guide from before the pandemic to determine where we had too many teachers, and then those positions were cut. So where did this guide come from and does it represent what students need? It's important to know that our staff, our Staffing Guide did not come from the state. It is not based on best practices. If it were, we'd probably be using the quality education model. It is not an agreement between PAT and PPS. Actually, we do have an agreement about class size from PPS. When Superintendent Guerrero first came on, and, and Director Brim Edwards was there as well, um, one of the first acts of collaboration was to agree on class size thresholds. The idea was that these numbers weren't hard caps, but they weren't lofty or aspirational either. We agreed that class size should be below these numbers whenever possible and that this was an achievable goal. But that's not the guide that PPS used in deciding to cut teachers. Back to the PPS Staffing Guide, um, it's simply a tool created by people within PPS to distribute teachers across all of our schools, given the constraints of a budget at a certain time. The chart, um, the numbers in the chart were created and are easy to change, and in fact, it's been changed this year, all the numbers in bold are bolded because they were adjusted down, um, during this staffing cycle. Using these pre-pandemic ratios and enrollment projections for next year, PPS determined how many teachers each school should have, and the rest were unassigned. So this is that moment where I'm going to ask you to think about your role bridging the difference between spreadsheets and high-level thinking and the reality on the ground in our schools. And the question is, are our schools overstaffed this year? According to this staffing ratio guide, the answer is yes. And that's the reason for the a hundred and twenty teacher cuts, which is now down to eighty-eight, thank you, and the twenty-six special education cuts that are now rich- and the twenty-six special education cuts that are now written into this draft budget. But according to the lived experience on the ground, our schools are desperately in need of more adults in the building. So this weekend, I asked the people who know best, the teachers, the educators at our CSI, TSI, and Title I schools, whether their schools have sufficient staff to meet the needs of their students. I received thirty-seven responses from the building reps at twenty-nine of our CSI, TSI, and Title I schools. And the first question I asked them was if their school has the resources it needs this year to meet the needs of their students. Seventy-five percent disagreed or strongly disagreed that their schools have the resources that they need this year to meet the needs of students. Yet seventy percent of their schools said they're losing staff. And in fact, only five of those CSI, TSI, or Title I schools reported that their schools are gaining staff. Looking at next year, only one of our CSI, TSI, or Title I schools reported agreeing that their school has been given enough staff to meet student needs. And that's the next one. So the idea that our schools are overstaffed this year does not ring true to the people in those schools. I want to take a closer look at our K-five schools. So again, I applaud you on making twenty-four the maximum class size for our CSI kindergartens. This is a great first step, and along with having EAs in each class, would make sure that our youngest learners in CSI schools get a level of attention similar to what is mandated for students one year earlier in preschool. But our TSI and Title I schools still have kindergartens in classes as large as twenty-eight. Our CSI schools still have fourth and fifth grade classes with as many as thirty-two kids. This includes Saban, a TSI school where kindergarteners and first graders will be in classes of twenty-nine, and fourth graders will be packed into classes of thirty-one. This includes Chief Joseph, a TSI school where kindergarteners will be in classes of twenty-seven and third graders in classes of twenty-eight. And remember, if all goes well, those classes will be even larger because we want our community to come back to our public schools, not to leave. And our class-size projections are based on the assumption that more families will leave. PPS staff has already improved our elementary school class sizes since those projections were first shared in February. Thank you. It's noticed. It makes a big difference. With a little more investment, we can ensure a better year for more students, including those at Chief Joseph and Saban, as well as Grouse and Glenn Coe and Lewis and Bridal Mile, who all currently have classes staffed to have near or above thirty students. Now I want to talk about middle school. I'm going to take a drink of water for this. As you know, it has been a uniquely difficult year for our middle schools. And you've heard about it tonight, and you've been hearing about it all year. Several of our middle schools are in full-on crisis. As has been reported throughout the year, our middle schools are struggling to keep our students safe, let alone learning. Yet, according to the class-size document from May fourth, you are cutting twenty-four middle school teacher positions. According to the budget draft, and I don't know how to understand what the difference is here, you're cutting thirty-eight licensed positions from middle schools. That's on page one hundred and thirty-four of the printed edition. We have eight middle schools that are identified as TSI or Title I. You probably won't be surprised to hear that reps from every single one of these schools disagreed or strongly disagreed that their school has enough staff and resources this year to give students the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral support that they need. Yet, six out of eight of those TSI and Title I middle schools are losing staff under the current budget. George, Tubman, Beaumont, Kellogg, Mount Taber, and Lane are all losing staff. Every one of these schools will have class sizes in the thirties in their neighborhood programs. Losing staff from what we have now to next year, there'll be fewer adults in those schools. Educators at these schools are pleading for more staff. Without me making any suggestions, the asks from these eight schools were nearly identical. Educators asked for lower class sizes and full-time, building-based, restorative justice coordinators, additional counselors and wraparound supports, fully-resourced special education teams, and more support with behavior, including student management specialists and behavior interventional specialists. Of course, you have all said that if we need to make cuts, the classroom is the last place we should look. So if you believe it is necessary to cut from classrooms, to cut from our middle schools, and from special education, I am sure you expect to see cuts from the central office as well. And so the question is, has PPS made cuts from central office? When some of you asked this question last month, the answer was quickly given, yes, we have. And then you asked for the details. Thank you for asking for the details. This is a good example of why the details matter. The deeper dive you requested reveals that the majority of the six-point-seven-million dollars reported as savings from central office for this year was simply unfilled positions, the majority of which are positions in our schools that were never filled this year. For next year, the majority of the seven-point-three-million dollars in central office savings, shockingly, is a reduction in nineteen special education positions and thirteen custodial positions from our schools. This is from a document shared last week in answer to board questions. So no, it does not appear that PPS has looked for cuts outside of our classrooms. And no, no reasonable person would consider cutting special education professionals and not hiring custodians to keep our classrooms clean constitute a cut from the central office. On the contrary, PPS has grown its central office staff substantially over the last five years, and the budget proposal adds central office staff growth again. The number of central office academic administrators has grown from thirty-four to fifty-seven over the past five years, and that's from information from an information request. And there are currently at least one hundred and fifty-five central office employees making over a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So I want to be clear, that's not building administrators. That is central office employees who work here in this building. An analysis of the budget from two thousand seventeen to now shows a forty-four percent increase in the amount we are spending from the general fund to support the central office, while only a twenty-three percent increase in what we are spending on student-facing staff. While a strong, functional central office is certainly important, the clear trend of shifting resources out of classrooms and into the central office is not student-focused. We can do better.
Hello. For the record, my name is Angela Bonilla. I'm the president-elect of PAT. I started my career here at PPS as an instructional assistant at Riggler, a CSI school. I was part of the first group of bilingual and bicultural DLI residents and then returned to Riggler to teach fourth-grade Spanish immersion. I was the first Black teacher most of my students had had their entire academic career. I later taught at Cesar Chavez, K-8, as a sixth-grade self-contained teacher, then fourth-grade Spanish immersion again at Scott Elementary, just in time for the start of the pandemic. I'm currently an instructional coach, and I support instructional leadership, the instructional leadership team, as well as co-facilitate our student intervention team. I live, breathe, and love our Title I, TSI, and CSI schools. It's all I've ever known as an educator. Over the past few months, I've seen multiple families, students, educators, and workers who are on the ground every day at our Title, CSI, and TSI schools come to speak to this body. I have seen them voice the immense need of our students during their testimony on the impacts of this budget. I've heard about mental health needs, the fights and trauma exposure responses in our middle schools. And I've seen several on this board imply that only our most privileged families are fighting this budget and this push for equity. That narrative must end here. Many of our community have gotten off of work, have found babysitters, have pushed back the unpaid planning they do every evening to share their concerns with you. We come here because we are fighting to have great public schools for all students, regardless of ability, zip code, race, or home language. We come here and speak our truth to your power because we live, breathe, and love our Title I, TSI, and CSI schools. So I know you all ran to be on this board because you want to help kids in our schools. You ran to reverse the shameful racist legacy PPS has when it comes to serving our Black, Brown, and Indigenous kids. We are all leaders because we want to be in a position to uplift all students, especially those who have been pushed to the margins. But that change can only come from leveraging the power given to us by our constituents into action. We need to bring that high-level assessment down to the ground-level reality. So now that you have Elizabeth's slides and data before you, I want to bring us to the possible solutions. I firmly believe that we can and must do better because I know we share the goal of better supporting our students at CSI, TSI, and Title I schools. And I know we can take the next step with our budget, amending what you have been presented to put our resources where they will make the biggest difference every day for our students. And that's in our schools and in our classrooms. So here's what our students need. We need you to cost out and prioritize restoring classroom educators to our Title, TSI, and CSI elementary schools. Elementary is really close to having a good ratio. A few more FTE could be distributed, and that would make sure that no class is over twenty-eight in a CSI, TSI, or Title I school. Title I schools like Saban should not have twenty-nine student kindergarten classes, so let's remedy that. We need to cost out and prioritize a serious investment in our middle schools. I heard Director Green ask months ago what it would cost to have small class sizes across the district. I have not yet seen that assessment, and I go through that board book religiously. So what would it cost to ensure that no students in our Title, CSI, and TSI middle schools have classes of more than thirty students? A serious investment in our middle schools includes school-based wraparound support. These schools all need a counselor, social worker, and restorative justice coordinator in the building. Having one or two folks at BESC who are deployed when there are crises is reactive instead of preventative. We need to restore cuts to special education. We need educators on the ground, in the schools, building relationships with students, and already there to help before we hit a point of crisis. Sonia Renee Taylor states, "We will not go back to normal. Normal never was." "Our pre-corona existence was never normal, other than we normalized greed, inequity, exhaustion, depletion, extraction, disconnection, confusion, rage, hoarding, hate, and lack." "We should not long to return, my friends. We are being given the opportunity to stitch a new garment, one that fits all of humanity and nature." "We need the district to join us in stitching this new garment." "Please amend the budget to divert resources from the central office to our schools. Restore special education positions, restore classroom educators, provide true restorative justice support to our middle schools. Believe the educators you employ when we tell you what we need to give our kids the schools that they deserve." Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair DePass, I actually have a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Please.
So thank you for the testimony. I really appreciate it. And Angela, I hope you don't mind emailing us the solutions. I tried to write them down, but it would be great. So we can dig in a little bit on what those might look like. I just wanted to ask, sort of going back a little bit, because Elizabeth, you talked about how PPS is not losing funding, and we have a stable general fund and levy, and I think that's true when we look at the revenue side, right? We do see that growth you talked about. We also know projections show the expenditure is growing even more than the revenue, which is what's resulting in the shortfall. And I guess I just want to get from you a sense of, do you agree with those revenue or those expenditure projections? Because as we've talked about before, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, that's what drives it, right? So we can, the potential need to make those reductions.
So yes, I believe inflation is real, right, and prices go up. What I know as well is we were told in February that the reason to cut those teachers was because a budget shortfall of eighteen million dollars because of a belief that the general fund, funding from Oregon, was going to be reduced to match our drop in enrollment. That didn't happen. So I'm not saying that we have all the money in the world. I'm saying the cuts that were made in February were not based on a need to make those cuts. And I know you and your colleagues have all said that the classroom is the last place that we should be cutting. We made those cuts without even seeing what was coming from the state.
Yeah.
That's actually what my question is about, because my understanding from the presentations we've had is that the state school fund actually did decrease, and the only reason that we see an increase is due to the transportation reimbursement. And so that it's the, our transportation costs went up tons, and we get a sixty percent reimbursement from the state. And so that's wrapped into that state school fund, and without that, like, the transportation costs went up like sixty percent. And so without that bump in the state school fund, when you're looking at what we actually have to be able to use for teacher salaries, we did have a decrease. That was my understanding, and I may be incorrect there.
I can share you the financials from the state that I shared a month or so ago.
And does that include that sixty percent transportation reimbursement in them? Seventy, sorry. Okay. Yeah, that'd be great if you could share those.
I think what's important to me is I want to make sure that we're starting with the same set of, sort of, facts in terms of the dollars because then we can really move on to the solutions. And what I'm worried about is when I, because I hear it from you and a lot of your members that write, is we don't need to make cuts. And I don't think factually that's true. I think when you look at projected expenditures and projected revenues, there is a shortfall, and we can dig into exactly why and where that's coming from. And, you know, you say inflation, it's inflation, but it's wages going up. I mean, it's all those things driving it. And I've been doing budgets for a long time. This is a common, it's a common, it's very difficult to explain to the public. And I get it a lot, when I used to be a budget director, that they say, you used to have a million-dollar budget, and now it's a one-point-five-million-dollar budget. Why are you telling me I have to cut? And it's because, well, because our expenses are one-point-six.
Absolutely. And I think what's important to remember is that we're not saying there don't need to be any cuts. We're saying they shouldn't be cuts that affect student-facing, building-based positions.
Okay. And that's an important distinction because now we can move on to that question of, once we agree on what that shortfall is, where does it come from? And I think, you know, going back to noting that, you know, eighty percent of our budget is sort of classroom, and twenty percent is sort of the other things, if I'm getting those statistics right. You know, again, we often hear that, you know, you know, cut admin, cut admin. Absolutely, let's look for it. I appreciate the information you brought forward today, and I think we should, you know, dig into some of those things. But I also know that, you know, we could probably get rid of, you know, huge swaths of the central office, and we still wouldn't solve the shortfall, given the size of what it is. And so I guess I want to be realistic with the public about that as well. When eighty percent of our costs are coming from teachers and staff, there's going to need to be some reductions there. And again, it is driven by enrollment. I mean, if we didn't lose four thousand students, we would have higher state funding that would be able to make up some of the shortfall.
Actually, I don't believe that's true because our state funding was already set. So if we have more students, the biennium already happened, right? The state legislature set the funding for two years before, and they did not reduce it because students did not come back during the pandemic. So actually, the enrollment drop is not impacting our funding much because our enrollment is similar, our drop is similar to the drop in the state.
Yeah, I'll defer to smarter people on that who can answer the question.
He didn't mean me.
No, I actually meant, I meant Elizabeth instead of myself.
She was smarter than you.
I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. I don't know the answer. I will defer to smarter people such as you, Claire Hertz, other people who know this better. Ooh, my apologies for that.
I got you.
Certainly not, yeah.
Well, and I think it's also important to remember that we are not saying, we specified returning those positions to our Title, CSI, and TSI schools. So even if there is a divide between what we can cut at central office and bringing back all eighty-eight of those positions, we're pointing out, well, let's focus on special education. Let's focus on our middle schools. Let's focus on our Title, CSI, and TSI schools.
Yeah. And then my last question is, you know, you talked about the windfall in one time, which we do. We have a windfall in one time. My understanding of the proposed budget is we're also spending, you know, a significant chunk of our reserves, about forty million dollars. And I guess my question to you is, if we know projecting out that spending that one time now, and some of that's going to save teaching positions, means that we might lose those teaching positions next year if that enrollment doesn't come back, and if the state doesn't, you know, kick in with a QEM model, are you okay doing that this year, given the learning loss, keeping those positions, even knowing that could mean actual layoffs next year? Because that is my understanding of the trade-off, and I guess I would say the trade-off that we're potentially facing, and then if we were to spend even more. And I guess I would say the trade-off that we're potentially facing, and then if we were to spend even more, that trade-off could get even larger.
Let me go back to what I said before, because we need to keep this simple. What we're doing right now is not working. We cannot continue having our middle schools run the way they are now next year. They're not working. It's not an option. We have to invest in our schools to a point where they are meeting the needs of our students. As was said by one of the speakers before, if we're not doing that, what are we doing? If we can't keep educators in schools because they are leaving, because the workload is untenable, and they're taking leaves and then not coming back, we're not running a school district.
Yeah, and I guess I would just say if we take ourselves to a fiscal cliff and then drive off of it, that also has really significant consequences for our students and our teachers and our families.
And I appreciate the fiduciary responsibility. And I think we have some options right now.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing those, and you are way smarter than I am, so thank you for that.
Thank you so much for your comments. I think there's more to come, and it's a great conversation. I would love to see those solutions that you mentioned. I'd love to see those and would take them, you know, under advisement.
Absolutely. I'll go ahead and get those sent to you.
Thank you. And I just, I've got, I can see families waiting that want to, are here to speak, and we're running about 90 minutes late, so I'm feeling bad for them. I appreciate your comments, appreciate your solutions and your insights. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry for that little side comment there, the side conversation. We're moving to the student representative's report. The student representative who will be graduating in...
Last day of schools, 13 school days.
How many days? I knew it was going to be in days. He's counting, he's counting the days.
School days. There's also weekends, there's also weekends. And prom, which I won't be here, and a holiday, yes.
Holiday, a prom.
Yes. Before I start my public comment, or my comment, I just wanted to ask if, after my comment, we could move up the charter pass-through? Just because I know that's who we have parents waiting to comment on.
Do, I think, do we have Southeast guiding?
We actually have two, you know, both groups are important. We have two groups with families, with children, that want to speak, and they have to go one after the other.
Yeah, charter pass-through is just, there's stuff in between that and the Southeast Guiding Coalition. So if we could move it up as much as possible for those families, after SCGC. And just since SCGC is going to take a while, just...
It will.
Yep.
Yes, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And on to my comments. So Director Brim Edwards already extended her gratitude, but I wanted to extend my gratitude as well for the DSC bylaws, which was headed by Oscar Calvert. Thank you. That was half a year, actual work probably two years, conversation-wise in the making. Thank you for finally getting it before the board. And I also wanted to just talk about my general thoughts about the budget and some things that I'm hoping to see maybe altered slightly, or just have a conversation about. First is the social-emotional education supports for students. We're keeping it the same from last year, and just with the recommendation from the American School Counselor Association. The current ratios we have are under what their recommendation was. And actually, they have several studies, which I can share with you all. That point that a lower ratio of counselors to students increases GPA, increases graduation rates, increases attendance, increases post-secondary readiness, and decreases disciplinary infractions. So all of these things seem like something the board has obviously been focusing on for years. And I'd like to see some conversation about what it would look like to decrease those ratios. I believe in elementary schools, it's 400 to 1, which is astronomically high for some schools. Secondly, living wages for nutritional workers and custodial staff is probably, if we don't increase that, it's probably going to warrant a no vote from me on the budget. I don't believe we can pass a budget that has our custodial staff or nutritional workers at 30% of the median income in Portland. It's just not possible for them to live in Portland at all. Also, just as we get into some media topics later in this agenda, I just wanted to mention to the board that we should really center students and their experiences in this process, especially in the Southeast Guiding Coalition. We hear a lot from parents, but we should really be focusing on the student experience of these proposed changes. And unfortunately, that is a little difficult. And I understand the engagement department is very busy, but in the entire engagement document, I didn't see one mention of any student engagement done. I mean, I've been advocating that for probably two years since the Southeast Guiding Coalition started. So it's hard for me to really understand the student impact when we're not seeing student engagement in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your candor, and I always do. Appreciate you. I think in light of where we are in the evening, we would skip over board committee and conference reports. Until next time, I know everybody's disappointed, especially Director Lowry. She really wants to talk about her committee, but... We have a lot of committee things, so we're going to move now to the Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing Conversation. Sorry. Superintendent Guerrero, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair DePass. Just to recap where we are, as you know, the Phase 1 of Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing began in fall 2020 and resulted in the conversion of the five K-8 schools, a new boundary, and program assignments for Kellogg Middle School, which, as you know, opened this fall. Subsequently, in May, the board adopted a Phase 2 charge centering on converting Harrison Park from a K-8 to a comprehensive middle school, and increasing enrollment at Lane Middle School was another objective. Tonight, we're going to hear a recommendation from Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz, who's joining us remotely. But we have other senior staff here this evening who have been deeply involved in this process to develop a plan for enrollment balancing, program placement, and school boundaries for the Southeast. The board is scheduled to vote on a final recommendation at the April 24 meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team.
That's May 24th.
It's been a long day. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. It's been a long week, and I think it's just Tuesday. Thank you, people. I'm sorry, it's been a long day, and...
Good evening, Chair DePass, members of the board, and Superintendent Guerrero and Jackson Weinberg, student rep. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present our findings to the board regarding the Southeast Enrollment and Program Balancing process for Phase 2. With me tonight are team members who have worked on this process. I have to my right Margaret Calvert. I also have Judy Brennan, who is the Director of Enrollment and Transfer. And I do have Beth Kavanaugh, one of our co-chairs in the process. So welcome. Again, tonight, we're going to be talking about how our process and how we went about addressing the charge that the board had given to us. Next slide, please. The board's charge for Phase 2 was to convert Harrison Park K-8 school into a middle school, which meant that we would have to move the K-5 portion of the K-8 to a different building. We listened to the community. They wanted their students to continue to stay in that community in close proximity to their siblings and to their families, so they could be within walking distance of their homes. We were able to grant that because we were able to then move the K-5 building into the Clark Building right next to Harrison Park. However, that does mean that we're going to have to move the CSS school into another location. The other part of the process was that we increased the enrollment at Lane Middle School. So those are the two things that we looked at. To accommodate for that, we looked at some of our drivers, the things that we need to have in place to be able to execute the board's requests. So we also considered the PPS Reimagined Document and Strategic Plan, and our goals for developing and producing graduates that would stand the test of time, and also that would meet the tenets that have been identified in our Portland Public School graduates. So what we did was, we looked at those, and based on that, we determined that in order to provide very robust programs for our students in middle school, we have to at least have 500 students per middle school. The other thing is that we looked at the elementary schools around, and in order for us to provide the programs and the supports that our students need at young ages, the ideal number would be about 270 students. The third thing that we considered was our streets, the major streets that cross through our neighborhoods. We wanted to make sure that our locations weren't such that would cause students to cross these major streets and put them in danger. We considered the Safe Roots to Schools approach. And in doing all of this, of course, and looking at the programs, we also considered looking at our DLI programs and our student academic performance in relation to the DLI programs, the supports our teachers have, and the professional development experiences that are intended to create and enhance teacher efficacy. So looking at all these drivers, we decided that if we were to accomplish these, the board's charge, what we would need to then do is consolidate programs and do some shifts to increase numbers at Lane, to convert Harrison Park to a middle school, and to find a home for the K-5 portion of Harrison Park. Next slide, please.
I got a little ahead of you.
Oh, okay. All right. In looking at student academic achievement, which is really what we're trying to, which is really what we're trying to do, we looked at the performers of our students in our single-strand programs. Our English scholars in our single-strand programs do not perform as well as our English scholars in other non-co-located programs. So that was a concern. The other thing that was a concern also was our ability to provide an immersive experience for our students who are learning, say, Spanish or the Chinese language. And research has shown that the best way to enhance DLI opportunities is to make sure that students are situated in areas where they have the best or closest proximity to native speakers, so they can embrace the bicultural and the bilingual aspects of the language.
So I just have a quick question about the single strand. So at the Bridger meeting, there was a statement that said, "Single-strand programs are too unstable to be successful over time, particularly in schools with lower socioeconomic status." Does that mean the district is, as a policy, a small P, okay with single strands and higher-income neighborhoods? And if so, what's the, why was that differentiation made at Bridger?
So single strands are actually not as effective, regardless of what the socioeconomic status is. The question came from somebody in the audience, and I think that they specified around Bridger, just because we happened to be at Bridger that night. But overall, research has shown that we don't have as much success with single-strand programs, regardless of the socioeconomic status.
Yeah. It was on the PPS slide at the Bridger meeting that it said that, that... So this is just a concern in the neighborhood, the differentiation in treatment, and whether the treatment's based on socioeconomic status.
No, it is not.
And if I could just add that the emphasis here is on single strands of the English Scholar Program, the program that is not the dual-language portion, and the impact on those kids. Looking at data that came from our research accountability and assessment, and seeing the potential impact on those students. So it is something that we're looking at across the district, not just in Southeast. And that, again, the emphasis is on, specifically, we're looking at the impact for the neighborhood or English Scholar Program. We'll be talking more about that in a minute.
I just also do want to add that Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz is joining us virtually.
She's listening in. I don't know that she'll be able to speak, though.
Right. In this process, we centered black and native students, and now indigenous students as well. In doing this, one of the things that the map revealed is that most of them live on the outer edges of the Southeast area, as you can see on the map. We also provided a table that shows how the numbers fall regarding the schools. And Harrison Park, for example, in the neighborhood program, we do have black or indigenous student count of 190, and which represents 42% of the population. And then it's on a sliding scale after that, so they have the highest number. So how do we center their needs? How do we create our programs to support them? And how do we make sure that they continue to reside in the communities that they're most familiar with, while at the same time attaining the academic experiences and opportunities that we have provided for them? Next slide, please. So some of the issues that were, that we discovered are impacting our communities of color, is that most of them reside in areas where they have fewer students. And because they have fewer students, it's harder to create comprehensive schools in those areas without moving students around, without moving student bodies around. The other thing that we realize is, of course, if we do not have the basic or the minimum numbers, then it is harder for us to provide programs that is supportive of the academic experiences and the enrichment they need to be able to advance and compete in the years ahead. So we looked at the single-strand K-5 neighborhood programs as well. And those limit opportunities by a huge margin for all students, regardless of what the socioeconomic status is. The difference might be that parents who are a little bit more affluent might be able to access a lot of other supports outside of what the school is able to provide. But overall, it is a challenge to have just a single strand in either the neighborhood side or the DLI side. The collaboration is really important. The opportunity to practice in the target language is really important as well, and the immersive experience is important to language learning experiences.
Dr. O, I had a quick question about this slide.
Sure.
Sorry. This is just a very analytical approach to, like, the success of a student. Was there any information on, like, sense of belonging, sense of community at these schools in this process?
Absolutely. And that's why we moved the K-5 for Harrison Park into the Clark Building and not out of the neighborhood. It's also another reason that we were looking at relocating the whole DLI school into the Lent neighborhood, because that's where we have the greatest concentration of our native speakers of the Spanish language. So yes, we did give consideration.
But the sense of belonging for the Lent students, the neighborhood students?
The sense of belonging for the neighborhood students? What was the question?
So I'm just building on Jackson's question about the sense of belonging, because it seemed like what I heard at the Lent meeting was, their sense of belonging was as part of the Lent community.
So I will let Judy speak to that. And the reason is because there was a lot of community engagement around that. And if I recall, when you and I had spoken about that, I had said that most of what we heard from the community prior to now was very different from what was shared that evening. And I went back and I did speak with the leaders to try to at least glean why we sort of didn't have the same information that we were working from before. So yes, of course, there are some people who have a preference. But ultimately, when we do center our students, we're looking for the academic achievement and experiences of our students around language acquisition and language development and professional supports for our teachers in our buildings.
And I'll just add that I think what we would hope to do is frame the work that's been done over the last year, and then really, we're here to listen to your range of questions, comments, and what else you need. And I keep looking at the clock behind you, and it says 7:05, and I think, but we have plenty of time. And yet, that's not, that's not true. So let's see if we can go ahead and get through a few more minutes in the presentation, and then we'd love to come back to your questions. Is that all right?
And we'll provide time for questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. It, this... It, this, this deck, um, is, is emergent. Yeah. It is not.
No, it's different.
I apologize, we... Uh, we've, we've been a lean bench this week and we appreciate your patience, but this will definitely be available.
So a lot of data that actually drove this work was obtained from the Research Accountability and Assessment Department and that's part of the information that drove the decisions, that drove the decisions that were, um, arrived at here.
So in this lengthy process, and it has been just about exactly a year since you approved the resolution for this phase of work, um, our partners along the way, an amazing and committed group of parents, guardians, principals, teachers, community partners from across the southeast region, um, we, um, we can't imagine, um, trying to engage without such a, a smart, committed body of folks. Um, it was probably more than folks bargained for because we really didn't believe that we'd have to complete the entire process virtually, but we did. Uh, it was nineteen meetings. They dug through fifteen really intense proposals, um, with, uh, developed by Flow Analytics. Um, a number of them are here tonight because they're so committed to making sure this process, um, supports kids and their community and schools. Um, you're going to hear from, um, Co-Chairs Beth Kavanaugh as well as Adrielle Person, who's with us virtually but also without voice. Um, and, and what they'll be sharing with you is a little about their process. What Deputy Superintendent Hertz's recommendation, um, that we're speaking on behalf of tonight is, um, based on their, their final proposal, which did have the most votes but did not achieve consensus across that body. There were some significant concerns that the scope of the work was not significant enough to address more of the enrollment challenges that exist in southeast, um, including, um, omitting some of the schools that are, um, a little bit further west. There were also strong concerns that we did not wind up with a set of middle school assignments that best balances the middle school capacity and that leaves, um, issues undone. Um, that's just a very short summary. Uh, we did offer extra time. One of the reasons we're with you now in May instead of earlier when we hoped was to give the committee more time, um, to see if they could get farther and get better. And, uh, the effort was thorough, honest, and they gave all, they gave all. And, um, it is disappointing that we didn't come to a full consensus, but what I believe is before you is, um, a report from them that shows where the trade-offs occurred along the way and hopefully, um, gives you good opportunity to see if there's any other paths to take. Um, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Kavanaugh for some comments. Dr. Kavanaugh, congratulations.
She graduated on Sunday. Hello. I'm Beth Kavanaugh and actually, I'll take this off. And Adrielle Person, my co-co-chair, is joining us virtually. As Judy mentioned, she's unable to speak. So she and I worked furiously over Google Docs and text to make sure we had our ducks in a row. Um, so Adrielle was also a part of the writing team who created the final SCGC report that informed Deputy Superintendent Hertz's recommendation. Um, first, I just want to clarify, our role as SCGC co-chairs primarily was creating a line of communication between the SCGC membership and district staff. So while some SCGC members did share feedback with their, from their communities with us, generally, we have not been, like, myself and Adrielle have not been in a position to represent the broader community and their feedback, so. Uh, so I'm gonna talk to you about the reports that a team of volunteers from the SCGC created to summarize the work of the coalition, which includes, as shown on the slide behind you, an overview of the SCGC's scope and process, a clear explanation of what was included in the proposal that received the most votes, a description of the decision points and their relation to each other, recommendations for implementation in both the long and short term, and also a supplemental document signed by a majority of the community coalition members expressing dissent for the decision to limit the scope of SCGC's work to just the outer southeast schools. Adrielle and I really want to encourage you to review this eleven-page document. The writing team worked really hard to keep it brief, clear, and focused on areas that coalition members thought were essential for board members to understand. The section on key decision points includes a table that illustrates the interplay of the elements of the proposal, including where the SCGC did reach consensus and where there were notable objections to the proposal. While this document aligns with Deputy Superintendent's recommendation in a lot of ways, there are, there's a different perspective provided here by the SCGC membership that we think it's really important for you to, as members of the board, to be familiar with. And I also want to draw your attention to that two-page supplement that was included. Um, as I said, it was signed by a majority of the members expressing frustration with the decision to exclude inner southeast schools from the SCGC process. Many members felt this was a barrier to successful process, both in terms of equity, since the inner southeast schools, who were not impacted, are more affluent overall with fewer students of color, and in terms of the math, because those are the schools with robust to overcrowded enrollment. And because we were not able to shift enrollment east, starting from the river, outer southeast elementaries are hovering right at or below two hundred and seventy students, meaning this whole rebalancing may need to be revisited sooner rather than later. So, we wanted to talk a little bit about the community engagement challenges that we observed. We saw barriers to community understanding of what was proposed and this may speak a little bit to what, um, to that disconnect we're hearing about between the feedback that was collected early on as compared to feedback that's coming in once there's a concrete proposal in front of people and they can see how they're directly impacted. There was barriers to understanding of what was proposed and potential impacts. There was both too much information to process and also a lack of specific information about impacts to particular communities. And these also tie into concerns reflected by over half of the community SCGC members who asked for a second scenario, which, um, was eventually developed and extended our timeline. For both the SCGC and community members, without the ability to directly compare flushed-out scenarios side by side to do a real cost-benefit analysis, to see the benefits and challenges presented both systemically and for specific communities, it was difficult to understand what those trade-offs were in order to provide more constructive feedback and see what are the things that feel, um, doable, feel that we can live with, and what are the things where we don't, they don't feel great necessarily, but we understand how they fit into the bigger picture or the things that, um, that we embrace fully. We heard that language or school-specific meetings sometimes occurred at times that made it hard for community members to participate or that there, in, within those meetings, there weren't necessarily opportunities to ask questions or respond to information. It was more an information-giving sort of situation in some of those. Not all, the, the meetings were structured differently. Um, and also limited opportunities for community members to address the board directly with concerns or feedback. So our question for you is, how will you, as board members, engage with and hear from community on this proposal now that it is concrete before finalizing your vote? How will you ensure that this is done equitably so that you hear from communities who have less support or organization? And what do you still need from staff to ensure that this happens? Next, I wanted to talk a little about the implement- implementation feedback that's provided in the SCGC report. Deputy Superintendent Hertz's recommendation was responsive to many of the implementation suggestions that came up in this report, but there were a few we wanted to highlight. The recommendation touches on a few key issues that SCGC members continued to grapple with and identified as essential areas for support through the transition. First, there was clear opposition from many Lent families about the transition to all DLI school. The ongoing engagement with this community will be extremely important and was noted in, um, in Superintendent Hertz's recommendation. Also, many coalition members remain concerned about enrollment stability at Harrison Park and thus the long-term ability to provide equitable opportunities when compared to larger middle schools in the region. Many of the proposed changes require families to travel further or across more difficult routes than they currently do to get to school. We've heard from families a lack of faith in the district's ability to ensure safe and reliable transportation, especially after struggling through this year's transportation challenges. My kids don't ride the bus, but I kept on the information, I kept on the message mail information just so that I had a sense of how often buses were being canceled to the, to Hospford where my kids go and it was multiple times a week, every week. And I'm just thinking to myself, I don't know how, how kids get to school when, if their parents aren't able to get them or they don't live close enough to walk. So that trust is a, a real concern, is very visceral for parents this year. The SCGC recommended looking at some targeted boundary changes, uh, specifically along Cesar Chavez Boulevard that would not only provide a larger buffer to some of those elementary schools enrolled, uh, at or below two hundred and seventy students in the proposal, but also creating safer routes for school for students who currently have to cross that busy road. But because these changes would impact schools outside the current scope, they were not included in the recommendation that's coming to you from, um, from Claire Hertz's recommendation. Uh, we wanted to wrap up with a rec- a reflection on the recommendation itself. There were some strengths in that, we saw strengths in that there's access created to middle schools and increased opportunities for students in outer southeast, some who've been in under-enrolled schools for years and years, that it maintains and grows the Spanish DLI program at Kellogg Middle School and builds on the robust supports that were implemented when that building was opened. It reduces single-strand neighborhood elementary programs that have been shown not to serve students as well and consolidating the DLI programs at the middle school level. Remaining challenges are the imbalanced middle school enrollment across the region with Kellogg over the district's recommended utilization level and significantly lower enrollment at other middle schools. The lack of enroll- the, uh, that it locks in enrollment at or below the floor of two seventy for several outer southeast middle elementary schools and that there's increased reliance on district-provided transportation in some cases and lack of support for some of the proposed changes from impacted communities. However, we also see a lot of opportunities in the implementation. Engaging impacted communities in transition planning is huge. Facilitating community building among programs that are blending, such as Creative Science in Bridger, Lent in Marysville. Learn from the positive experience staffing Kellogg Middle School has proven to be from, we've heard a lot of really positive feedback from Kellogg Middle School teachers and students and families. And build on that when staffing Harrison Park and the power of a staff that reflects and represents the student body. Harrison Park is one of our most diverse school communities and they need to see teachers that look like them and supports that, um, that support their community. Minimizing the impact of future enrollment balancing on those who are moving as a result of this process. This was one of our major concerns with leaving inner southeast out of the process is that if that, that's where our overcrowded schools are, how are we going to balance those without then re-impacting again all of these kids that are currently moving around in this process? So be cognizant of that transition and those, um, and those shifts. And finally, um, oh, sorry, not quite finally, two bullet points. Um, engage in a transparent process to review the role and impact of K-eight focus option schools in the district. We have, we're translate, we're transitioning to a K-eight, K-five middle school model and yet, we've got various K-eights, some of which are still neighborhood schools only, some of which have a lottery component, some are lottery-only. How are those intended to and how are they actually functioning in the district? And how do they impact our ability to fully, robustly enroll our middle schools? And then, include SCGC members in reflecting on ways that we can learn from this process to strengthen the future enrollment balancing work and community engagement that's coming up. You have a lot of, as was mentioned, incredibly dedicated, passionate people about this process who had a lot of frustration, to be honest, and a lot of feedback that feels like it could be useful in having more productive, um, processes in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Beth. Is that working? There we go. Good evening, Chair to Pass, Directors, Superintendent Guerrero, Student Representative Weinberg. I'm speaking here this evening as part of the team that has been working with, um, uh, our community and the Southeast Guiding Coalition to bring forth this proposal. I also want to share that I'm, I'm speaking in part tonight because Shanice Clark, our Director of Engagement, could not be with us. So I'll be sharing some of the steps and the creative, um, mechanisms she used to, uh, work with the community and then also speak to some of the, um, recommendations that we're hearing from Chair Kavanaugh and that has come through the, um, the process as we go. So there are a couple pieces. Um, there are, um, there have been a series of, uh, community engagement that started in the summer of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we'll speak, uh, some to how this has shifted over time and some of the efforts that have, uh, there have certainly been lessons learned and lessons learned about, um, engaging in the midst of a pandemic as well. The, uh, the various details of the community engagement process are available on the pip- on the public side of the district website. So I just want to make sure you see some of the links here, but there, there's a significant body of, uh, that, that is up on the website. And then I want to just, uh, reflect with Student Rep Wein- Student Representative Weinberg about where there were places and opportunities for their, uh, to hear from students. And there were student listening sessions that were held in December and then we'll kind of come back to some of those other places. But we certainly can elevate and highlight where those opportunities were and, uh, where they will continue to be as we move through, uh, next phases. So as you will see, uh, on, on this slide, there are a number of places that, uh, our community engagement started in, last summer. And, um, by winter and, uh, the coalition went back and said, and asked that our staff to look specifically at impacted communities at Lent and then also to go back and really think about how are we engaging, uh, our communities of color, um, our diverse communities also that have, um, uh, you know, our language diverse communities as well. So, in the past, a piece that, once the draft proposal was completed in, uh, April, there, some surveys went out. There were some other mechanisms where, uh, we went out, uh, the staff went out and worked with, talked with, uh, parents, teachers, um, at Lenton and Elementary in particular. Uh, there were some open houses. There were, um, some pieces where we looked specifically at the impacted schools and, and also at Bridger. We received input from many Lent students with strong advocacy for the remaining, for, for this, for their cohort to remain part of the Kellogg Middle School and to keep Lent as it is now, uh, with both English scholars and Spanish dual-language, um, at the site. After, um, as I said earlier, that part of what, um, uh, partway through this process, there was a request for, from the coalition to go back out and to really listen to specific communities. And we're hearing that there will probably be a request for a similar outreach again. Go ahead, yeah. Some of the highlights and themes that emerged as we went through, um, some of the work that happened with our, um, Black and Indigenous families in particular. They pointed to some very specific, um, um, themes and values. One of the pieces that came forward was they really voiced that they wanted the district to provide adequately resourced schools that didn't, um, demand their contin- what they pres- what they stated was continuous advocacy on their part. They want strong interpersonal connections and that they wanted the, the connections, um, both with the staff in the building to recognize and be connected to their students and the community to be connected to the school. And finally, they didn't want to have to choose between programs and proximity. They wanted to, they didn't, um, they didn't want to have to think about what that trade-off was, that they wanted the robust programs to be close to where they lived. I think the other pieces that surfaced, um, was how the students were being engaged and so that there is this piece around wanting both, um, academic passions to be present and, and in the robust programming, but then also that the students, uh, were being taught in ways that were engaging to their, their, and affirming to their, to their kids. And that they, we were looking both at, um, uh, this notion of, uh, supports as well as thinking about the, as you see down on the bottom, some of the, what it means, especially in middle schools, to have robust programming. And that was a pretty significant discussion throughout. What did it mean to have robust middle school programming? You can see, and I, I, Chair Kavanaugh has, has mentioned that, you know, this, one of the other things that, that surfaced is how do we process the vast amount of information that is, uh, was part of, um, the discussions? The pace with which some of the, um, uh, the, the scenarios and the details of, and the complexity of it, um, thinking about where are those spaces? Um, some of the, um, ways that that happened often was with, you know, principals engaging with families as they were coming into or out of buildings. as they were coming into or out of buildings at the beginning of the day or the end of the day, along with the formal meetings. But I think that we will continue to look at how do we present, share, and work with information so families can make informed decisions. And finally, just to echo one of the sentiments that Chair Kavanaugh just said was, you know, we heard loud and clearly, and we've heard this loud and clearly from across communities across the district, but in particular for the families here in southeast, that they want teachers, educators, folks in the building that reflect the community and reflect their students, whether it's by language, culture, or race, and that this is of very high value and that that's something that they, we're hearing again and again. How can we do and really think about the diversity of the workforce so that students are seeing themselves, not only in the materials, but in the adults that they're working with in the school? So as was stated upfront, and we've said it a couple times now, one of the big and really critical pieces was around Harrison Park and this conversion from a K-8 into a middle school experience. Harrison Park is, has the highest Black and Native student population in the southeast region, and it became the central sort of pivot point for the decision-making process. Once there was a, that process was anchored at Harrison Park, many of the choices and changes radiated out from that spot. And so we, it is a place that was held really central to the decision-making. In this particular situation, what we heard was we wanted the Harrison Park community to be close, right? So the middle school and the elementary to be close to each other, that there was interest in having the Chinese immersion program close to where they're, the J District, and where we were seeing Native speakers. And then as a result, some of the things that cascaded from there, one of the critical pieces was around the relocation of the Creative Science School and to Bridger as the recommended new site. So once those decisions sort of became, at least the initial anchor point, the impacts radiated out kind of across the city. So this is fairly common when we do enrollment balancing is that there'll be a point where there's a, where the, all decisions sort of cascade from that initial framing. And this particular situation, we really focused on supporting the Harrison Park community.
Yes, and with that, every student in southeast will have access to a comprehensive middle school. And larger middle schools, because the smallest middle school in the region, which is Lane, will grow by virtue of boundary changes. Altogether, there's about 14 schools affected by boundary change in this proposal. We are not going to walk you through each and every one of those tonight. On our website, there is a site where people can type in their address and see whether they're affected by a specific change. So we've got Lane growing. That also means that some of their smaller feeder schools, particularly Whitman and Woodmere, are growing as well and getting closer to that minimal 270 number. Other big elements in the proposal, and a place where the committee probably spent more time than they anticipated. If you think where we were a year ago, probably didn't anticipate spending quite as much time in the realm of trying to find the best fit for immersion. But a whole school model for Spanish DLI is proposed, and that it be at Lent because of the concentration of Native Spanish speakers. And then bringing together all of the middle-grade strands of Spanish immersion at Kellogg and all of the middle-grade strands of Chinese immersion at Hossford. Just taking another moment on the single-strand English scholar programs. It is true that in this proposal, we would not have single strands anymore. And by that, I mean, what we mean is that, for example, at Lent, right now, as a K-5, first of all, they have almost the smallest neighborhood enrollment of any of the southeast schools, the second smallest. So it's already a small area. As you heard, we committed to keeping Harrison Park students altogether and going to Clark. So that limited the number of other nearby schools where we could pull students into Lent. They operate now with a single strand of English scholars and a single strand of DLI at most grade levels. There are a couple of grade levels where there's two, but they're mostly just one each. So that's the active configuration now, and that is the challenge that we were trying to resolve. The resolution converts the whole school to DLI. But for the older students who are there, who wouldn't have the language background to opt in at a higher grade, we do need to work on what the best and most successful transition for those students would be. I believe that's going to be an important point of discussion for you, so I just wanted to mention that part now. We've identified Marysville as a school where children could attend a multi-strand English scholar program, and we would provide transportation to that. On the Bridger side, the Bridger community also has a single strand of their English scholar program right now. But with all of Creative Science moving to Bridger, the Bridger students will now be a part of a bigger program with the constructivist theme. They'll have guaranteed access to that. We also know that Bridger families were really excited to have the opportunity to go to a comprehensive middle school. They had been waiting a long time for that. So they will have guaranteed access to Harrison Park Middle School with transportation as well. This graphic is not something that we're going to walk through in detail, but it's an illustration of all the different progression paths in southeast and how they would be affected by these changes. And we could come back to it if it's helpful.
I have a question about Lewis. Because I think that part of Lewis is going to Lane under F3, correct?
There's a boundary change, and the Lewis boundary will shift, part of the Lewis boundary is shifting to Whitman? And the students from Whitman will also become part of Lane?
So no students who are, like a Lewis fifth grader after the boundary change will not go to Lane, they'll go to Selwood? Because I was looking at the maps, and that's what I was confused about, because Lane is not, Lewis is not on this slide under Lane, and that's where my confusion arose.
Yeah, Lewis, the part of Lewis that will, that's not being affected by boundary change is still assigned to Selwood. The boundary change part will become?
Whitman. And then that section of Whitman will go to Lane. And we still do have kids from Whitman then going to Cleveland, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no high school changes in any of these proposals.
Noting though that Mount Tabor has 456, which is below the 500.
Yes, so we, that's notable that?
Does that mean they're going to have a staffing reduction?
So we do note that we have middle schools that are adjacent to northeast schools that are in the K-8 status right now. So depending on the timing of when the next round of K-8 conversions happening, we have available capacity at middle schools, Roseway Heights, Mount Tabor, and even Hossford, adjacent to K-8 schools that could then grow in enrollment if there are future conversions. The question is the timing. We, this will not begin implementation till 2023. We don't expect to have another round of northeast decisions before then. So we'll have some implementation discussions. But just a couple more slides, and I know you're anxious to share your input.
Did that answer your question? I mean, one of the things is, you didn't give us the presentation, so it's hard for us to like, remember what you've showed us if we don't ask when it's up. So I'm just, that's why we're asking questions, because we don't have the presentation.
But this is all, it's all in our packet. This is all an open.
We want to highlight that this change will?
Was there something in the last slide that needed clarification? Because if so?
I was wondering if we could just go back one so we could see the total number of middle school students at the Lane, Harrison Park, Kellogg, Hossford. And you talked about Mount Tabor.
Yeah, this will be a theme I talk about a little bit later, about just stability, because I'm looking at, you've got, if our idea was 500, we have schools less than that. And so does that mean that what we found this year is that if your enrollment drops, that means the staff will be taken away from your school? So I'm just wondering what the implications for those schools that are less than the ideal, what the implications are? Or is there going to be like a hold harmless for schools so that? Because who knows? I mean, I haven't heard that there's going to be another. What I'd heard is the next round was going to be high school boundaries.
Well?
Not, I know, and I'm, but I'm just saying, that sort of contemplates like sometime, at some point in the future, you're going to have that. So like, what point in time is that? Because I haven't heard that there's any plan to do that.
Yeah, before we commence a conversation on Phase 3 of potential high school work, Phase 2 is going to need to move into a whole planning and preparation year to think through a lot of these kinds of details. And so, yeah, 500 is a nice number for a comprehensive middle school. We don't necessarily have a programmatic ed spec, we should have one, to make sure that there's equity and guarantee in the program offerings. And I think that's the goal that we share. We understand that there's going to be, there's going to be some necessary transition supports for each of these schools as they come together, as we've experienced and are experiencing. You're asking a lot of feeder and reconfigured communities to come together, that includes faculty. And we want to make sure that those supports are there. So these are exactly the kinds of questions that, you know, the boundary presentation isn't going to necessarily focus on today, but they're the right ones for us to parking lot because they're the ones that are going to make the difference to these transitions being successful.
Yeah, I'm just, I'd like to have more answers though before we actually vote on it next week or two weeks. We won't have everything, but I do think it's reasonable for people to understand what the implications of that is. Just the numbers being below and because?
Well, so is the question, what are we, what will do to the restorative piece?
Yeah, I guess that? And we get into it when we get into the transition, but there is some pieces that I think it's reasonable for people to want to have a better understanding of what the implications are.
So if I made, part of the transition planning is this slide right here. So this is the, part of what the transition will be, to your point, is there's always the question about how do you smooth the transition out with staffing, right? And so this is, that was raised as a significant question during the process as we went through. And so I'll stop there for a second and let Judy kind of talk through this piece. But that's part and parcel of what is in the recommendation is acknowledgement of how do we transition and make some, to help smooth out some of these transitions with FTE in particular.
So I'll just finish up here to say that there's, how the students might actually experience the change from a, from a, just a path forward. And then there are all the supports, the community building, and the important planning that needs to happen. Just wanted to make sure that the pace of change that's in the recommendation is well understood. The boundary changes would follow the phased-in approach that's in policy, that's what our recommendation is. While the timing is beginning fall 2023, with your vote on May 24th, we would still have time to inform all of the current students about the plans and about what their next school would be. And a student from the Lewis area who might want to opt in early to their new middle school of Lane would have the opportunity to do that for next year. The program changes, by and large, need to happen all at once. We need Harrison Park to be a middle school for 6'8" students in 23, 24. The K-5 students need to all go, and that's that cascading series of events that leads to Creative Science to Bridger, Bridger Spanish Immersion to Lent. At Lent, we have an important question that needs to be addressed. And so the recommendation is a little different, and that is that we bring those communities together with school and central leaders to plan that best possible transition. We don't want to have such a tiny cohort of English scholars at Lent that they are not having a full, robust experience. And we want to honor that they've been in the community for a long time and are concerned about having to be moved. So we don't have, it's not an all or nothing. At this point, it's a plan for them to come together. And Margaret, would you like to say a little more about some of the?
So I think one of the pieces that I just want to share, and I think, you know, for many years with Director Bailey, I sat on the District, DEBRAC Committee and some of the student, the various committees. And I think part of what surfaced when we looked at how we make transitions, there were a number of transitions that happened in the Jefferson Cluster from K-5 to K-8s, back to K-5s. And we've learned some things in the process. And so one of the things that, again, that we heard from the committee and from the Coalition, excuse me, and then also that Chair Kavanaugh surfaced is being intentional about how do we bridge some of the transitions and what does that look like? So that's part of what's built into the proposal is that there is some FTE that's set aside to address the shifts and transitions and being strategic about that. And that is called out and committed to upfront in the proposal. We also want to acknowledge that the Bridger and Lent communities are heavily impacted and that we will work with the communities in an ongoing basis. And that the process needs to be guided by the people that are working closest and are most impacted by the decision. So this will rely heavily on the voices of educators and families at these two sites. And we're committed to making sure that we are working with our labor partners and all the stakeholders to make thoughtful transition planning and then to implement those planning, that planning in a meaningful way. I think the piece that, anytime you're looking at this level of shift and change, there's a lot of details that are related to how do we work this out? So this is going to be a process of really engaging in some, you know, rolling up the sleeves, like really looking at the details, going back and iterative process, looking at the plans. One of the things that was, that surfaced is, and we've heard this loud and clear, that this is not a paper exercise. This is not a two-dimensional exercise, right? This impacts people, families, and communities. And we're going to have to be very sensitive to how we engage and continue to engage in an ongoing manner with the communities that we are impacting. And that's something that we need to do on an ongoing basis. I think that one of the pieces that you see up here is around transportation. We heard concerns about transportation. One of the things that you notice as you move from a K-8 model back out to a middle school model is that that catchment for the middle school is broader than it is for the K-8. So you start to see distance travel times or travel distances shift because of that change. And so there are some of those pieces. We also want, you know, heard people wanted there to be proximity. So there are trade-offs that are real that we need to work with families and communities about how are we going to approach that and what are the ways through those trade-offs so that they can have, you know, that we can get to the goal of a robust middle school programming in southeast, as well as consolidating some of the DLI programs.
And I just want to add that the presentation is not in your email boxes, and it is online as well.
We just got that, so.
Finally, I do want to say that I wasn't here for DEBRAC, but I heard all about it. And I am just thankful that I've only had to deal with the Southeast Guiding Coalition side of it. It's been an interesting two years. I've grown quickly in Portland, trying to get to know the communities and the schools and the impacts and the needs, and so on and so forth. But above all, I truly want to thank our Southeast Guiding Coalition members. They were dedicated, diligent, showed up no matter what, professional. I'm just committed. It was great to work with a team that centers students, the needs of the community, and looks to the future for what we want Portland Public Schools to be. So on behalf of the leadership team at Portland Public Schools, I do want to say thank you very much. We created? We created school community.
Thank you, Dr. O. You beat me to the punch. And if Deputy Hertz were here, I know that she would echo your sentiments.
And if Deputy Hertz were here, I know that she would echo your sentiments to, to everyone on the team who's been diligently involved in this process, particularly the Southeast Guiding Coalition members. Um, uh, this has been a, a, a process full of complexity. There's, there's a lot here to digest. I know it's a lot for our directors to think about. Our communities will learn about, uh, the more specific details and, you know, there'll be a lot of questions that, that, you know, we'll, we'll be prepared to respond to. But, uh, to get to this point tonight, and we're not done, uh, I know has been, has been quite the task. So thank you for the thoughtfulness, everybody that's been involved.
I also do want to say we have, um, what questions, do, um, we want to know what clarifying questions you have. We also would like to know if there were elements or features that you like about this proposal and, um, what concerns you might have. We do recognize that a lot of people are not going to be pleased, but we do want to also acknowledge that as long as we continue to center the needs of our students and commit to an experience that will set them up for success in the future, I think we can all live with ourselves.
Thank you. Um, and so I'll open the floor here, and I just wanted to also start by thanking the Southeast Guiding Coalition, uh, for your two years of dedication. I understand, um, how it is as a community member to show up and think, you know, I've got a year and a half or so, two years, ends up being five sometimes, and then you run out of money. And anyway, just the amount of emotional toll and time away and frozen pizza for dinner and all of those really human elements. Um, I also want to appreciate the staff in, um, holding, um, these, the, the space for, for the, the community conversations to happen. Um, that also is, takes emotional toll and just time to, to really listen actively. Um, I want to also, uh, under, I, I want to share that I understand that this was, um, it's a nuance, it's a complex, uh, complex, uh, project. And not everybody's happy with the outcome and that, the, the, the voting and, you know, the, the option that got the most votes wasn't a consensus and, and how, how messy that was. I also want to hold a mirror up to my own leadership and lack of like really in, um, asking for my board members to be more engaged and also kind of participating with the board members, um, especially at our, our meeting last week on Thursday where, um, two of us were at the event. And I think it would have been really important for the community to see all of us there. Um, but I didn't, I didn't put a call out for my colleagues to show up.
I was there too.
And it was scheduled in a we, a week in advance.
Yeah, and it was scheduled.
And only fifty people showed up, so it.
Yeah, so, so.
Same time. And CBRC was also scheduled at the same time as this meeting, so y'all should be lucky I showed up here.
We're, we are. We're lucky, we're lucky that you show up whenever you do. I also want to just, um, thank the Bridger community for their very thoughtful letter, um, this evening that talks about first acknowledging the discomfort. Um, racial equity work is, is very uncomfortable. We're not experienced doing it in Portland as is evidenced by our outcomes, not just in the education area, but in housing access, education access, income, quality of life, life expectancy are all predictable by race in Portland. And so when we talk about doing work a little differently and, um, and discom- and, and leaning into this discomfort, this is what it feels like. It, it does feel uncomfortable. So thank you Bridger community for, for bringing that out, uh, to express that even in the best of times, change is difficult for everyone. Um, I also appreciate the Bridger community for wanting to, um, encouraging us to take a yes and approach. There are some restorative practices. I'm hoping that we see particularly around, um, engaging Lent community, uh, who we heard from, uh, that, that are concerned about splitting up, but also that what we can do, um, what, what inputs we can do in terms of, um, investing time and resources, um, investing in a stable situation for those kids. I hadn't ever been to Lent before, a couple of weeks ago, and, and they need the stability and the attention that our higher income schools, um, get to, get to get the benefit of. So I'm hoping that we can really lean into that, um, that restorative practice of, of giving them the resources they need and providing our, uh, this practice about putting more resources where there's more need, and there's a lot of need at that school. Um, I'm hoping that we can debrief with this senior leadership team about the community engagement because I, um, I'm a community engagement professional and, um, I found, I found, um, s- I, I found the process of wanting in some areas. I don't want to go into now, but, um, in the spirit of, you know, continuous improvement, I would love to, an opportunity to, to talk about it as a, as a board leader and a board member. I know I'm talking more than I usually do, but I have a lot of thoughts about this. Um, one of the, if you haven't seen it, there was a lot of reading this week, but Attachment C that came in the packets to our home and that's also linked in Board Book, um, provides a very compelling case for supporting the proposal, uh, that we have in front of us. And that is, uh, research, I'm sorry, I don't have a citation, but. It's, it's the, it's, where's the? Well, it's, I actually had my hands on it like two minutes ago. It's, it's, it's Attachment C and it, it provides research about the benefits of, this is the analysis of co-located Chinese and Spanish DLI programs, which, w- once I read it and looked at the presentation, really cemented for me, um, this idea that we, thank you, that, it's right here. It was underneath, it, I've got it. Um, but if you haven't read it, it's really compelling, uh, provides compelling, uh, data that support, uh, the support of this proposal as we see it. And I'm going to stop talking now. I know people have questions. I'm looking at Director Hall and so, in order to keep him awake. Do you have any, um, thoughts, initial impressions? We can just popcorn style? Trying to read everybody's body.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate the work again, and I, um, I think you said something, Dr. O, about, you know, not everyone's going to like this. And I think if we ever had a boundary redrawing that everyone liked, I think, you know, we should all buy lottery tickets that day, uh, because we'd be incredibly lucky. Um, you know, there are things I like about it. I mean, I think, again, the thoughtfulness, the, um, all the things you said as priorities and those modeling principles. And again, our, our ongoing goal is to take our K-8s, which we know have strengths, but we also know aren't providing our students with the rigorous academic opportunities we want. Um, and this is a long and difficult process. And, um, Andrew always says, Director Scott always says, we should be a district that does this regularly. And so we don't do the big ones, we just do adjustments. And so I think, uh, Dr. Kavanaugh, you mentioned some, it's fun to get to call you that. Um, you mentioned that we might have to do this again, and I think that's going to be, you know, that's what we're hoping will become the culture of our district is that we do adjustments regularly rather than these big programmatic changes like switching K-8s to middle schools. And that is hard. And we know that we want to provide stability for families and we also want to be agile and dynamic. So I appreciate the work that went into it. There, there are things I could, you know, complain about that I didn't get my way or what I wanted, um, but I trust the, the collaborative wisdom. Um, and I think if all of us are happy about some things and slightly annoyed about others, then maybe that's the sweet spot. So that's, that's kind of where I am landing on this at this point. But just again, want to thank you for the analysis and all the work. And I know this, the DLI program thing continues to be a very intense conversation about what, what is the best way for those students to thrive? And I do appreciate this analysis here. So thank you.
So, um, I'm just diving, because I, I do have a, a fair number of questions, but I think they're, like, can be answered with a relatively short, um, answer. And I'm just going to say, before everybody gets ready, um, to fire off emails to me in the middle of the meeting, um, I'm going to ask some questions because there really hasn't been, I'm going to ask some questions to get something, information into the public space, because most of the meetings, people were just watching on YouTube. Uh, so it really wasn't interactive because of the pandemic. And this is, and this is the first meeting we have the recommendation. So I'm not asking, um, for any bad reason, but maybe because I've had a lot of people ask me about it. So I just want to tell people like before you start, uh, sending me emails, um, that that's the spirit in which I'm asking them because there, the pandemic has just changed how people interacted and the fact that we just got their recommendation. Um, so I'm going to start with, um, you know, what I, what I like about it, and that I have some questions under that. Because the charge of the board was to create a plan to, um, bring more equitable middle school experience to, um, students in outer Southeast. And I look at the two efforts, both the opening of Kellogg and this as really, um, important work for the district in that, um, over the last five years, over a thousand students will have, who didn't have an equitable middle school experience, well, either already have it or will soon have it. So, um, I think that's great. And I, I want to also mention, because there's been a lot of conversation about like, do you want to go to the, you know, the brand new school at Kellogg or Harrison Park is, I really encourage people to go to Harrison Park. It's a hu- it's, it's a huge building. Um, and, um, there's, they've got a really strong, stable, um, t- leadership team there that knows their stuff about middle school, um, with, uh, a greater number of students. They'll be able to have robust academic programming and diverse electives, um, with the $10 million in upgrades from the bond. Um, and I, hopefully the community will be part of that. Um, I've got a question about that later. Um, but that will like create spaces that's, middle school students will want to be in. So I, I want to just, just acknowledge those two big things, because like that was, that was the main part of the, the charge. So great on that. And like it's additive to, to Kellogg. And I know this, the families that are at Kellogg now, it's, it's a great, it's a great school and, um, we, we always have more work to do. But I, I see the promise of what's coming to South, outer Southeast. So I'm really happy about that. So I'm going to have, um, I think I preface this with, uh, I attended almost all of the twenty, um, Southeast Guiding Coalition meetings.
Last year too, right?
I did, yes. So, um, I don't know what I'm going to do with my Thursday nights now. Also attended the Bridger Community Meeting that was held last week, the Lent Community Meeting that was held last week, the Open House, the Spanish Immersion Community Meeting hosted by Ackenson, the Lent Leopard Leaders Meeting, um, last week as well. And I also went and visited all the schools in my zone that I felt would be impacted, with the exception of Richmond and Creston, because there was minimal impact. And then also visited Lent and Whitman and Marysville that aren't my district. So in, in this, that's the spirit in which I'm going to approach my questions and, and,
I think you should win a prize pretending the most meetings, if nothing else.
Well, okay, I, I'm going to be held accountable to my community. They've let me know that. So I don't want to have missed a meeting that I should have been to. Um, and I got to say, every one of those meetings, I learned something, I learned something new. And hopefully I'm going to, and be- because there hasn't been an opportunity really for the community to engage, so a lot of schools had one rep, maybe two reps, um, but really school communities didn't engage. So hopefully I can bring some of that to, um, the, the, the process. But, and my issues are really going to center on three areas. Implementation, excellence, support for individual school communities, and trust and credibility. And so, just from an overarching standpoint, um, I didn't see a fiscal impact statement in here, and I would expect to have that, um, as part of, um, what we vote on next week. Um, so we have a sense of, um, how is it we're going to resource this? Because that's part of implementation excellence.
And. By the way, there is a fiscal impact statement.
Um, but it's, it's kind of soft.
It doesn't have numbers in it.
Yeah, well, I don't know if that counts then. So I had the question for this, the superintendent about implementation, and I know I asked you this today, but maybe just briefly answer that, um, because there's a leadership change of the executive sponsor, just who will be the implementations czar or how that's going to be structured? It says, there, there are, once the board finishes its work, um, the implementation is really going to be key that we do this right.
No, that's absolutely right. And as I, I'll share what I shared with, uh, in my response to you, Director Brim Edwards, earlier. This is, this is going to be a, need to be an all-hands, on-deck, uh, approach. The planning and preparation, as I started to describe earlier, involves a, a range of departments in the school district that, yes, there's the facilities issues, there's transportation issues, student assignment issues, uh, there's staffing issues, uh, there are labor, uh, relations issues. Uh, there, the whole reason we're doing this is to create a, a higher quality middle grades experience, uh, was one of the charges. And so, uh, you know, we're not driven by an economic efficiency that we're trying to, to find here. We're trying to make sure that grade six, seven and eight in the, in the Southeast is, is a much improved experience. And so, um, what does that need to include and look like? And how do we support it during these transition years? Are, are a lot of questions that, that need to be, uh, fleshed out. Uh, as you know, in 2017, when we came aboard, uh, there were three new middle schools that were being reconfigured. And we saw, uh, when, when there wasn't, uh, depth, um, the depth required in the planning, uh, you know, we had to push that off so that, so that we could be ready to, to open. And, uh, we want to make sure that that, it's a different experience, uh, this time around. So there's going to need to be an internal group of people and a, a continued representation from all of the impacted school communities, uh, that find themselves, uh, either in the boundary changes or, or as new members of Harrison Park and Kellogg. So, um, I, as you know, uh, you're listening, I know, Deputy Hertz. Um, you know, she has stayed on, uh, to help Shepherd, uh, this process six months beyond her intended, uh, retirement. And, uh, unfortunately, I don't have an announcement about her, uh, successor, uh, in the same way that, uh, we are down, uh, a few senior staff positions who are going to be instrumental, uh, in this planning and preparation, um, you know, gearing up for, for implementation. So I, I don't have an immediate response about who specifically, uh, will be that executive sponsor. It, it'll be one of these individuals, uh, who, who will understand that part of the charge is to continue working with, uh, a team of staff who, who will need to be involved in, in these details. And, and the important thing is to, to keep the board and the community regularly updated about how the preparation and planning details are, are starting to, to develop.
So, um, now I'm going to dive into the individual.
So in the meantime, it's me.
Okay, yeah, well, that's, that's the thought I was holding. Um, appreciate it. And just, it will be comforting, I think, to the community to know somebody's got it, um, at the end of the day. I don't know if it's these individuals. Um, so now to the school specifics. So, um, I say, I, I think we're in a good place with Kellogg, with Harrison Park. But I'm really concerned about Lent because, uh, so Lent was a K, K-5, then it became a K-8, then Spanish immersion was, was added. And if you look at the demographics for all the schools, um, in, in the conversation, they're the ones with the highest level of poverty. And how, so I'm thinking like, the school has got the biggest impact, which essentially the recommendation is to close the neighborhood English program, and that is what we could define as neighborhood and PBS. So close the neighborhood program is the school with the highest level of poverty. And just listening to the Lent community a couple of weeks ago, it was, was primarily the Spanish, um, DLI families that were present. There were only three, two or three parents from the English at the neighborhood side. And there was a consensus, they didn't want their community to be broken up. And so I, I'm really tr- I, I'm trying to, I'm struggling with how we came to a recommendation in which the s- the biggest impact is on the school with the highest level of, of poverty. And when I look at, so I, I don't know what to, to do about it. When I look at like us prioritizing, um, Harrison Park, uh, K-5, being able to walk to their school because of all the issues of either not having a car or parents working, and so kids needing to be able to, to get there, the fact that we didn't have that same priority for the Lent neighborhood. So I'm, I'm curious, um, if that was a priority for the, um, Harrison Park and the Clark community because of the demographics, um, it's also one of the most diverse. How did we end up in a place where we're closing the neighborhood school? Because that, that is, we can call it something else, but like really the neighborhood school. So if you move into the neighborhood and you're, I mean, that's what we, that's what we call it. So it is what it is. But I'm wondering how we came to a place that we're closing the one neighborhood school in the highest poverty area?
If I could say, we don't consider this a neighborhood school closure. We consider it a conversion of the program opportunity for neighborhood school students. And, um, every Lent neighborhood student, um, will have the right to enroll in the dual language immersion program. And I completely understand that there are some students who will either not make that choice or will who move into this lower income neighborhood and be too old to make that choice. We looked at the model that we've had between Riggler and Scott since 2018 to see how that's worked for families, the vast majority. to see how that's worked for families. The vast majority of Riggler families do enroll at their neighborhood school in the dual-language program, both students who are native Spanish speakers and students who are English and speakers of other languages.
And there will be people, there will be people, there will be families where this would be their third language. So, I just think, I think it's, I think it's hard to, I think it's hard to, and I think we need to be careful to be like honest about like how we talk about it, because it will feel like your neighborhood school closing, if you live across the street and you can't access. Because there, for some, and I'm speaking from personal experience, it is, it's, it's not a fit for every student. And so, I think, anyway, I, I am concerned that we are taking something away that most, every other kid, student in PPS has, has access to from the school that has the least resources.
I would say we're not taking anything away in terms of educational programming. We're changing the environment in which it's being delivered. And in some sense, for sure, that means changing the community and changing the sense of belonging. Because, because those kids, those four, four grades of kids are gonna be in a different building. Kindergarteners will go to Marysville and they will not have known what that experience would have been at Lent. I'm also curious about, of all the, the quarter of the students in the neighborhood program who are English language learners, are very many of those families native Spanish speakers who are not in the DLI program at Lent? That's something I hadn't talked to anyone about.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
There are some, and we've actually been starting to already hear from some of those families to see if they can move into.
If they wanna join that. So out of a, I mean, you have, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to indicate that I don't think that this is a, this is a shift, you know, when we've looked at one of our primary objectives being to move away from co-location, because it's, it's better for the language learners. But you're looking at an enrollment last year of 151 students in the DLI program, so minus 20% of that. So minus 30, so 120 students. And, you know, some of whom are, are going to be English, are going to be Spanish speakers who may choose to stay. So i- i- it's a shift, but relative to sort of the challenges that we were looking at. It's not, I, I think it's just important to keep it in perspective.
Well, I'm gonna just keep it in perspective, because there are whole quadrants of the city that every, every student has the right to attend their neighborhood school. And Southeast has all these programs. And the, the families that live there didn't put those programs there. I mean, so, any, anyway, I just, I, I'm troubled by the outcome and the burden being placed on a community that has the least resources. And so that, my, a question I had is, there's a recommendation to move the Lent neighborhood students to Marysville and into the traditional program. But then the report says, "An option to defer moves for Lent non-DLI students moving to Marysville will be considered after bringing together school communities to prepare for the changes and considering the available facilities capacity at Lent." Does that statement mean just the students who are there now versus, because when I went to the meeting, you were there, Director Pass, there wasn't anybody who supported breaking up the community. But if I'm reading this, is this, this is just the, like after you decide to move them, it's just the current first, second, and third graders? And fourth graders? What, what does that statement mean? Sorry, it's confusing.
The statement's meant to indicate that instead of saying all the students have to move, like the, the proposal is that Lent convert to an all-DLI school with guaranteed access for Lent neighborhood students and bring, bringing over the two strands from Bridger. So that's the proposal. The plan for implementation for the students who are currently in the English Scholars Program is something that we want to collaboratively develop between the school communities.
Maybe I'm not asking the question, but is it just for a, the small universe of those who are impacted right now? Or is this, we may defer moving Lent neighborhood students to Marysville?
No, it's, it's, it's not a plan to defer. It's a plan to figure out that pace. So that, that's weird, we're not, we're not proposing to maintain long-term a co-located structure at Lent. We don't believe we can actually deliver the quality of program that Lent students deserve if we maintain that.
I'm just trying to figure out what, what it is the statement is saying. So it's essentially the kids who are in the upper grades right now, there's gonna be a conversation about when, when they move. But it's, it's not a statement that it may not happen. It may not happen that Lent students, neighborhood students are gonna go to Marysville. I'm seeing one nod and one shaking head.
We're, we're not proposing to keep an English program at Lent in the long term. We're proposing to find a collaborative way to make the transition and to phase the program out. I don't know what the result of that collaborative effort will be.
Despite the, the last community meeting where everybody said, "We don't want to do this." Okay, I'm gonna move on to Bridger.
Can I, can I make a comment though? Because I think that there's.
Well, I'm sorry, I have, this is our one opportunity after a year and a half.
So, before we get into a, a back and forth, this is one of those situations where we will have to work very closely with the community. The district has a technical fix. The district are experts in, in, in this work. The community are experts in their community and what works for them. Together, a solution can be found. Not one, not the other. It's a yes and. I, I really believe then, I mean, I've, I've worked in a couple of, I've worked on some community-based projects that were very, very contentious and took, you know, twice as long, actually more than twice as long. And we literally ran out of money to complete the project, because the community engagement process was so long. And the community are experts in their community, and the district are experts in doing the work of balancing and providing programs equitably and centering the kids that need it most. So I, I'm thinking, the, the community, it's a, it's a both and.
Thank you, Chair to Pass.
And I'm looking at a co-create with Bridger and Lent. I see that.
I don't have my glasses on, sorry.
Yeah, I, I can see that. Co-create, and, and that's what I'm suggesting, is that it's not a, approaching this as a us versus them is not gonna get us to where we need to get, to get, you know, the kids that are experiencing the highest levels of poverty, the quality education that they, that they deserve.
Okay, thank you, Chair to Pass. So Bridger. So the Bridger Neighborhood Community has been through a lot. They had Family Co-op, which was a focus program there. Then it merged with Youngson School when Youngson was closed. Family Co-op moves out, they transition to K eight. Spanish immersion opens overcrowded schools, so kindergarten has to move off-site. Classes are taught in the gym until the portable is installed. Neighborhood strand is understaffed, and half the community is now being proposed to move to Lent. And the other half would be part of the new focus school for creative science. And because of all those transitions, the Bridger Neighborhood Community had a number of requests at the community meeting last week. And I, I know they gave this to Deputy Superintendent Hertz. But they requested the following: a full-time social worker instead of a part-time one, bless you, as well a half-time tendence and engagement coach, and educational assistance for each of the second and third grade neighborhood classrooms, or one that could be split in two. Allowing the neighborhood fifth graders to transition into middle school next year by being granted admissions into Kellogg in order to begin middle school in a comprehensive middle school environment rather than a K eight, with another school transition within the building the following year after. And I saw in the report, there was, you know, sort of the non-specific 10 FTE, but I'm wondering about these really specific asks from the Bridger community to be supported. What, whether those will be things that could be integrated into the recommendation.
We are definitely going to take those into consideration. We're also going to look to see how we can accommodate their requests as much as possible.
So I'm, I'm wondering, Director Brim Edwards, I think this is really important work. But I do know that we have members of the public who want to give test, public testimony. And so I'm wondering if there's any way, if we could ask, if we could jump the line and just have our, our families who want to give public testimony about this, and our families that want to give public testimony about the charter thing, do that now, and then we can come back to your questions. Because I talked to some of them at nine o'clock, and the kids were tired then, and it's now 10.
Yeah, and I, I really apologize. It's just, this is the first time, so I think that's a, that's a, works for me. Sorry, Director Green. I guess you.
Let's thank him for still being here, though.
I, I'm good.
So Chair to Pass, with that, it's up to you as the chair of the agenda.
There's, there are, there are young people in the audience and families.
Yeah, if we could just switch to both sets of public comment on these two matters, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Steph.
So there's no public comment on S E G C, is what Roseanne is saying, but there is public comment on the charter school vote.
Yeah, so I mean, just for what it's worth, I, I had asked whether schools could present tonight, because they haven't had a chance to present to the board.
Okay.
Or even comment.
But can we move on to the charter school, uh, comment? That'd be great.
You know me, I'm a late-night person, so.
Well, not everybody is. And some, some people have to work at seven in the morning.
It, well, it's unfortunate that.
It was a great call, thank you. So we have people in the audience that are, that are here to testify not on Southeast Guiding Coalition? Because we're not voting, okay. So the charter school, Ms. Powell, do we have speakers ready to, to speak?
We've thrown a wrench in Roseanne's system over here. She was ready, and then we like jumped six things, so.
Then you guys, then you guys can tune in when we come back to discuss it, when you're driving home.
Happy to. Our first person, well, do you want to start the conversation before you make a motion?
I'm so sorry, Dr. Proctor, we're, we've switched, we've switched the order thing, so we can hear from families that have children.
Oh, we're just doing public comment only, okay.
Just the public comment.
I'm sorry. I'm a little delayed in understanding. Our first person is Sunita Sandos.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Chair to Pass, good evening, directors, student representatives, superintendent. Thank you for switching things up. I'll, I'll try and be brief. I might be referencing things that you may have been having in discussions, so.
So you'll have three minutes, and if you can say your name and spell your last name for us, and then you can start. And it looks like, um, somebody, somebody started your timer for you.
Yes, Sunita Sandos is my name. Last name spelled S A N D O Z. My name is Sunita Sandos. I'm the administrator of the Emerson School, currently PPS's longest-running charter school. Tonight, I implore you to consider amending the resolution presented so that you can address rightsizing the pass-through rate for PPS charter schools to 90% immediately. This must go into effect for the 2022, 23 school year, or you may see more charter schools close on your watch due to financial constraints. Charter schools in Portland are facing the same dire issues that PPS are currently facing, which you've heard a lot about this evening. After a lengthy and harrowing pandemic, we too are staring down lowered enrollment. We too are fighting with every resource available to retain our talented and dedicated staff. We too are facing running our schools on a deficit budget as we collectively, collectively pull through one of the most challenging periods in history for public education. For years, charter schools have appealed to PPS board members, some of you up there now, to acknowledge the broken funding model that we face as we try to keep our lights on. We only receive 80% of the state school funds that neighborhood schools receive per pupil. And we must lease or purchase our facilities and pay market rate rent with those funds. On top of that, public charter schools pay the highest PERS rate in the state, upwards of 26%, as compared to PPS's current PERS rate, which ranges from 3.5% to 7%. The Emerson School pays $17,000 a month in rent and $15,000 a month to PERS for our tiny school of 130 students. We must do this, or we will close. I understand that those issues are out of your control, but there is a solution within your control. 80% of the state school fund is the bare minimum. You have the power to pass through more. State-sponsored charter schools in Portland receive a 90% minimum pass-through rate. Directors, a 20% administrative fee is unconscionable. The funding analysis provided to you from district staff has shown that only 4% is needed to support charter school program. Even if you rightsize the pass-through amount to 90%, Portland Public Schools would still keep $1.3 million above and beyond the cost of administering, administering the charter school's program. I'm gonna say that one more time. Even with a 90% pass-through rate, PPS will keep $1.3 million above and beyond the cost of administering the charter school's program. Public dollars are intended to follow students. That is Oregon law. Tonight, I urge you to allow for this to happen. Last year, the abrupt closure of the Opal School was a startling wake-up call. What, I will wrap up. Watching the internationally acclaimed and longest-running PPS charter school close due to financial constraints was a travesty. We cannot wait until 2023 for this change. Two PPS charter schools need to sign new leases this year, and we cannot do so without the insurance of sustainable funding in the future. Do not let us close on your watch. Do not, do not let that be your legacy. Increase the pass-through rate for charters to 90% immediately. Portland Public Schools, charter school students, and their families are depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunita, excuse me, sorry. I just want to correct something, channeling Claire Hertz from our previous conversations. The district's PERS rates now is 17%. It may have gone up from the past. But also to clarify for other people, that i- i- it is extremely unfortunate, the structure through which they need to pay for their benefits and their purse. But there's, I, I went pretty far deep down a rabbit hole to see if there's any way we could assist them with not, with that, and statutorily there is not.
Thank you. The only question I had was, and my kids went to Emerson School, so it was a great fit for me as a single parent, because it was close to where I worked, and it was easy to get to, and, yes, sorry. I just was reminded we're doing public comment, and I understand there is more. Anyway, thank you for your comments.
Eric Maxen.
Good evening, thank you for your time. It's Eric Maxen, M A X E N. Imagine a scenario where PPS decided to open a new school. So they hired an administrator and told that administrator that their state school funding, the vast majority of their revenue would be reduced by 20%. Despite this, the administrator would be expected to secure and pay for a building using those reduced funds, cover the health insurance costs for all the employees, as well as the PERS costs for all of these employees. This, as you just heard from Sunita, is exactly how Portland charter schools operate in the city of Portland. In other words, these public schools in Portland cover tens of thousands of dollars every year in expenses that other schools do not. And they receive tens of thousands of dollars less every year from the state school fund. These are Portland public schools. The same kids that attend Emerson and schools like it, attend the neighborhood schools. Charter schools in Portland are public schools. I am grateful that my two daughters attended the Emerson School, and I'm on the, and I'm on the board there. I've been the treasurer for the last three years. I understand how school funding works, and I know how challenging things are for Portland public charters. It was brought to my attention recently that while PPS keeps 20% of charter state funding to cover overhead for their charter program, it actually only needs as little as 4% to break even. Let's right this wrong and give charters the stability they deserve. The extra 10, the extra 10% being proposed would have a profound impact. The extra 10, the extra 10% being proposed would have a profound impact on charters and the students who attend them. Meanwhile, it would have a minimal impact on the PPS budget. These funds represent a tiny fraction of the PPS budget, but a significant portion of the charter schools budgets. Please do not kick the can down the road. I urge you to change the pass-through amount to 90% immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have Mark Williams, who is joining us virtually.
Mark, you're muted. We can't hear you, Mr. Williams.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Board. My name is Mark Williams. That's W I L L I A M S. I am a proud parent of three beautiful children who all attend Le Monde French Immersion Charter School. All my children started kindergarten at Le Monde French Immersion Charter School and they are currently 13, 12, and 10. One of the reasons I wanted to speak to the board today is to share with you my firsthand testimony of our family's personal experience at Le Monde French Immersion Charter School. We chose to send our children to Le Monde because my wife is French and we really value languages as a life skill. It has been a wonderful opportunity for our three children to learn and grow in a immersive French environment. And I wanted to point out that our neighborhood public school is a very good one, even though it has been overcrowded for many years. The local grade school is only two blocks from our home and it would have been very convenient to have our children attend this local neighborhood school. However, we feel that it has been well worth the daily drive to transport our children to Le Monde every day for, over the past nine years. When the board talks about creating and funding educational opportunities for students of color and students with disabilities, you're talking about my three children. My oldest daughter is in sixth grade and she's Latinx. She's a creative child who sometimes struggles to keep her focus, but Le Monde French Immersion Charter School has always worked with us to help her thrive. My middle daughter is black and hearing impaired. She has been on an IEP since preschool and with the help of the teachers at Le Monde Immersion and PPS Special Education Services, she is excelling at Le Monde French Immersion. As a child who wears hearing aids and reads lips to, to communicate, you would think that learning another language would be difficult for her. Quite the opposite. Her time at Le Monde has been only positive. She is, is an amazing communicator in both languages. And the staff at Le Monde Immersion has always ensured that she has had all the accommodation in place to make her learning experience equal to her peers. My son, who is also black and he's in the fifth grade, his experience at Le Monde has been very positive. He is on a 504 plan for some health issues and the staff at Le Monde has always been accommodating and responsive to his needs. So I just want to thank you for allowing me to introduce my family to you. This increase in pass-through funding needs to happen now, not next year, please. We are concerned we will lose our staff and teachers if they can't afford to stay at Le Monde Charter School. This basic funding is what the state provides for students to receive a quality education. And I, as a taxpayer, do pay my share toward that funding and I feel that my children deserve to receive a fair share of that funding as well. And so I just want to thank you again for taking the time to consider my testimony.
Thank you. That's it?
So we can go back to Southeast Guiding, right?
We can go back to Southeast Guiding. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Those of you who are on the line and those of you here in person, I know it's late.
And that you guys can probably get home and then tune in to the YouTube and watch the rest of this meeting and our vote on the charter school thing in your pajamas from your bed.
Or in your cars.
Or you can stay if you want. You're totally welcome to, but that, that allows you some flexibility because I know there's some little ones out there.
Sorry for the long wait and thanks to you all for showing up.
Can I just ask as a point of clarification, Director Bremedwards, how, how many more questions do you think you have tonight? That clock is very wrong. I asked just because I know we have this vote. We also have the, the math curriculum adoption along with the policy.
I really appreciate that. And, I want to have, I want to have an "and" statement because I also want to respect the 20 school communities who, this is, this, this will be, this me. I, I know.
Okay, let's quickly move through the rest of your questions.
Okay. With the Creative Science School. Whoever wants to answer a question.
And I'm going to have the same question for, is Creative Science School a school or a program? And is Bridger a school or a program? Those are my. They're both schools, correct?
Yes.
And which school is going to be, you can't have two schools in a building, as I understand, which, which one would be closed?
We're not closing any of the schools. We're moving Creative Science to. Correct, maybe I'm wrong.
But there's a, there's a school ID number that the state has, so you, you actually have to close one account.
You're, you're correct. And since we haven't adopted the changes yet, I don't know the exact sequence and it won't be in place until '23, '24, but we can come back to you.
But the proposal says it will become a unified school community, Creative Science at Bridger.
Well, what's important is depending on which school is closed, the staffing. And so I'm, this was an issue before for Bridger when they had family co-op there, so I'm going to be interested in how the staffing works because both, both the Bridger Neighborhood School Community and the Creative Science Community is attached to their staff. So this is part of the, you know, a transition and making it a successful transition. I know just from previous school changes that is challenging. So thanks for the answer on that. I'll be interested.
Just to clarify though, in terms of staffing, it would remain relatively the same because you're going to have the same student population, so you're going to have roughly the same staff, staffing formula for both of those schools when they are reunited under the same roof. And then there's, unless there's some dramatic change to the enrollment because of the change in location that we haven't foreseen, but the point is that there's room to accommodate both of those school communities as a united school community.
That's our current thinking at this point. That's our current thinking at this point.
So I, I want to know more about that because that was something that the Bridger community and I'm sure the Creative Science School both communicated that it's really important to them. So, and this is, this is a question for, that I have gotten asked about. We're moving away from the K-8 model all over the city and yet we're, as part of this, the staff is recommending that we actually keep a K-8 at Creative Science School. And early on, it was said it was because of the sped, the number of special education students at Creative Science School that that was a better, to have a smaller learning environment. But I'm looking at the demographics for sped and their special ed students across the Southeast cluster and there's actually a whole bunch of other schools that have them in the twenties as well. So maybe share the, the rationale for why we're keeping a K-8 when we're actually going through this whole process to change them. Because it's not because of, they have higher sped numbers, special ed student numbers.
So I think one of the, one of the significant discussion points we've had is about a portfolio of, a portfolio of options for families to have, right? And so similar to Fabian in Northeast, right, that is a, is a K-8 and sort of what is that model and what does that look like? Provides an opportunity for families that is slightly different. So what we, what we've heard and, and we see it similarly at various other levels of, you know, grade bands, of what does that look like? What's that portfolio of options? Some, some families will choose an option that looks slightly different than somebody else, right? And so I think that that's the question for why this particular, you know, why, why are we maintaining a K-8 in this part of the city?
Yeah, and just to follow on that, because I think, Judy, you said at the last meeting that eventually in order to fit the two communities in there that there, there won't be that many lottery slots because of the two communities together. So it, it will be an option if you live in the Bridger neighborhood or not, but not really an option if you live somewhere else in Southeast and you wanted one because there won't be that many slots, is what I think.
It is similar to Fabian in that way, right?
Yeah.
Well, it, it's similar to the Sunnyside environmental school that way.
Right.
I think the other important piece is that the, you know, Creative Science K-8 grew to K-8 about the same time that other Southeast neighborhood-based schools grew to K-8. Now that we're moving back to comprehensive middle schools, it could be that there is less interest in maintaining a small option. But we don't know that now and we didn't know that in the middle of this process. If you recall, a year ago, you asked us to have them, the smallest footprint possible to make these changes and yet we still had to bring forward an awful lot of shifts and revisions. That is one that we did not undertake in the midst of this process, which is like what is the purpose of focus option and what is the best grade structure for it? But I don't think that means it could never be a conversation within that community.
Okay, thank you.
I also would like to add that Creative Science also does have a special instructional process, the constructivist model, and they stress the fact that they think it's best when you have it over the eight years that the kids at the school currently, so.
Great, thanks. Then, and I don't need the answer to this now, this is maybe a next two weeks from now, just the number of students who would be eligible for busing based on the one and a quarter, quarter mile?
One and one half.
Or the one and a quarter mile or one and a half, depending on which it is? Isn't it one and, one and a quarter mile for elementary and one and a half? That's one, okay, sorry.
One and one and one half.
One, one and a half. And then any other places where there's been a commitment in this recommendation to bus students? So I'd like to know just the, the total number. And then I'd like to know who it is that's getting bussed.
So not just by number but by location?
Like, right, like it's going to be the eastern part of the Marysville boundary, just for illustration. Then, and this can be, I think I know the answer, but I'd just like to get it on the record for next, next meeting, just what the supports are in place for the Spanish DLI echelon and the supports that would be in place for the Mandarin DLI program. And then I just have three things to, to say. So this process has been, and not at all because of staff or the board, but it's just been destabilizing because of the uncertainty and, you know, for, for families trying to figure out like what's going to be best for their kids, what the changes are going to be, how they're going to adjust, and then you add the pandemic on top of that. That there are a large number of schools in these communities that don't have foundations, so they don't have the ability to, if all of a sudden they're short 20 students because like I'm not going to send my student there because they're going to be moved around or, you know, whatever reasons, you know, things have happened to change schools. So I'm going to be interested in like the FTE to support the transition and really specifically like where that's going to, to go because it's been cumulative on top of the, on top of the staffing cuts that are being proposed. You have this and then like are we losing students and we're going to have less? So I'll be interested in a potential hold harmless for the Southeast schools that are impacted. And then I, because there wasn't an opportunity for people to comment tonight and then the next meeting, we're going to be voting, I had people who sent me comments that they wanted to have submitted for the record. And so I'll send them to all the board members and then just submit them for the record. Otherwise, I think next week, you know, we'll just be voting and it won't seem to be respectful. But they follow along the lines of, you know, Creative Science School also asking for a FTE in this transition, again, in this transition year. You know, questions from Mount Tabor parents about, who are in Spanish immersion, about just the, the question about the Spanish immersion students moving from lower poverty schools, being moved to higher poverty schools in this. And then there is a climate question with the busing. How many people are rebusing? How does that fit within our climate plans? Anyway, I'll submit, I'll send these to board members and then submit it for the records. And I thank the people in the community who sent these and gave us questions to consider. And I want to thank, I, I'll just say, having been on the screen with these ladies and district staff over the last year, you know, this is one of the hardest, this is one of the hardest things that happens to school communities. And I feel like you've held the community and kept us moving towards, like I say, what was the, ultimately the board's charge, so I want to thank each of you individually.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could just add a footnote to a comment around the staffing, which is an important component here. Just a footnote, the example of Bridger Creative Science, it is quite likely that the faculty would remain intact, but until we do the analysis, it's also important to remember, we also have constraints around a collective bargaining agreement with the teachers' union. And so until we sort of go through the scenarios, it's hard to give you an exact. So we certainly want to support the transition, but have to do the analysis. You could end up with duplicative positions, you could, et cetera. And so we want to ease the transition. We have CBA agreements and there's a lot of questions to dig into here.
Actually, I'm glad you just raised it directly because I was kind of talking around it, but that, that is, I think we need to be super transparent with the community that there are, this is what happens in every, that's why I was asking like which school ID number is going away because that does have implications in the collective bargaining agreement. I think we need to be transparent with.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of quick comments, questions, and before my colleagues kill me, I promise they'll be quick. First is I just want to address the sort of dissenting opinion from the Southeast Guiding Coalition on a couple of notes. One was that a big part of their misgiving was that they didn't agree with the scope that the board laid out in the first place. And that's on us. And I have some misgivings myself about going through this process without, with basically holding all the Southeast schools to, on the west side of this area, holding those schools harmless. I think we could have done things differently, but I think that that whole equation was complicated by the fact that the district has not done a thorough review of what, what is the purpose of our focus option schools? And who are they intended to serve? And we happen to have this concentration of them in Southeast Portland that you can't have a conversation about reconfiguring schools, particularly on the west side of Southeast Portland, without having a conversation about what are our academic goals around these focus programs? And who should they serve and how do they align with our equity lens? So those are really complicated questions that really should have been addressed in this process. But I will be the first to say that I was one of, you know, all of us who agreed that we had to somehow narrow the scope in order to get it done and that we had made a commitment to the community to open. we had made a commitment to the community to open Kellogg, I mean, excuse me, to open Harrison Park by 2023. So it, it was, it was a necessary compromise that we had to make, but I just want to recognize that that misgiving that was expressed by so many members of the Guiding Coalition. And there was one other thing in their opinion that I wanted to address. Oh, just take it back a little bit to the Creative Science unification with Bridger. You know, ideally we'll have that conversation when we look at our focus option programs. And maybe that's sort of like a mini exercise that we can do as we look at maybe Northeast reconfiguration as well, because I think that conversation is long overdue. And I, I expressed early on in this process, I, I have never seen a, a strong pedagogical reason why Creative Science should remain as a K eight when we're contorting our entire district to reconfigure to elementary and middle schools. And we also have Harrison Park across the street that is under enrolled as a middle school. So you, you know, the balance there would be that you could open up more lottery spaces for students who might want to attend Creative Science who are not in the Bridger neighborhood, more lottery spaces for K through five, because they're actually seeking out that particular program. And then you have this, this wonderful, rich, vibrant middle school right there, which is what we say that we're trying to create. So that, I have a pretty strong opinion about that. And then the other thing about the focus option schools as far as an equity issue is that it's always been a huge equity issue are, are constraints around transportation for, for DLI and focus option schools. And it remains one and that's part of this conversation. If we're really talking about things with racial equity and social justice lens, we have to look at who has access literally and figuratively to those programs. Yeah, you know, oh, just the other, the last thing I want to say is that the other elephant in the room is that we took consolidations off the table. And when we look at the numbers of some of these very small schools in outer Southeast Portland, that's not really a logical choice, it's a political choice. And so that's also on us and that needs to be a part of the conversation. I don't mean it needs to be a part of the conversation literally right now where we should, you know, tank this proposal and come up with something new, but we need to take responsibility for the fact that, that that is a reality that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later, especially as we see our enrollment only continuing to decline. So those are just some of my thoughts and questions. And way back when, when you asked, what do we really appreciate about this? One of the things I appreciate is that the, the recommendations around the DLI, DLI programs are really grounded in what is academically best for student achievement and most important for our English language learners, because historically that hasn't really been that much of a factor in our decisions around reconfiguring and, and moving boundaries and all that. And it should be the factor. It should be the most important factor. So that's, those are super hard decisions to make, those separating of co-located programs, because nobody wants to be dislocated. But it is, I'm really glad that we held firm on that, because that's really putting students first. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? I, I want to echo also what Director Konstant said, just, I'm always curious about who is burdened, who's harmed by our decisions. I, I trust that the, I, I know that this is difficult. I also know that I trust the data that, that I've read that says, that, that supports the proposal that's on the table. I, I want to ask just a quick lightning round if anybody has further comments or should we just move on?
Yeah, I haven't had any chance to ask a question, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Director Scott just made a.
But one of our guiding principles in this process was students at the center, so I'm sorry, but I'm going to take some time. So kind of that is my question in our resolution that we passed last year around this time in May. One of those guiding principles was students at the center, so I just wanted like a brief explanation of how we like stayed true to that principle by centering students, specifically like student voice in this process.
So in terms of student voice, and again, I'm, I'm sorry that Shanice Clark isn't with us to be more specific, but we did have student, culturally specific student engagement sessions in the fall and in December. So those were some ways for students to come in and engage directly on different, at different phases of the process. And then I would say, particularly with the Lent community, and there's probably others that are slipping my mind right now, that they, they set the stage for us. So I really want to acknowledge where student communities came forward to let us know how they felt and we're willing to share that information really broadly. These are younger students impacted by the change and especially if you consider the delay till 2023, like we're talking about fourth and fifth graders, not that they don't have important input to give, but I think it, it's a different design perhaps than what you would typically see with the high schoolers or even later middle schoolers. And I, I believe Shanice may have more to offer back to you in response to that when she's available, on how we tried to center their voice and not just their voice through their parents, but, but through them authentically.
We also asked our school leaders to reach out to their student council and have conversations with them about their opinion, explain the process. The feeling there was that they would be a little bit more open with their principals, because they're just a little bit more familiar and comfortable with their leaders.
Yeah, I'd love to know how many students we got engagement from. My second question was, actually, I have email questions, I'm good, thank you.
Are there any final questions before we wrap up? We will be voting on this on May 24th. I'll be attending probably virtually, I'll try to make it in person, but I think it'll be virtual. Where, where do we direct questions and if we've got further questions? It sounds like you've, in terms of process, we're voting on it in two weeks.
Yeah, one thing I would just ask is that if there's any sort of presentation like new PowerPoint that we make sure it gets posted with all the materials when in advance, because there's a, a lot of people who have a lot, have invested a lot in this process and I think would like to see that. Also, like I may potentially have some suggested changes in, well, I guess I'll wait to get some of the answers that I asked for is suggested changes in the resolution. Nothing that would be, if anybody's thinking, I'm going to move schools around, like that's not what I'm thinking about, but it's more like this, how do you, how, how do we resource or just provide more visibility to what people can expect?
One last comment about the student engagement is that it would be fabulous to do a charrette type process with students, young students. They have all kinds of solutions for everything from what equipment to put in the park to what color it should be, how high the building should be, and it's a great exercise to get them civically engaged, you know, at the very early ages.
They could also, I guess one of the things I'd like to have about student engagement is like how are they being involved in the $10 million investment? Because I, I saw some of the investments and they were like mechanical systems and that's not what I thought when I was thinking of the $10 million. I was thinking about like, hey, we have this beautiful new school and we also have a, a good solid school and how do we make it even better and more appealing to middle schoolers? So I would like use student, you know, the future students of like, what do they want to see there? What's, what's missing? And I don't, I don't think they're going to say the mechanical systems, not that that sound important, but.
All right, so we're going to wrap that topic up. We're going to vote on, on May 24th. If you've got further questions, you ask staff, Dr. O., Judy Brennan.
Deputy Superintendent Hertz is still our strong, strong leader.
Okay, she's the.
Fearless leader.
Thank you. Fearless leader.
She's not in front of us, so yeah, so direct to Claire. We're going to move on now, board members, to, we'll be voting to adopt four contracts for the new six, 12 math, uh, thank you, staff. I know it's late.
Thank you.
We're going to, we'll be voting next to adopt four contracts for the new six, 12 math curriculum. I hope you've all had a chance to review the video presentation that was posted in board books with the materials. Superintendent Garetto, would you or staff like to share anything about this adoption?
I'll just say a quick intro as staff comes up here to the, to the podium. As you know, this is the latest in a sequence of bond funded, thank you voters, which allows us to leapfrog new curricular materials across content areas and grade levels. And we're really pleased to, to bring to you at this point, the latest as part of our adoption process, which I'm sure the team here will, I'll let them talk about, but I'll let you take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Chair de pass, directors, student representative Weinberg, we're pleased to bring before the board a recommendation for the new middle grades math curriculum adoption. For a bit of background, the previous math curriculum adoption for grades six to eight was completed in 1999 with the Connect Math Project and with an adoption of Connect Math Project Two in 2009. In May of 2020, Portland community supported the bond, which included for the first time the much needed funding to be able to fund long-term overdue new curriculum materials adoption across all core contents district wide. This evening, we're going to talk about math. The decision to fully adopt mid-school math, core curriculum for middle school and McGraw-Hill illustrative math for high school is a highly involved process, including a cross-district six to 12 math adoption of instructional resources committee and a field test of six, 12 math instructional resources. We hope that directors have an opportunity again to review of the video that was provided in advance so that, you know, you could familiarize yourself with what's being presented to you this evening. We also have Susan Kovak and Kristen Moon here today to support any questions that you may have this evening, as they worked very diligently in the process and engaging across sector of stakeholders in coming to the decision for this evening.
So based on our review of the materials as well as PPS student and teacher feedback, we wanted to share some highlights about the mid-school math core curriculum. So one of the pieces is going to be that this curriculum has strong connections with real world applications through multimedia and text, which allows students to make sense of mathematics by working through the story in the video and applying their understanding to new situations. To quote a student, "I actually understood what was going on in math." This also has an inclusion of robust lessons that show explicit connections between previous and future units. To quote a teacher, "The sequence of the lessons is extremely well thought out to build one into the next, so that students see their knowledge growing from one standard to the next." This also provides access to progress monitoring and assessment data in real time for not only the teacher, but the principal and at the district level as well. In addition, there is a, the usage of a test trainer pro, which is a digital application that provides multiple practice with problems. And to quote a student, "I liked how the test trainer helped you work on specific skills and how you can choose which skill to practice."
And I'm going to share also some student and teacher input on the McGraw-Hill illustrative mathematics. We provided a, a variety of kind of hard data in our presentation, but this data you may not have come across and we really wanted to value that student and teacher voice. The curriculum illustrative math is designed to spark discussion, perseverance, and enjoyment in mathematics. A student quote from the field test was, "It brings many parts that serve as examples and others that are understood without being explained." There was explicit support for our special education and emerging bilingual students. A teacher quote, "I don't think we could find a better curriculum to help students develop strong conceptual mathematic understanding. I love the emphasis on student collaboration and voice. It noticeably helps students build confidence in their abilities. I also think the physical materials are very easy to use and the teacher guide provides very detailed guidance on lesson implementation." Illustrative also has access to progress monitoring and assessment data that's not just for the teacher, but also for the principals to look at. And finally, I think this is a teacher quote, "I think this would be hugely beneficial. There is rigor that centers the students' efforts. There are various ways to engage with the content, warm-ups, routines, activities, practice, cooldowns. The teacher guide is huge. Solutions are given, keys are provided for students who are struggling, and all of this cuts down on teacher work time. The online component is very useful and beneficial for students and would be useful for students who are struggling to come to school for any reason and are able to work online. I know that the workbooks are consumable, but I'm sure that I actually saved paper from previous years. There is ample content for tag and advanced sections, which will support those students and also reduce workload for those teachers. I highly recommend it." So we're wondering if you have any questions about the math adoption or anything that we can clarify? We're very excited about these two vendors for mathematic instruction that we're recommending to you. They both are very highly rated by Ed Reports, they had the top rating. So there has been this external evaluation and our own internal evaluation through extensive field testing, which began in September and just ended at the end of March by teachers of all over the district for both middle and high school. We did survey students, we surveyed teachers in multiple ways, we looked at student work and artifacts, we looked at, we observed teachers teaching in the classroom. We, we tried to build a comprehensive evaluation model and we are actually planning on an implementation evaluation to follow up to see how well student outcomes are going to improve because of this new math curriculum.
I just want to say I've run into some of the teachers doing the field testing in my school visits and it's been universally enthusiastic, both about just their, their assessment of the efficacy, but also just the engagement and the enthusiasm of the students, like it seems like a lot more fun.
Yeah.
We think it is.
Do we have any?
It's built in the curriculum to move away from kind of traditional math instruction, which focuses on procedural fluency, to really move towards conceptual understanding and students building knowledge by working with each other and collaborating and engaging in discourse, which we're really excited because it's embedded in the curriculum.
I'm really excited to learn more. I haven't been in schools where I've seen it or observed classrooms where they're using it. Do we, and I, it's my favorite subject, so I really love the idea, I, I don't know enough about how, how it's taught, but I do like the idea that it's interactive and that's collaborative and that it sounds like it's applied math, which is really, it was great. Do we, do we know how students of color, Black students in particular, I mean, do we have the data during our assessment to know, you know, is it culturally relevant? Is it, is it, you know, relatable? Is it, you know, how, do we have any idea how our Black students in particular are taking to this like awesome thing? Is it, is it being, is it effective from your six months of data collection?
So from the student survey data, one of the part we did ask is about the cultural relevancy, do they see themselves reflected in the materials? Do they see their student voice and feel that that's being valued as part of this? And we did look at it through specifically the demographics of Black, Native, and emergent bilingual student voice. And the students gave it the highest scores of mid-school math, which actually corresponded to what the teachers evaluated it as well. One of the difficult parts to determine is the impact. We did see that it had students, Black and. We did see that it had, uh, students, uh, black and native, uh, emergent bilingual student achievement according to MAP growth assessment, which was the piece that we did have, was, um, at the same rate as white peers. So it is a shorter amount of time to see how much, if that would have a greater growth or not, but it did, did match and was on the same pace as their white peers. Um, so, yeah.
My one question is OD recently adopted new math standards that included data reasoning. Does this curriculum allow us to kind of follow those new standards that are going to be implemented soon?
So for middle school, a hundred percent, and for high school? Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah. So for high school, um, one of the challenges that we have with the new Oregon State standards around the data reasoning part that you're speaking of is that, um, those standards are so brand-new that there isn't a lot of curriculum that aligns with this. And so these materials for high school do not align in that way, but we are actually, um, field testing next year some materials that do align with those data rea- reasoning and da- data science, um, standards that Oregon has adopted for high school math.
It, it does, um, cover the, um, statistics and probability as the sophomore course that would be, um, a point-five with geometry. So those are covered within the curriculum that we're purchasing. The, what would be additional would be, um, the junior level plus one full-year data science course. And we are looking at, um, a resource, an open-source resource for that, and we are beginning to train teachers to pilot that next year. The only caveat for that is we're so far ahead of the game
Yep.
that, um, the universities do not currently accept a data science for admissions, um, to the university. So, um, so we are only able to offer that data science in pilot to students who have already taken alg- advanced algebra, um, because they still are, University of Oregon and Oregon State, we've been talking with them, still require, um, Algebra III, IV for admission, not data science.
So with that, we are working with, um, the state group that has, uh, state leaders and the people who decide admission requirements at the colleges and things like that in collaboration to figure out what that looks like and what needs to be done in order for that to happen. And so we're really excited that Portland has a seat at that table to have that discussion.
Yeah, they're looking to us to be a leader in that area, and they're actually beginning to discuss at the university level teaching a data science course that would be similar to what we would be teaching so they can say it's worthy of college entry.
Do we have any other, um, questions? It looks like Director Brum Edwards, Director Hollins, Director Green, um, Director Lowry, Scott?
I want to say a quick, um, thank you to the superintendent for the foresight of including curriculum in our bond. Um, we otherwise know that we were on a very, very slow road to improving our curriculum resources. So shout out to our old friend, former chief academic officer Luis Valentino for having that foresight as well, and to our voters for supporting it. And, um, just want to point out to our board members that on the resolution that we're passing tonight, you'll see that the, um, actual digital resources are separated in the contracts from the, uh, personal services or the professional development support that the vendors provide. And in the memo, I don't know if, uh, in the memo that we originally received, um, the description of the contracts with these vendors included both the, the resources and the professional development, which raised a red, red flag for me given what, um, type of activities are, are bond-eligible. So I, uh, kind of worked through that today with, um, general counsel Liz Large. And so we do have a revised memo that makes it really clear in the memo how those are disaggregated, and then in the contracts that we're actually approving, it's really clear, um, how those are separated and paid for out of different funds.
Thank you for, uh, flagging that. Um, that's helpful. Um, do I have a motion in a second to adopt the four contracts for the new six, twelve math curriculum with resolution six, four, nine, seven?
So moved.
Second.
Director Lowry moves. Director Scott seconds the adoption of resolution six, four, nine, seven. Um, we've already had board discussion, and, uh, student representative, did you have any final thoughts? Is there any public comment? The board will now vote on resolution six, four, nine, seven to adopt the new math curriculum for grade six, twelve. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution six, four, nine, seven is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Chair, we just, yeah, just thank you to the board for, for your unanimous support here. Uh, I, this is a really important, another important step forward. Uh, we're going to keep these coming to you, uh, periodically. I just want to com- commend the team here, uh, for their extensive process, for the engagement that they described. Really looking forward to starting to see fidelity of implementation as, as we jump into the new school year and, uh, how, how our educators and students start to experience the material. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Director Hollins?
Yeah, yes, I did have a question. So with the new adoption piece, how is the professional development going to be administered to make sure that the teachers are, um, appropriately teaching the, the stuff?
Absolutely. So, um, we have already jumped into, uh, to professional learning planning, of course. There are two summer institutes, one in June and one in August, that teachers can attend, choose to attend. Both are three days. If teachers can't attend those, that, we do have fall options, and we are working to see what the diverse options we can, um, offer with the challenges around substitutes as well. And then, um, we're going to be offering ongoing, um, professional learning based on the calendar that was adopted by the board just a couple of weeks ago, um, to support on those embedded PD days, that there'll be professional learning, as well as we are looking at using some staff meeting time to run some professional learning cadres across the district to support that as well. Um, and then in addition to that, we are working to train our TOSAs to also become instructional coaches. And so they'll be working with teachers in the classroom on their lessons and their lesson planning, um, through that, and then doing the implementation evaluation to inform how well our professional learning is impacting what is happening with, uh, students and our teachers.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So, um, thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
For that, for staying late. Um, I'm excited. I think I've asked, um, early on about that growth curve, and when we would start seeing some real, um, action, and I feel like, uh, this is a great. I feel like we'll start to see results in a year or two.
For Margaret Calvert, our regional superintendent for secondary schools and all her school leaders, I was just going to say, I think we have her thumbs up, so.
We're now going to move to the climate. Are we, I don't even know, uh, so, climate? Oh, are, are we going to vote on the, okay. We're going to go back to the charter?
Are you going to go to charter?
Oh.
See? See? I told you.
No, it's fine. I mean.
Is that what we're doing?
I'm here.
I'm here too. I'm committed.
He's on the clock regardless.
Oh, okay. So, climate crisis, committee charter.
Jonathan.
We have two charter, sort of two titles in the cha- in, in, in our script. This is the climate crisis committee charter, so not to be confused with the charter school pass-through. Director Brum Edwards, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yep, this should be quick. Um, as everybody knows, we, oops, as everybody knows, we, um, passed a sweeping climate policy, um, earlier this year. Um, as part of that, there is a climate crisis, um, committee that, um, is composed of not more than nine community members. And this is the charter for the committee, and it's, um, been built off of, um, using the BAC and the Ci- and CBR, well, the Bond Accountability Committee and the Citizens Budget Review Committee as, um, sort of committee.
Community.
Community. Thank you. And so this is the charter, and I, I don't, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Kate was recommended by the, uh, policy committee. And, uh, the extra piece we have is, once we approve the charter, then we're going to move into the application process, and, um, I'll turn it over to you to talk about the, quickly about the, the launching of the committee.
Great, thank you, uh, Director Brum Edwards. So what you have on your screen is a general timeline here, uh, that we were proposing, uh, to you. Obviously subject to change. Uh, after today's, May tenth, uh, after you consider today's, uh, charter, we would move forward with, uh, the application deadline, uh, a month from today. Uh, this will give us an opportunity to, uh, reach out to our networks, our, your networks. Uh, really, again, you're the, you're the, you're the decision-makers here. So, um, however we can support you as staff in lifting up, uh, we have an application that, um, a few of you have reviewed. Uh, so our goal is to move forward with launching the CCR committee in July. Uh, I'm also happy to report that, uh, we have a verbal off, uh, a verbal offer and a verbal yes from, uh, the, our next, uh, climate justice advisor, uh, who is scheduled to, to begin here in June to really help launch this inaugural, uh, CCR committee. So, uh, we expect that the vote, the board would vote, vote on June twenty-eighth, uh, to, to consider and evoke the, the committee in its entirety, which leaves June twenty-first, when we will narrow and publicly share the inaugural slate of committee members. So, again, this is subject to change. Um, uh, working closely with our, with the policy committee to, to ensure that, that we have a successful launch in July, uh, right at the start of the new school year.
Would you like a motion?
So do I have a motion in a second to adopt resolution six, four, nine, eight? Resolution authorizing the climate crisis committee charter.
So moved?
Okay.
Did you move?
Brum Edwards? Okay. And Hollins? Director Brum Edwards moves. Director Hollins seconds the adoption of resolution six, four, nine, eight. Thank you. Is there any board discussion?
My one brief comment is just to call out that there's also stu- two student members that will be appointed, um, at the same time, and just really to push it out to kindergarten through eighth graders as well, not just to high schools.
Yeah, we look forward to working with the DSC to identify some students.
Ms., Ms. Powell, is there any public discussion, public comment? The board will now vote on resolution six, four, nine, eight. Resolution authorizing the climate crisis committee charter. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution six, four, nine, eight is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Appreciate it. And I want to thank Erin, who stayed here till late.
I've been, um.
So, without saying a word, so maybe you want to say, "Thank you."
Erin, um.
Thank you.
I'm trying to come up with a really difficult question to ask you, so you'll feel like it was good to be here all this time. Erin, sorry. What were you going to say? Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And Erin, um, I know you're involved with some of the city's, um, work as, as I, as I am on, on our climate response as well, so it's nice to meet you in person.
You too, thank you.
Um, we're now going to move on, um, to the charter school pass-through rate. Um, at the April twentieth charter and, um, alternative programs committee meeting, I understand the committee recommended moving forward a resolution to increase the pass-through rate for all charter schools, beginning in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Director Green, did you want to introduce this next item?
Well, I would love to. Um, in our committee meeting, um, we, we were discussing the pass-through amount and how much, um, we as a school did retain and how much goes to the actual, um, charter schools. And we were talking about it from a space of, um, how do we, um, stabilize, help to stabilize some of our, our charter schools who are struggling to, to stay afloat, um, given the pandemic and the rise in nature of all of our costs all the way around. And, um, although there's, um, at this point, without going to legislation, we found that there was nothing that we could do as far as like pers and stuff. Um, we asked the staff, um, at that time, if they would come back and provide us with, um, a scenario, um, around what would it look like to, um, change the pass-through rate from eighty percent to ninety percent? And how would that impact us, um, as a district? At that time, the charge that, um, that we gave them was that we wanted to find out what it would look like, but we also wanted to ensure that the funds that we gave, um, wouldn't surpass the amount of funding that we got to support the charter schools. So we wanted to make sure that, um, in their, um, in their, um, presentation that they came back to us with, that they provided us with a worst-case scenario. So from including administrative fees, legal fees, just, everything goes to hell in a handbasket, and we're going to be doing more work than we've ever done. What would that, what would those numbers look like? And so they brought back, um, some figures, um, and with that, it, it showed that we would be passing through a certain amount, and we would still have, um, a significant amount left over, um, to pass through to the general fund. And so we discussed it. Um, it went on the table. There was some back and forth on the table, um, around whether or not this is something that, um, we could do now or if we should do later. And so essentially what we, what we decided was, let's get it to the board for, um, let's get it to the board for, um, a full board discussion. There was, you know, because it had to leave the committee, otherwise it dies in the committee, and we didn't want it to die in the committee. So we said, you know, well, we can, we can live with twenty-three, twenty-four, um, but that would just get it out of the committee, and then we'd take it out of the committee, and we could talk about it as a full board to decide what it is as a board that we felt would be appropriate and when we felt it would be appropriate. And that's how we got to where we are now. So I'm hoping that everyone had a chance to read through all the materials that were provided so that we can have a, a more robust conversation around it.
Thank you, Director Green. Um, Director, I mean, I'm sorry, Superintendent Guerero.
Still here.
I'm very tired. It looks like staff is here to.
Yeah, they, they are. Uh, I, I think you have the, the staff memo from, from our two deputies. Uh, Dr. Proctor can fill in, but, but we have the others. Thanks, uh, Director Green, for that added background and context, and we heard some of it earlier also from our community members. This, this is one of those situations where we might have a slight variation, uh, uh, but it's good that we're having this discussion here with, with staff's perhaps more conservative, uh, approach and, and when to take up the policy decision and, and also the fiscal implementation if we were to move in that direction, but, but I'll let Dr. Proctor take it from here.
Uh, thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. Um, you know, PPS holds equity as a cen- as, um, a central tenant for the work that we do and for all decisions and actions and work, uh, to eliminate, uh, racial disparities. So we really want to look at, um, you know, taking things through, uh, an equity lens. The major goal of the school district's, uh, vision is, again, to eliminate some of those predictable factors. The purpose for, the, the proposed change in the charter school funding would transfer and reallocate general fund resources currently being spent to support PPS, um, uh, neighborhood schools and programs receiving equity-based resource allocations. The charter school funding is within the general fund and is not separate from those funds. Uh, so staff recommends delaying the policy decision on charter school funding ratios until the twenty-twenty-three school year to allow for, uh, a national benchmarking and strategic resourcing evaluation to be completed, um, by educational resource strategies. Uh, staff, uh, values using, uh, the benefits of this work before making an individual long-term, um, financial commitment. We believe it would be prudent to look at these, uh, financial decisions together as we create our long-term strategic financial plan. And, um, with that, um, I think we can, um, see if there's a further discussion, but that was what I wanted to introduce and say.
Thank you, and I would be interested in hearing from the, um, other committee members. Your, your thoughts on this and your, you'd recommended, you'd recommended that this be put in front of the board, um, to be considered for twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah, I can give just a little bit of background, and then, um, also I want to acknowledge staff's perspective that Dr. Proctor just relayed. First of all, uh, back in twenty-nineteen, when we first created the charter and alternative schools committee or reconstituted it, we asked for, we, we talked about this question, and we asked for an analysis from the district about that pass-through rate. The, the pass-through rate is set by the state as a floor. The state says that, um, they have to, you have to pass through eighty percent, but they don't say, they, they, they don't prescribe that whether or not. But they don't say, they, they, they don't prescribe that whether or not districts can choose to pass through more than eighty percent. But eighty is the minimum set by the state. So we asked staff to look at that back at that time and look at it with our racial equity lens. And the analysis came back that our charter schools, first of all, we don't have a large student population in our charter schools. And our charter schools do not serve the same demographic generally as our district schools. They don't serve as many historically underserved students. And so in that conversation in twenty nineteen, what we decided to do, to move out of that committee to the board, which was eventually approved, was to create a resolution that would create a ninety five percent pass through rate for any of our charter schools that served more than fifty percent historically underserved students. Is that right? Is the terminology historically underserved or is it by race or eth, race?
Historically underserved by race, ethnicity.
Yes.
And it was fifty, fifty one percent?
That's what I thought. Historically underserved specifically by race and ethnicity. And so I think that was the right thing to do personally and that was approved by the board. And at that time and presently, we only have one charter school that qualifies for that and that is Kairos PDX. So we have these four other schools that receive eighty percent pass through. It is tough sledding, I will say, as we have heard from them. They have a difficult time finding facilities, especially now as rents are increasing. They have a difficult time retaining excellent educators based on what they're able to pay. It is a tough financial model. And there are a lot of barriers to operating as a charter school in the state of Oregon. And that is fairly intentional by the state legislature. This is a, we have a charter unfriendly political climate, I think it's safe to say. So that was our conversation. We did talk about the fact that these four schools do not serve a demographic that is similar to our, rest of our district. So in that sense, a recommendation to draw from the general fund to increase our pass through rate to our charter schools is not in alignment with our racial equity and social justice lens. But I, I will just, I will just state my point of view and sort of the conversation that we had in that committee was that our overarching value is that to a great degree, our, our values are that the dollars should follow the students and that these students are being served in a different setting, but they're still our kids. And so it was with that sentiment in mind that we decided to bring this before the full board for consideration. And I, we, we, the majority of the, our committee wanted to bring it forward for implementation in the twenty three budget in the twenty three school year because when this came to us, we were in the mid, middle of our budget process. So if we were to consider changing this resolution and doing it any sooner, it would mean we would have to direct staff to go back to our district budget and find, you know, one, roughly one point two million dollars in savings, which is not an easy exercise at this moment. And for me personally, I don't think a responsible exercise. That said, I will very enthusiastically support this resolution for implementation next year.
So just my sort of being on the committee, my one hesitation with this is that, you know, we had a gentleman testify tonight about dollars following students. And we know that if we look at the, you know, what we get from the state school fund that was on the PAT slide tonight, it was about nine thousand dollars per student. That's not how PPS allocates the money. We do an equity based budget. And so when we look at our budget book, we see that students in, like, I think students at Alliance is like twenty thousand dollars a student because there are some, it's a small program with really special needs. And so the way we've always looked at the charter school dollars has not been about the dollars following students because that's not how we do things in PPS. And so when we changed the pass through rate to ninety five for our historically underserved, part of the rationale there was to encourage our charter schools to, to really broaden their recruitment. Charter schools have a lottery. They can't use race as one of the weights necessarily. There's a lot of laws around how admission can happen to charter schools, but we were hoping that they would do a, a little more recruitment to, to change the makeup of some of those schools. And I know that some like Portland Village School have really worked hard, especially with the Hispanic community, to change some of their demographics. So that's the place where I struggle a little bit. I, I'm okay with the ninety percent pass through. I, I wouldn't be okay with more just because when we look at our charter school numbers, they don't match their, PPS as far as historically underserved students. So when you pull Kairos out and look at the rest of our charters, you know, there, there is an equity issue there. So, so I support the ninety. I support waiting a year because it is another million we'd have to cut from the budget. And while when we talk about our entire budget, a million doesn't seem like a lot. I think we really are trying to put as much as we can in our local classrooms. So, so it's this really interesting question about money following students and how do we do things differently, both in supporting our charter schools, which serve our different learners, and in keeping our equity priorities in PPS? So I feel like ninety is a good compromise there, but I do think we still need to continue to encourage and support our charter schools as they continue to reflect the makeup of PPS as a whole.
Did you have comments or questions?
Well, I may have a comment, but also a question. But first I'm going to start with a comment because Director Green, like, I'm older than dirt and I feel like I've seen everything and I can't believe that this is something that, the, the rates that you shared is not something that actually has been, I think, put before the board before. And I think it's a really great question because I look at the numbers that, once we back out the actual program cost expenses, just looking at the five year averages that we received. I mean, the district, I mean, charters are subsidizing the districts in so, in some ways. And I, I guess I, it's been going on for a long time. And I, if I look at it, or at least I'm looking back to the numbers of seventeen, eighteen, it's at least two million dollars a year that the district has held back, even though it, it's already paid the expenses or the cost of administrating or supporting the program. So I'm, when I look at that, I'm thinking like, what, what, what would I know differently? What, what, what would I learn from some sort of national benchmarking that would change my mind in a year from now? And I, I guess I, I'm not really sure there's anything that I would find compelling. I don't, I don't think our, the overall, and I'd be interested, maybe you could share the number of historically underserved students in our charters versus our, in our, our overall population. I'd be interested that if somebody could speak to that.
I know it's in the board books for the charter meeting. I'll look it up for you.
I think it's like three or four percentage points difference, which I don't find different. And I also would note, just like, based on all the conversations I've had over the years with the charters that have closed, is the fact that they have to carry the facilities costs and the, you know, any sort of, there's no transportation. So there, it's, it's not like we just give them slightly less. It's like they also, unlike all of our other schools, they have to actually go get a building and maintain it and pay rent and all those things. So I think they have like extra costs on top of it. So I, I'm trying to think of what, what information, benchmarking survey. It's like the next three slides. I'll look at them in just a sec. I don't know what a benchmarking survey may show to me that would tell me something different than, I don't know why we don't pass through more of this. Because I, I do feel that there is a moment of vulnerability for our charters that they may close. And once, once you start the unwinding, you, you can't just start them back up again. I think that's what we found out with, with Opel. It's like, all of a sudden they closed and even though I think universally people felt it was a really important charter in, in the mix or an option for our students that like you couldn't, once they lost their, their place to be, you couldn't sort of help sustain them like we would a school community. So I, I would be more inclined to support moving ahead this, this year.
And the resolution that we have before us is, does not acknowledge the staff recommendation that we wait a year for benchmarking. It's in the staff report, but the resolution simply asks us whether we want to vote on implementation of this change in ninety three.
I would also like to add that in my initial introduction of this, and I'm, I'm waiting to go around the room, that I just wanted to simply introduce the, introduce the topic for, for greater discussion. And I did not want to, in the introduction of that, input where I, what my position is and where I was at because I did not want my position to change. You know, I, I want everybody, I want everybody to be talking about this, which is why I shared the information that I did. Because I wanted to make sure that everybody was coming from the same page. So at some point, I do want to come back around and speak to why I feel we should be doing this and why I feel we should be doing this now.
Well, it's eleven fifteen, so I, I'm, I'm all ears.
Normally I, I would, you know, I'd be right there with you, Andrew, but I'm, I'm in a hotel room and, and I'm comfortable. So I'll try to make, I'll try to make this brief.
Oh, boy.
No, so as I, as I, as I'm looking at this, the funding that, that we're talking about using is funding, state funding that's allocated to us for, specifically for charter schools. And although it's a, it's a general fund, this is state funding that has been allocated to us to support and uphold and to make sure that, you know, we're doing all that we can to uplift charter schools. And of that money, the twenty million, roughly twenty million dollars that we're going to get, we're going to be using sixteen million of that roughly to support, support charter schools. Then we're going to add another seven hundred and ten thousand that is going to cost us that we're saying to administer, to admin, to do whatever we need to do to, to work with the, to work with the charter schools. And even if we raise that up to say it's going to cost us a million dollars this year to support the charter schools, which is greater by far than any year we have ever had, when you, especially when you look at the five year, the five year projection that we've done. We've never spent that much money. But even if we did spend that much money, we would still be passing through just over a million dollars into the, the general budget. The reason that I'm, I'm bringing this up is because as we're, we're trying to pad the general budget so that we can make up for the forty million dollar shortfall that, that we're going to have, we're, we're not really seeming to take into consideration that these, these two schools may fail, not because they're not doing great work, not because they don't have the funding, but because we want to make sure that we pad our forty million dollar, our forty million dollar deficit. Now, to me, that's unconscionable. We're, someone, once, someone said to me, well, what are we going to do if, if all of a sudden that we get all the charter schools and they're all, you know, like Kairos now? And where's that money going to come from then? Well, first of all, that's not going to happen this year. I think that's safe to say. I don't care how much they try. I don't care what they do, whatever. It's not even about being optimistic or pessimist. That's just, that's just not realistic of it's going to happen. But if they were to do it on next year, then because there's a, a weight involved with each one of the students, then the amount of money given to us from the state would actually go up. And so because that amount would go up, then the amount that we had to support the charter schools would go up and therefore we would still be able to do the same work without ever impacting what's going or what's would be going into the general, the general fund because we're going to get more money. So if by chance all the schools are now all of a sudden serving all the black kids, then we're going to get more money anyway. So that shouldn't even be, that shouldn't even be a conversation piece because it's sustainable all on its own. We're talking about, we want to do research and we want to find out and we want to hear what the, what the data says. When we can look at the last five years and see what the data trends have said and how much we pass through and how much we've used. So I think we have a data trend to go from. We have a sustainability option that does not take away from the, the current general fund unless, unless you pit, unless you want to pit now serving black kids above serving charter school kids. So if you want to make that the argument, if the argument is, well, if we support these schools, then we want to be able, we won't be able to support as many other black kids. That is an argument that you can make. I just don't believe that it's a just one. I don't believe it is the one that, that we should be making right now because we shouldn't be saying, and I get it. I, I know that we want the, the black kids to be, you know, say, they need to get closer to graduation. But when the state gives us funding specifically for an organization, you know, we want to make sure that you've got money to support these schools and we want to make sure that it doesn't take away from anything else. We're taking away from them to support other stuff. While they fail, because, and we do it in the name of, we're going to help all these other black kids. I believe we should be helping all the kids. And if they've given us money to support these schools, then let's use that money to support those schools to the best of our ability. One part of me wanted to argue that I don't believe that we should be passing through any of the money. I believe that we should be using all of the money to support charter schools and whatever we don't use for the pass through amount, that we actually use that additional funds to sponsor events where they're going to be taking kids to and from places. Maybe we use that money to help them with transportation, seeing that probably, prob, it's possible, it's plausible that part of the reason that a lot of black kids can't come to charter schools is because they live far away and they need transportation and charter schools don't actually get any transportation funding. So maybe if to quote, to quote a friend of mine who spoke tonight, she said, we have to look at transportation and we have to look at it from our equity lens. And if we are going to do that, then we quote, we have to, who has access literally and figuratively to transportation? So if we're looking at all of this through the equity lens, then part of the reason that black kids can't come to the charter schools is because we don't provide any type of transportation to get them there. So if we start looking at access to transportation, both litera, literally and figuratively, then maybe we can do something to increase the number of kids, black kids, that are attending charter schools by providing them another transportation option because transportation is real. And so I don't believe we can wait. I don't believe that we should wait. I believe that we should do this now. The only reason that I, and I said this in the committee, so I don't believe I'm speaking out of turn or, you know, saying something that I've never said before. I said, I'll vote for twenty three, twenty four if it'll get it out of the committee so that we can talk about it at the, at the board. But what I really want is for us to do it now. And so I voted twenty three, twenty four simply, and I said it then, and I believe that's public, so I can say it again now, simply so that we could get it here and we could discuss it. Because I believe if we truly look at this, we recognize that the only right decision, the only real decision on the table for us now is to pass this so that those charter schools that are on the verge of closing can have an assurance of some kind, especially since we're saying we're, we're being kid focused. They can have an assurance that those kids will actually have a school to come back to next year.
And, and I will vouch for Herman, that Amy and I were saying delay it a year and he was saying, do it for this, the twenty two, twenty three school year. And we said, well, two of us have, are voting one way, you're voting another. The majority will bring it to the committee and then you can give your passionate speech to try to change everybody's minds.
Sure. No, that makes a lot of sense. So the policy decision before us is do we pass the resolution as is, which implements this in twenty three, twenty four? Do we amend the resolution to do it in twenty two, twenty three? Or do we amend the resolution with the staff recommendation, which is to benchmark and wait, right? Those are, those are the three options. I'm curious, the, the folks... Ah, I see. Wait, okay. I'm, I'm curious from those who, who want to move forward next year, though. What's your idea for where to find the one point two million dollars? Because that is roughly ten to twelve teachers, just to put it in, in, in context. So I think as a board, given where we're on the budget process. And, and, and I'm going to ask board members to do this throughout, and I'll hold myself to this as well. To the extent we start putting ideas on to move funds around and do different things, I think we also owe it to at least, at least give some direction. Doesn't have to be line item, but at least give some direction to the superintendent about where we think that funding should come from. And so... Yeah. Yeah, and I guess for me, I mean.
I don't, I don't hear whoever's talking, so whatever the, the back and forth is.
That was my bad, sorry, Director Green.
Yeah, and, and I guess for me, I'm, I'm in support of moving in this direction. And it, for me, it's just, it really is the timing question and, and for me, it's that, it's that trade-off question. What, what is the trade-off next year if we move more quickly? Who will that impact? Who will that, who will that harm? We know it'll help the charter schools, so the question is who, who, who gets harmed by that?
I, I also, I like, sorry, Julia, let me, I want to just bring it back to Ailey's point around, we don't, we don't fund our district schools on a pass-through dollar basis. Attached for this agenda item, you'll see the heat map of what our investment is per student in all of our schools and it varies widely, you know, it's a two X different from how we fund our high-poverty schools and, you know, our, our lowest-funded schools. And when we look at where our charter schools are right now, they're, they're, they're in the mix there. And, and Julia, to your point, I mean, yes, they do have some added expenses, but right now their allocations are seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. So that puts them comparable with a school like, say, Denaway, which is one of our lowest-funded schools. And this would bump it up to eighty-five, eighty-one, which puts them comparable to Forest Park.
This is a really, this is a really important point, and I hadn't thought about it quite like that. Because I was, as I was going through our budget book, I was noticing, you know, Jackson Middle School in my zone has one of the lowest per student, you know, per capita's. It, it's also a very successful school. And, and so again, that's what, as, you know, we've all been talking about, like, that's the reallocation of resources, which I think is the right thing to be doing. But, but if we use the same frame, I mean, we are taking two, twenty-five hundred dollars for every student that goes to Jackson and supporting some, someone else in the district. I think that's the right decision, right? I think that's what we should be doing for those students. So that, I, I appreciate that because that, that does put it in perspective. We, we don't just take the nine thousand, whatever we get from the district and, and send it to every school where those kids go. We make some policy decisions about where those, that funding goes.
Can I make a comment about that, too? I just want to add into that, that looking at the heat map, if you look at what the charter school's funding is, that seven thousand, whatever it is, and correct for twenty percent of their funding goes to a facility, so that general fund dollars is paying for their facility, whereas on your heat map, those school dollars per student don't include your bond funding.
Important point.
It's a very important point, and the additional, uh, uh, purse, which, as you pointed out, wasn't as dramatic as initially reported, but is still pretty, pretty dramatic. So correcting for that, even if you look at the charter school, we pass through ninety-five percent too. At ninety-five percent, they're getting nine thousand dollars-ish per student. And when you compare it to district schools with that similar demographic or student population, those schools would be, in our ability to be able to transfer and, and create more equitable funding, would be getting anywhere from twelve thousand to sixteen thousand dollars per student. So even with passing through that ninety-five percent, we're still having charter schools not, we're not asking that charter schools would be, they wouldn't be similar to what district schools are getting. They're actually still getting quite a bit less, even with that ninety percent pass-through, when you correct for the, if that makes any sense around the heat map.
I can get that last part exactly, but I think we're probably fine to move on. But if you're just talking about the additional facilities.
What she's saying is, looking at the map and comparing it to Forest Park isn't really a comparative because Forest Park, the students there and, and the principal have a school that's, like, they have a facility that's paid for and utilities and everything, so it's actually a lot.
There, there's an overhead that is not accounted for in our heat map. Operations, you know, lights, building itself, rent, roughly twenty percent.
But we also, we also need to consider that all of these charter schools have active fundraising endeavors that help support and, and lead some of this work as well. And many of our school communities do not have that as a comparison.
But they also don't have us as a district going out and finding different, um, different vendors and different ones to provide dollars that are going to also come back and help the school. I mean, not to, this, I, this ain't the, really the time or the space to count other people's money, but the superintendent actually does a great job going out, talking to folks. And he's got, I mean, he's got a lot of folks on the hook right now that are really looking to give PPS in our school district millions, millions of dollars right now based on some of the work that, that he's doing. And so I'm not trying to, I'm not here to try to pat his back right now or do anything like that. I'm here to say the same way, you know what I'm saying, that we're going after, even though we have funding coming in, we have a superintendent who's out there going out trying to find other monies and other resources to try to help come up with the shortfalls. And those charter schools, because they're good business people, too, they're doing the same thing. So that's apples to apples right now. So let's not, I don't think we should be digging into their pockets saying, show me your checkbook, because they don't get to do that to us as PPS. So one thing has nothing to do with others, so let's focus on this part.
No, I agree, Director Green, and I would say, you know, as, as you pointed out, eighty percent of, of, of funding, you know, is, is what the state asks districts to do. So I, I'm assuming that directors will, you know, go to the legislature and advocate for the same percentage across the board, across the entire state. So that mo, that means working with our democratic leaders who are probably not in a position to support charters in the state, as has been mentioned before, our history here of, of, you know, let's be led by labor groups, you know, this anti-charter movement. We need to, you know, if, if we're going to be in this position, I think this is an opportunity for PPS to lead at the legislative level and increase that, that percentage at the state level.
Absolutely.
I would like to get us back to the conversation about, are we going to pass this? I mean, our three choices before us, are we going to table this? Are we going to pass it as amended or are we going to amend it for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year? And I think what I heard Director Scott say is if we're going to amend it for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, where are we going to move the money? Where are we going to find that one point two million?
I guess he, here's what I would say is, I, I'm with Director Green in that I don't think, it's sort of a false choice to say, if you take it from here. I mean, the reality is it goes into the general fund and, you know, staff has made a whole host of decisions throughout the year on contracts that they put before us that, you know, that's all general fund money as well. So I, this whole, like, if you take it from here, you're taking it from these schools. I, I don't, I, I don't buy that trade-off because, I mean, we have contracts that come to us all the time and I'm wondering if it's gone through the equity lens of, you know, is this the highest value? Does this impact students? And, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that's a, a valid way to say, like, if you support this, you have to go, like, take it out of another budget.
There's a big difference here, though, which is that this issue did not come to us until we had a proposed budget on the table. And, you know, we hadn't, as a charter committee, we hadn't discussed this since twenty nineteen. And there, and our charters hadn't been advocating for this this year. They came to us and they said, times are really tough, we had a couple that are having to renew leases. Can we possibly renew this conversation? And we said, yeah, that's a conversation that we want to have. I don't think at the onset of that, anyone anticipated that we were going to upend the budget process in the middle of it, which is why we put forward this resolution to say, we want to do the right thing by our charter schools. I, I hope as a majority, we want to do the right thing, we want to increase this pass-through rate. But it did not come to us until we already had a proposed budget. So that's the difference in terms of having to look for puts and takes. So I think maybe we should just vote on the underlying resolution and if it doesn't pass, then somebody can propose a amended resolution and we'll see.
Okay, and I haven't weighed in at all because I've been very patient, listening to everybody. So I, I can't get over the slide three that talks about the percentage of historically underserved. And that's a reality that, you know, we've, but my kids went to your school. They went to Emerson's school twenty years ago or whatever, and, or maybe just eighteen. And, and, and the school, the charter schools have always had trouble attracting or whatever, retaining, you know, black families, families of color. And so I, I would be, you know, in favor of the pass-through, I think that's the right decision to do and I would be in favor of doing it in twenty-three, twenty-four, not, not in this year. And I'd like to see with that, as, as I think Director Lowery mentioned, is when we voted to pass ninety-five percent through, I believe that was in twenty twenty, was it twenty twenty or twenty nineteen? Twenty, it was somewhere in there, it's hard to know with pre-COVID. Twenty twenty, thank you, okay, it's, it's written down. We, my hope was that, that would, you know, encourage these other charter schools to, like, try to diversify their, their, their student bodies. You know, that's, that's what the hope was and then, and then the, the pandemic hit and all that stuff. So I'm, I would be in favor of, of a ninety percent and I would be in favor of doing that in, not this current year, in the following year, in twenty-three, twenty-four.
So I'm, I'm weighing in a little bit.
Yes, and you're, you, you quiet, too.
So I look at, when I, when I, when it was brought, brought to my attention, I was, I looked at what's the purpose of the funds, right? If the purpose of the funds was for charter schools, then as we talk about alignment, then all those funds should be geared towards charter schools. So whether that is, whether it was eighty percent or seventy percent or whatever that amount is, the remaining of that money is to what? It should, for me, it seems like it still should be geared towards charter schools, whether that's support, whether that's whatever other supportive thing that they need to do that should be for them. The fact that we use it for other things, that's just, that's just what we did. I don't know why it was, because eighty percent is the floor. So why was that, why did we come at that number? And what was the purpose of us using those other twenty percent for what funds? And I, I don't know if that was this administration or last year or whatever, but that's kind of where I was, I, I looked at this when I, when I, when this was brought up, is what were those other twenty percent for? If it wasn't geared towards charter schools, when that's, from my understanding, was the purpose of the funds anyway? So I, I kind of look at it as almost as restricted funds, right? If this comes into that restricted funds, then we would have to use all of this that was to support charter schools however we see fit. Now, if it was told to us that, you know, we're going to do eighty percent here, but the other twenty percent is to go to support charter schools, that would make sense to me. But in, if they're not used for charter schools, then I just, I, that just don't really, that makes that much sense to me of where those other funds is going towards when it's coming for charter schools. That's just my take. So I would support, I mean, I support that we're going up to, what, ninety percent? I think we should do it this year. The fact that we have spent it on other stuff, even though that the purpose is it for charter schools, that is something that we have to deal with. And I'm going to push back a little bit on Director Scott saying, well, that's ten and, ten or twelve teachers. Well, we can make that scenario for administration, that's maybe like five or six administration. So I mean, so I just don't want us to be using that, well, this is, it could be for this or this could be for that, as opposed to saying, you know, what, what is the best going to help our kids in those, those decisions and the, and, and the extra money that we use it for.
Sure, but I'm going to come back and, and I'm going to push back a little on, on Director Permett words. I, I think it's a cop-out if we as a board say, you know, we're going to spend this additional one point two million dollars, but we're not going to give you any direction in terms of where we want it to come from. And I think it's incumbent on us as a board to give that direction. Doesn't mean we have to go down to the line item, but it means we need to, and, and maybe we shouldn't be voting on this tonight without, without the, the superintendent and his team coming back and saying, this is our recommendation about where that one point two million dollars would come from. Otherwise, we're really, I mean, we, we're just, we're at, we're only doing half. I mean, if, 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 if my, if my kids say, I, you know, I want to go out to eat two more times a week, then, and I say, sure, I mean, it's like, that's an easy decision. But when I say, well, where, where's that money going to come from is where it gets hard, right? And so it's easy for me, I mean, Everett, yeah, go to ninety percent, that's fine, it's easy. The question is where it comes from and, and that question's not on the table before us today. So I guess what I just want to make sure, when they come back and say, it's five administrators, it's ten teachers, it's, you know, supports for students in summer school, are we going to, what are, what are we going to say as a board? And would that change anyone's mind in terms of, of going to ninety percent? And, and I just, it's not a complete question to me without knowing, knowing that, that answer.
I'm, I'm wondering, so that, since there is that twenty percent gap left on the table, could that be used? And, and part of that would be admin. I don't know what the right ratio is, at seven percent or, or eight percent or ten percent, but is there some way to use that twenty percent or what's left of the twenty percent after admin to support the schools in their overhead costs?
That's what we're talking about, is that, so.
Well, that's is, we just be.
Yeah, so we give them, so, we give them, we give them eighty percent and then the other twenty percent, about ten percent goes to admin on our side, the legal things we have to do as a district. And then the other ten percent, the one point two million currently goes to, like, our equity fund to fund other schools. So what we're asking is, do we take that one point two million out of our budget and give it to charters this year? Or do we wait next year and build that into the budget for, for twenty-three, twenty-four?
I guess where I'm confused, Ailey, and maybe it wasn't clear to me, and, and, and that could be because everybody knows I'm, I'm a little slow with things. But where, where I'm confused is that we're asking, where is it going to come from? When the question is, when the, well, in my mind, they've already given us the nineteen million and some change. Of that nineteen million that they've given us for charter schools, we, can somebody pull that up and put it on the screen? I think Tara had it. Tara, Tara and Karina made a sheet that we went over in the, the committee that showed exactly what the money is. And so, and it had one number in red and the other one in black.
Yeah, that was in our materials from the meeting, yeah.
Okay, so let's, maybe we can get that pulled up, or I can just read it off. But it was.
Sorry, go ahead.
It was, what we were looking at was, when you say, where is it going to come from? It's going to come from the nineteen million that they've already given us to support charter schools.
They've given us nineteen million to serve students.
Through, we're going to, of that, we're going to use sixteen million and some change to support charter schools. We're going to use seven hundred and ten thousand and some change to support the administrative. And then we're going to pass through almost three million dollars left over to pad the general fund forty million deficit.
Yeah, and so, so Director Green, those, those resources are already allocated in the proposed budget. So, so I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you that they, they came for charter schools. And I, I want to be clear, I'm in support of moving to ninety percent, but you, we can't pretend like we're starting at a place where we're not. We are where we are, the district, I don't know how long, has been spending this money on other things. So the impact of this policy change is real. It's not, it's not, it's not mythical, right? We're not sort of like, oh, you know, whatever, they can just reallocate the money. It's real and I just, I mean, we as a board acknowledge that.
And that's why, I, that's why I tell people all the time, Andrew, I like you because you're frugal. You're, you're the one that's going to remind us where the money is at.
And I, I think, I'm really struggling, Director Green, because I think there's the fundamental, like, the way we're thinking about it is, PPS gets, we get, you know, we have fifty thousand students and our charter students are counted in that, they, you know, they're counted in our students. And so, you know, the state says you have fifty thousand students, you get ninety-seven hundred dollars per student. We, as a district, have a policy that the money does not follow the students. So the money, we do an equity lens in our money allocation. So students at Lincoln get six thousand dollars, students at Roosevelt get eleven. Those are not accurate numbers, those are just guesses. So the Lincoln students are subsidizing the Roosevelt students, if you want to think about it. So the money we are given doesn't necessarily have to follow the charter students. It's not their money, it doesn't, it, but if, depending on how we look at the, the money per student, it's a philosophical decision. Now, we can say, we are going to do this with our charter schools and we're going to have that tax, tax money follow those kids. And I'm not opposed to the ninety percent, but this language around, we're taking money from the students, this is our fundamental policy as a board, that we do equity funding and so we don't have the money go to each student. Now, if we want to change the way we fund and have the money go to each student, we can do that.
So if, so if it was no charter schools, will we get that money?
Yes, because they would be PPS students.
So they, so they would get that money regardless?
If they, if they're PPS students and they came to the school, yeah. I mean, it'd be the same if.
But then they would maybe go to a school where the purpose, people funding was six thousand instead of nine or eleven.
So, so when you talk about the budgets, right, we talk about one point eight billion, that, you're talking about almost zero point zero zero percent of our budget. So I understand you make it seem like a million dollars is a whole lot, which I, I understand is a lot, it's, it's a significant amount. But it's also point oh 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 cents percent of our budget. And of course, you can, you can make it dramatic and say, oh, it's ten teachers, it's such and such.
But it is ten teachers, I mean.
And that's three administrators.
Three, we don't, our administrators don't get paid that much.
Yes, they do, we got the budget, it's in there. That's, I'm just saying, so, I just don't, I, what I'm saying is, I don't want to make it, I don't want to make it dramatic and talk about our teachers or whatever.
Make it about administrators, I don't care, but don't pretend like it's nothing. When you say it's point zero zero one, I mean, that's, that's, that's artificially long, it's, it's one point two million dollars.
I understand that, but what, what I'm saying is that if this money is allocated for them, it should be for them.
So let me, let me put it this way, what if I introduce a resolution that said, I want Jackson Middle School students to get the state allocation, because they get about two thousand dollars. Cause they get about two thousand dollars less right now. So I said, you know what, I want them to get the state allocation. Would we just say, well, that money came for them, right? They're students, they got that state allocation, it's not coming for them. We would all say, no, 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 that's gonna come from somewhere else because we've made a conscious decision. The district made a conscious decision, I don't know when, to, to reallocate some of this money we get from charter school students, students going to charter schools to other, to other places. I'm in favor of increasing that to ninety percent, but I, I, I'm, I'm troubled by the fact that we're sort of papering over the impact that's gonna have.
I don't think we paper an over.
For me, I wanna know where that's gonna come from. Because it, it's, it's going to be a real reduction and, and maybe it's a contract, maybe it's a, you know, but, you know, it's gonna come from somewhere, it's gonna have an impact.
I, I wanna just say, so what we have in front of us, the resolution is two parts, right? One is to prove, approve an increase in the pass-through rate from eighty percent to ninety percent. And the second part of that is, um, and so it's a pass-through rate of state school funds from eighty percent to ninety percent for K eight charter schools, serving populations of less than fifty percent historically underserved by race ethnicity, beginning in the twenty twenty-three. So there's that, that time period, that time piece. Are we ready to put a motion on the table to pass that resolution as it is?
I think we should and see what happens.
What was the question?
What if we introduce an amendment that says we do eighty-five this year, ninety this year?
That is the resolution that we have in front of us.
But we can make an amendment, right?
Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion in a second. I mean, we're kind of, I think that what we're hearing is that everybody here, I believe, most people, um, are in favor of increasing the pass-through from eighty percent to ninety percent.
I just wanna say, like, this is a valuable conversation, but I, I feel like we're really missing this, um, moment of innovation and progressive policy that we're trying to make here. Because there is no other school district, large school district in this state that passes through more than eighty percent. And we took a look at this and we said, you know what, we wanna do better for our charter school students. They are our kids and we're getting hung up on this implementation question, which, I mean, I agree with Director Hollins that as a, as a, as a percentage of our overall budget, it's not a lot of money. And in the building of a budget next year, it will be easy to figure out, you know, how are we going to absorb that loss of, you know, a million dollars or so? Not easy, but, you know, but, but I'll just reiterate, I don't think it's responsible in the middle of a budget process when we already had a proposal on the table. And quite frankly, I don't think that was the expectation when we just began this conversation with our charter schools three weeks ago, which is not to say that they can't use it, of course they can, but, um, that was not where this conversation was being directed to when we started to talk about it and they were delighted to find that all the board members on the subcommittee said, we support this, we think this is a great idea. So I don't wanna lose sight of like how progressive this is, how there's no other large district, there's no other district other than a few like practically single school districts in the state of Oregon, um, that pass through more than eighty percent. And so we can be an example.
I'm gonna be just a little bit more middle of the road than, than that. I, I'm, I, I will vote to support the resolution if, if, you know, if, if, as, as written, if that's what we wanna do. I could get to a place of implementing it next year, but not before seeing what the trade-offs are. So like, I'm not, I, I can be convinced to do it next year, but not tonight, not without knowing what those trade-offs are. Tonight, I could vote for the twenty-three, twenty-four implementation. And if we wanted to delay, uh, for a couple of weeks to then, you know, to a board meeting and direct staff to come back with where those offsets were. Because I wanna be clear, there will be other amendments to the budget. So, I mean, there, you know, of this scale or larger, so there will be changes, there will be things that happen. So it's not that it's inappropriate to do that, I just don't wanna make a one-sided decision without knowing both sides. So I could get there, I just need some time.
I, I'm with you, I could use, I, I would be happy to, um, to be, to vote in support of the resolution as it's written. And if we wanna make amendments, then I would, I would want a little bit more information as well.
And that could happen theoretically in the budget process, in the final hours.
It would happen tonight, um, because we need to allow time. Well, we only have tonight, there's only forty-five minutes or so left for tonight. But we're also fifteen, um, we also don't wanna be doing this tomorrow morning, so, as in seventeen minutes, so.
Is there a space where instead of doing eighty to ninety this year, we do eighty to eighty-five and then do eighty-five to ninety next year?
I think we should vote on the resolution that we have before us and if it's not supported, then we can.
Yes.
Horse trade.
Yes. Okay.
So what are we voting on?
We're voting on the resolution that's in front of us.
Which is to make the implementation in twenty-three, twenty-four?
It's to approve the increase of the pass-through rate of the state school funds from eighty percent to ninety percent with implementation, um, starting in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. So starting not in this budget year, in next year. That's the resolution as it's written and that's what's in front of us.
Can, I don't mean to.
And then what assurances do we have that the staff won't bury it later?
Cause you're gonna be on the board still.
Well, if the resolution should be passed, but I actually, I, I, a little bit of Robert's Rules of Orders to Amy's point. I actually think though, if there's a desire by some board members to amend this, that that should actually happen before the vote on the final election, the final. It has been, yeah. I, I heard Ailey second it.
Oh, I didn't hear Ailey.
Did you second it?
I did.
That's what I thought.
Oh, I didn't hear that, I'm so sorry, okay.
So I have a question for, uh, Director Green, now that we have the motion on the table. Do you want to offer an amendment to change it?
I would like to do the amendment to.
Or do you wanna just pass, vote on it as it is?
See, I wanna pass it, but I, I'd like to do, if I can't, if we can't do ninety, can we do eighty-five? Can we horse trade?
Well, you, you could offer an amendment to change it to eighty-five and change the, the year and then step up.
Actually, can I make a suggestion? If, if you offer an amendment to make it implementable next year, we vote on that. If it passes, it passes, if it fails, then you could offer a second amendment to go to eighty-five. Same thing, if it passes, it passes, if it fails, then we're back to the original motion.
Or we could vote on the motion that's on the table now, but yeah, so it's up to you if you wanna.
The only reason, once we vote on the motion and if it, if it were to pass, then, then the discussion's done. So that's why I wanna give an opportunity.
That's what I was concerned about, Andrew.
I wanted to give, like, Director Green, just as, as the committee chair, like, if you were gonna offer an amendment, I mean, and then chips for the fault they may.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, I thought you said vote on the motion.
Nope, I was saying, don't vote on the motion.
Oh, we're in agreement?
Yes, we are, complete, hundred percent.
Now we're getting somewhere.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna go with Andrew's suggestion on this one.
Okay, so you're, you're moving to amend it to, change it to, um, the year to tw- twenty-two, twenty-three?
It would be the Board of Education for Portland Public Schools approves an increase of the pass-through rate of the state school funds from eighty percent to eighty-five percent for K eight.
He's just changing the implementation.
Eighty to ninety, oh, it's just the, just the year. We're just changing for year twenty-two, twenty-three, okay.
So now, I just wanna make sure I'm clear, cause y'all know this is my first board, so I'm gonna make sure I spell everything out. So what we're gonna be doing, what we're finna do, is we're gonna try to implement, try to, um, see if we can get it to go through for, um, eighty to ninety this year versus next year.
That's the first run at it.
If that's, that, if that fails, then we can do eighty-five this year, ninety next year. If that fails, then we can come back and we go for twenty, um, eighty, eighty, from eighty to ninety during the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
And I, I missed that, so.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we amend the resolution to change the years to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. You can second that, Director Green, I know you are an expert at that.
I'm a little bit confused right now because it's close to twelve o'clock and Andrew was talking real fast.
Okay, so we, we have an amendment on the table to change the language in the resolution to say, the Portland, the Board of Education for Portland Public Schools approves an increase of the pass-through rate of the state school funds from eighty percent to ninety percent. For K eight charter schools serving populations less than fifty percent historically underserved by race ethnicity, beginning in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And I have a motion and a second on the table. We've got, um, Director Brim Edwards moved and I can't remember who seconded. Director Green seconded, um, that, so that's what we have on the table now. Um, we've already had our board discussion, um, so the board will now vote on the amendment of Resolution six four nine nine, approving the increase of charter school pass-through rate to ninety percent beginning in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For charter schools serving populations of less than fifty percent historically underserved by race and ethnicity. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
No, all opposed, please indicate by saying no.
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 And are there any abstentions? I think what I heard was that it.
And all vote no, sorry.
It failed, um, it failed three to four, thank you, I'm, I'm not tracking very well. So I, I guess we're gonna move on and.
I'd like to offer another amendment, um, to change the, um, rate to eighty-five percent and the year to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. With a increase to ninety percent in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Herman, you can second that.
Oh, I, I didn't know when it was gonna be go time, second.
Okay, so we have a motion, um, on the table to amend the Resolution six four nine nine to, um, increase the pass-through rate of eighty-five percent, um, of state school funds this year. I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth, eighty percent, eighty-five percent, beginning in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And increase the pass-through rate to ninety percent in twenty-three, twenty-four. All those in favor, please.
Actually, we, we haven't really had a board discussion about this one, so I just, I just wanna be clear. So the idea here, Director Green and Director Brim Edwards, is that it lowers the budget impact. So gonna say roughly, roughly six hundred thousand dollars in year one and then ramps up to, to ninety, ninety percent.
That's correct, cause if we do it, if we do it this way, what the end game here is, unlike the other schools that, um, that are, um, you know, get impacted, they're not in, in jeopardy of possibly closing a school. So that's the end game. The end game is to do as much as we possibly can to keep those school, those kids who are learning best at those charter schools in those schools where they learn best at and not do any further displacement. And so if we can minimize that as much as possible, and if we can't get the whole thing, then let's get a portion of it. That minimizes the, um, the amount that we're going to be, um, uh, you know, that we're going to be keeping. It increases the amount that we would be passing through. So now, instead of getting the one point three million, they would probably get like one point six million. And so it would only be like a six or seven hundred thousand dollar deficit or something. And we just, we just approved the contract for, for more than that, so.
Can, um, can I ask a question about the fiscal condition of the schools? I know you all have referenced that a few times, but I, since I haven't watched those committee meetings, like, how, how, how dire is the situation for these schools?
I was just gonna speak to that, if I may, because it is part of our review process and charter renewals. We look at, um, you know, academic achievement and financial stability. And, um, you know, they're never flush, but, uh, we don't have any indication that any of our schools are, um, in, in a, um, in the red zone right now. Now, that said, um, the market conditions have changed and we've got schools that are looking for new leases and that is really a burden, but we don't, we don't have any, um, we have no reason for alarm as far as the viability of our schools. It's tough, I'm the first person to say, you know, I'm your, a huge, you're a huge advocate. Um, but no, we don't have any reason for alarm there. And then the other thing, um, the other thing I was gonna say, just about this budget process here, is that this is actually a coincidence that this issue emerged at this time when the budget happens to be on the table. There was not an intention to like shoehorn into this budget that's already been proposed. So for myself, you know, if we're to change this allocation and send staff searching for a million dollars or half a million dollars or whatever it is, you know, to me, I think that's irresponsible as the decision makers. Now, if we don't do that, I think it's entirely reasonable for Director Green or anyone else to bring this up in the budget process and say, hey, we're talking about puts and takes. I want to reintroduce this question about whether or not we should increase our pass-through rate this year for our charter schools. And let's have that conversation at the same time that we talk about increasing, you know, our budget for what we pay our custodians and deciding how many elevators we're gonna put in to make our schools accessible. And all those other questions that are, can end up on the cutting room floor in the budget process. And maybe it will emerge as our highest and best, uh, use. But for me, I think this process is irresponsible to consider it on a budget that's already been proposed, even, even understanding how difficult the situation is. And I will feel extremely proud when we make this change for implementation next year. But if we're gonna do it this year, I think we need to do it at the same time that we have a conversation about all of those other things that are not currently in our budget that we wish we saw there and that are really important for our students.
And I, I hear that.
I just have to chime in though, and, 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 um, is Tara still at the table? Or is Karina still on the call?
She's, she's on her, and Karina is.
Okay, so.
Barely, barely.
Cause I don't wanna speak out of turn. That, um, as, as I understand it, both, um, Portland Village and, um, what's Juanita School, both of those schools have to have, have to sign new leases this year. And it's going to be, um, somewhat impossible to do without having, um, without having additional funds coming in. And to be fair, to be fair to the, to the charter schools, they actually brought this up in our committee meeting in February, that, um, part of their issue was the pass-through amount. And so it's, although it came up for us, and if, so if there's a delay, the delay was on our end to say, to send staff out to find out about what would it look like. But it definitely was not on the end of the charter schools who in February were, were screaming that, hey, we, we, if you're gonna look at anything, the two things that they brought up when I went to every school was, if you can increase our pass-through amount and if there's some way that you can help us in legislation where we're talking about the purse. And so as, as much as me and, me and Amy, we, we, we do a lot of stuff together. And so this is not to, to speak against any of that, but I do wanna make sure that we're explicitly clear that although it may seem as though, um, you know, maybe nobody is there, the schools have told us that they, they have to sign these leases and without some assurances that they're gonna have additional funding come in, um, coming in, that they, they're not certain, for certain, that they're going to be able to, to find a space. And so there is an urgency, if you ask any of the charter school directors, um, there's an urgency, a sense of urgency that we need to do that now. And seeming that I am the newest person on the, on this committee and Tara and Karina have been working with the charter schools for, um, and a significant amount of time, maybe they, maybe they can weigh in on how long the conversation around the eighty percent, the pass-through amount has been happening. And so I, I just wanna throw that out there. Um, again, it is a lesser, it's a much lesser amount, substantially lesser. Um, so we still gotta find it, but we don't have to look that hard.
All right, and then, and then I actually have a question for the superintendent, beginning back, uh, Amy, to your point. In, in some ways though, you, what you're saying by coincidence, I mean, had this come up two or three months earlier, it would have been included in this year's budget, so that could go the other way as well, right? In terms of why wait a year just because of a, of a few weeks? I wanna ask the superintendent, um, how he feels about making change at this point to like six or seven hundred thousand dollars. Again, there will be other changes we discuss over the next few weeks. So I, I'd, I'd like to get a sense of how much of a burden that will be. And, and maybe even where you think it's gonna come from, but then you may need to wait on that.
I serve at the will of the board, so, uh, whatever that majority, uh, opinion is. So obviously, it's helpful to know all the variables and assumptions, you know, as we commence our budget development time, which happens every year, you know, right after winter break. You know, as I've mentioned i- in presenting my proposal, there's an understanding it will be a bit iterative as we get into the details, as the board has its discussions, uh, it's better to sort of be here. Uh, it's better to sort of be hearing, considering this conversation the second week in May versus the second week in June. Um, um, and, and certainly, you know, it, it would require staff to, to sort of go through again with a fine-tooth comb, uh, to, to see where we find some, some cost savings, or we dip deeper into our fund balance. And so, I just, we would be making a conscious decision that that's, that's what we're doing, and so, uh, and, and how we incorporate it into an, our ongoing general fund, uh, expenses moving forward. And so, I, I think everybody understands it's next spring that will be the difficult, uh, time. So, uh, it, it's, it's not an impossible task, um, but if that's the direction we wanna go, then we'll have to come back to the board with here are some places where, you know, we could make that happen.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I'll just let people, I think I may be a yes on this compromise unless someone wants to talk me out of it, so.
Let's get this vote going.
Wait for the chair to come back. I think, I don't know if there's any other board discussion, but.
I'm happy, just to answer, uh, Director Green, if you want me to, with regard to the, to this, but any specifics on what we understand about the, the conversations, uh, the two schools are having with landlords, but if you, if you would like that or not.
I, I would like you to just briefly, um, discuss the extent of the threat to their viability and the conversations that they're having around their leases.
So, very quickly, and I might be off, um, um, with some months, and, and Tara can certainly help with that. Um, but we, it came to our attention several months ago that Emerson School, which is located in, um,
Temple Beth Israel.
Temple, thank you, Temple Beth Israel. It is a little late. Um, they are located in their school building, um, and so, not the temple itself, but they have a separate school building. And so, the Emerson K five is located there, um, Monday through Friday. And, um, so the, that congregation has asked for their building back. So, initially, they were, Emerson School was asked to vacate before July first this year. And then that was, they were unable to do so, and so they are in negotiations. My most current understanding is that they have negotiated through the end of twenty-twenty-two. Um, so they still may need to move and find a site and be out by January one in the middle of the year. And so, so that's Emerson, and I, and, uh, that Portland Village School, that their landlord has asked them to be out by July one of twenty-twenty-three. So, they are also looking for a site, and they will need to, they believe that they will need to sign a lease before, uh, the end of this school year and make plans for their transition. Both school communities have been looking, and has been referenced tonight, um, are taking in information about what current market rate is and working with their prospective school boards around, um, you know, their financial solvency and, and what decisions they would be willing or able to make, given where the market is at right now. So, that's, that's my current understanding. They're both, that both schools have, those are the two schools that have landlords asking for their buildings back.
Thank you, Karina. I, I'm gonna be a no on this. I think with Amy there about the, what you said was really, um, I thought compelling about this, doing this five-hundred thousand dollars or six-hundred, however much it is, as part of our fuller budget conversations, I think is very appealing for me, because there are lots of things that we are passionate about that we do wanna include in the budget, and this is important and is one of those things. So, I, I like that process better than voting on this tonight. So, I'm gonna be a no on this at this point, but you may have gotten Andrew, so you might get four.
So, what we have on the table is, um, an amendment, uh, the second amendment, uh, to approve an increase of the pass-through rate of the state school funds from eighty percent to eighty-five percent for K eight charter schools, beginning in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, do I have a, I can't even remember if we have a motion. Okay, so I'm gonna put it to a vote. Um, sorry, all those, uh, the board will now vote on the amend, amendment to Resolution six-four-nine-nine, approving the increase of the charter school pass-through rate from eighty percent to ninety, eighty-five percent, beginning in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year for charter schools serving populations of less than fifty percent historically underserved by race and ethnicity. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
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 No. And are there any abstentions? It looks like the amended Resolution six-four-nine-nine, uh, passes by a vote of four to three. Oh, the amendment to the resolution, okay. Thank you.
Which is good, because this would have been extremely unsatisfying for me to not get to vote on that resolution as like the champion of charter schools in our district, and then to be the big grouch. Point of personal privilege.
Okay.
Could I?
And Jackson, um, I'm sorry, Student Representative Weinberg?
I am voting no. Um, my only comment would be, if I had an actual vote, it wouldn't have passed, but that's, I guess, it.
Say that again, you're-
If my vote actually counted, the resolution, that amendment wouldn't pass, just so people know.
Okay, thank you. So, now are we, um, process-wise, I'm so tired, I'm not tracking. Okay, so we're going back to the original.
You can just, just, just call the vote.
Okay, so we don't need a motion or a second for this one? It's already been done. Okay, so, we'll now vote to, um, on the Resolution six-four-nine-nine, um-
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
Makes it easier.
I've read it fifteen times. Thank you. All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Any opposed? And any abstentions? And I didn't hear Director Green. I'm gonna guess your yes.
He said yes.
So, the Resolution six-four-nine-nine as amended is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg voting?
Grudgingly, yes. And one comment, I'm gonna actually leave. I have an IB test in twelve hours, so, goodbye.
Good luck tomorrow, Jackson.
Good luck.
It's a four-hour IB bio test.
Oh, I'll be brain.
That is true.
I'm seeing that we still have policy revisions.
I would vote yes for the rest of it if people would like to know.
I, I, my question is, is anything on this time-sensitive, or is this something we can bring back at our next meeting? The revision of the calendar and the policy?
Revisions and recisions. Liz, can we suspend?
Or do you want to get the clock ticking?
For first reading, can't we just say first reading? We don't vote on it.
I was gonna say, um, we can do the first reading, and then the second readings, just do all, just have a big-
The second reading would be on, in our June meeting?
Okay, so the first readings, um, we have some rescissions that are, um, in, in the board packet. Um, they come recommended by staff, and they were unanimously recommended by, um, the committee for rescissions. Um, the proposed policy rescissions will be posted on the board website, and the public comment is a minimum of twenty-one days. Contact information for public comment will be posted with policy. The board will hold a second reading of those policies on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And, um, there is also a first reading on the, um, is it the, it's the gun, the weapons? We also have a first reading on the, um, sorry, just let me just get it in the packet here. So, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it, the, the number, Liz, could you?
It's three-point-four-zero-point-zero-one-four-P.
And is it just the weapons policy?
Yes.
So, very briefly, um, this is, the state legislature allows us-
I did, I misunderstood your question. That is the weapons policy, and there is one other, the injectable-
Okay, let me just do the weapons policy. So, the weapons policy, we're allowed by state, a state law passed that allows, um, school boards to also prohibit individuals who have concealed weapons permit from bringing those concealed weapons, um, onto school property. And so, we are amending our policy to, um, take advantage of our ability to, um, say that people shouldn't be able to bring concealed weapons, um, on our school property. So, that's, that's the first reading, so that will be, and that was unanimously recommended by-
That, that's really important, and there's a statewide movement to encourage school districts to, um, bring these type of resolutions forward, 'cause this is how it has to be done by individual boards. So, this is a really, really critical measure, Herman, um, that-
Does it just give us the ability? We had a long discussion in the committee about, there's a very narrow exception, um, to, um, no guns other than uniformed, uh, uh, law enforcement. Um, and so, it came out of the committee with a unanimous recommendation for the first reading. It'll be posted, and there'll be twenty-one days for comment, uh, and the board will have a second reading, um, on that policy on June fourteenth. And then, um, General Counsel Large, what's the, the other one?
Sorry, four-point-five-zero-point-zero-two-six, administering medicines to students.
Okay, this is also an important, um, another important, um, measure that, or policy revision that was brought to the committee by staff. We had several discussions about it. Um, I, I don't know if you wanna give, I think we should give at least a two-sentence description, if you can do that, 'cause I can't find it in my packet right now.
Yeah, it, it updates the policy to be more accurate about EpiPens and Norcan. So, it allows schools to administer those, um, critical pieces that don't require specific prescriptions by individual students, but can be used in an emergency setting.
And I believe there's a training component.
Yeah, so there's a, this is just a revision of an existing policy, um, but very important. Uh, so, again, that policy will be posted on the board website. Public comment period is a minimum of twenty-one days. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy, and the board will have a second reading on that revised, those two revised policies on June fourteenth.
And just in the interest of being, interest of being complete, there are some other cleanup edits along with it, but those were the substantive edits that drove the amendment.
I say it's posted, so if people are interested in what, what it is, and there's also, um, I, I believe, staff reports. And thank you to the staff for bringing those forward.
And then next, we'll consider the second reading of several policy rescissions and revisions. Um, Director Brim Edwards, will you introduce this?
Do you wanna do that now, or should we hold it over?
If it's, we can, yeah.
We can, we can, we can hold it over.
Let's hold it over then, if it's not urgent.
Yeah. And we'll just do one big policy adoption.
Alright.
Superintendent Carr, you look pretty excited about that.
There was just one other item, the, the board meeting calendar. We're fine holding that over, yes.
And also, the, um, resolution to adopt revised diploma requirements. Oh, that's a policy.
That's a sign. So, on the board calendar, um, I'd actually like, 'cause we wanted to have a public discussion about some of the items related to the board discussion, so we could have that at, at the next meeting, versus just adopting it.
Well, so we have to do it when the public is awake.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not following. We were supposed to vote today, but we're just gonna hold it over for two weeks, right?
Right, I don't know if you remember, but there was a discussion when it got sent out that people were interested in, in talking about the calendar.
People being the board, not the public.
Yeah, I was gonna say, who, who, sorry.
The board.
It was cryptic, yeah.
Sorry, we were trying not to have a public, um, a public meeting on an email string, and so-
So, we're gonna talk about it at the next board, right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's why we're carrying over. If there was no conversation, I'd say adopt it.
Okay, we're good.
Andrew ready to go home.
Director Brim Edwards, can I just clarify, a discussion next week and a vote on June fourteenth?
Well, it's actually important so that we don't have meetings like this.
We are adjourned. Thank you for-